Good afternoon. My name is Rose Gonzalez and I'm the Workforce Development Coordinator for the College and Career Readiness and Link Learning Department. We're transitioning to College and Career Success Department. I'd like to recognize the Board of Education and represented this evening by Dr. Scott Wyatt. We also have in attendance Dr. Barbara Flores. And I just wanted to say thank you to our Board of Education, to our Superintendent, our district leaders, for your support of our College and Career Readiness Program. And I really wanted to say thank you on behalf of all of our students. Our counselors, our principals, our teachers, our program specialists. All of this happens because of the hard work and the dedication from you. And we know that everything that you do that leads to this gold certification requires sacrifice on your part. So we want to say thank you for making those sacrifices for our students. So because of your tireless dedication and hard work, we're here to celebrate Arroyo Valley High School and Pacific High School for earning the Link Learning Gold Certified Designations for their career pathways. And I am beyond thrilled to share this in this prestigious moment. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Superintendent Doc Irvin to provide his remarks.
Well, thank you, Rose, for that great introduction and also the start of our celebration. First of all, you know, I want to thank our Board of Education for their vision and strong commitment, ladies and gentlemen, you know, to providing students, you know, with, I would say, with college and career opportunities through our partnership with the Link Learning Alliance since 2013. That is important, very critical. And also, you know, we do have two of our board members here. If you don't know, I'll have them stand up. We have our board president, Dr. Scott Wyatt. Dr. Wyatt, can you stand up so they can see you? And then also, we have another board member here, Dr. Barbara Flores. Now, the district pathways integrate rigorous academic and high-quality career - gotta get my glasses together these days. You'll get there soon - technical education, work-based learning, and comprehensive support for students. And that has been critical here in the district. And, you know, we have really worked through an industry-specific lens to make our systems work better for all of our young people. And that's been really critical here in this district as well. And with the focus on student achievement, preparation, and outcomes beyond high school graduation, the district has been the forefront of change to benefit our students. And most importantly, ladies and gentlemen, all students. That is always critical. Now, remember, in the state of California, there are 19 gold Link Learning pathways in California, and five of these pathways are in our district. Five. Now, we are proud to celebrate three pathway this evening, just as Rose talked about, that have recently achieved, and the prestigious gold certification. And that's the highest standard of achievement for college and career preparation. That is outstanding. So I'm gonna give some few shout-outs. So if you're here today, let's make sure you stand up so you can get the recognition that you deserve. So congratulations again to Arroyo Valley High School and Principal Bernardo Valenzuela - where are you, Bernardo? On the success of the Business and Logistics Academy led by Damian Lozano. Damian, are you here? Damian? And the Digital Media Arts Academy led by Victor Suarez. Victor? Victor's in the back. Victor, that's Wade. There he's in the back. Congratulations as well to Pacific High School on their success of the Digital Design and Communications Academy led by Principal Natalie Raimondo. Natalie, are you here? Carolyn Weller, Carolyn, are you here? There you go. And Mark Billings. Mark? Mark did not -
He's running late.
He's running late. But let's remember, when he gets here, let's make sure we give him a shout-out, Rose. Okay, so we want to let him know we're still thinking about him. And as you know, Pacific High School, this is interesting, is the first high school in the entire state of California to have all gold-certified pathways. And so I want to now introduce Dr. Escavell, who oversees our college and career, you know, our college and career readiness department, but most importantly, Link Learning Department here within the district. But before we get started, let's give all our students a great two claps for success. You know what? I see you back there, and I'm not gonna say nothing, because I know who you were. Let's try that one time. Two claps. That's what I'm talking about, Rose. It's your turn. Oh, actually, no, it was Dr. Escavell. You're up.
Good afternoon. I have chills. This is such a beautiful moment. Thank you, Superintendent Irvin, for your vision and support and the opportunity to celebrate our gold pathways this afternoon. I want to also begin by appreciating our board. By appreciating our board and their heartfelt commitment and support of college and career pathways that prepare students for a promising future. I'd like to also acknowledge the contributions of many across the district. District staff across all divisions, our college and career readiness coordinators, program specialists, our principals and administration, pathway leads, counselors, teachers, the Link Learning Alliance, and our community industry partners. Their support and dedication to the success of the district's longstanding partnership with the Link Learning Alliance continues to make the difference for kids. Round of applause, please. Through the Link Learning certification process, SBCUSD has established college and career pathways for endless growth that has helped ensure the district makes progress with increasing equity and access toward gold and silver-level certifications. The intentional planning to reach gold-level certification are to be commended. To this end, today, we celebrate the high caliber of quality teaching and learning experienced by the students in Business and Logistics Academy, the Digital Media Arts Academy, and the Digital Design and Communication Academy programs. These programs have joined a collection of trailblazers in their pursuit of gold certification, and we look forward to many, many more to come in the near future as other pathways follow suit. In fact, I would like to take this moment to recognize Cajon High School and Principal Dr. Tinia Bishop for achieving silver status for their IB Film Theory and Production and their Behavioral Health and Human Services Pathway. Additionally, I would like to extend special congratulations to San Andreas High School and Principal Dory Stanton for achieving their silver status on their business and technology and health science pathways. It should be noted, it should be noted and emphasized, that San Andreas High School is among the first continuation high schools in California to have earned this distinction. The district now - yes, please, round of applause. The district now has seven pathways with a silver-linked learning designation. In closing, I want to express a thank you again to all of our staff and educators, industry and community partners, and our students and families, who are achieving more with Link Learning. I am now pleased to introduce Ann Stanton, President of the Link Learning Alliance.
Thank you, Dr. Escavell. Thank you, Superintendent Irvin. And thank you, everyone, for being here. And most of all, thank each and every one of you who, when we come to San Bernardino, and we come here a lot because it's a place we love, and the work that's being done here is so inspiring. And once again, we get to witness the incredible talent and the power of the young people in this community. And more than that, to celebrate everything that this community does to ensure that every young person in this community is connected to purpose and ready for both college and career, not one or the other. Everyone that has been involved with Link Learning for a while, and it's been going on for over a decade, knows that the magic of it is really in the power of plus, right? The ability to really think purposefully about combining teaching and learning to deliver on the promise of both college and career preparation. And when we do that, I think we all agree that we put every young person, right, at the center of their ability to live self-determined futures, to successfully pursue a full range of post-secondary options, and that's critically important. But it's also, I think, and we learned this through the pandemic, but we've known it for a really long time, this power of plus is particularly important in a decade of life between the ages of 14 and 24, when young people are developing, you know, a sense of who they are and what they can do, and their aspirations for the future. So it's a really formative time, and this formative time demands learning opportunities that engage the mind, that engage the spirit, that engage your hands, that engage your heart, right? And that you keep having the opportunity for every young person to create the path that works best for them. And so the gold pathways that we're celebrating today, and frankly, the silvers as well, are excelling at this. And they're igniting students' passions, right, and connecting them to purpose. And by the end of it, young people are dreaming bigger, they're working harder, and ultimately, it's lifting a more prosperous sense of community at large. So the power of this plus is really everybody in this room. It's certainly every single one of you that we all are here to exist to celebrate and serve. It's the teachers, the amazing teachers, the amazing administrators, the leaders, the district leaders, the employer partners, the community leaders, the Board of Education here, that really make what young people and what parents' vision of what they want for their young person when they graduate from high school real. And that's about the best that we can all do. And those are opportunities that pair academics with real-world experiences, they introduce career possibilities, they offer adult mentorship. And we look forward to the day in this state when every young person has that same opportunity. So we are delighted that San Bernardino Unified's gold achievements stand on their own, but they also push us and the state a lot further to do even more for more and more young people. And we have a pretty audacious goal, which is that a million young people will have these opportunities in the next decade. And we have some immediate opportunities to do that with the proposals in the budget. So we look forward to working together with everyone and really helping expand this work in California and beyond. But like, it's really important for people to understand that San Bernardino City Unified School District has been at the center of that success story for a very, very long time. And you've heard, Pacific and Arroyo Valley High Schools were among the first to be gold pathways in the state. Pacific High School is the first all-gold high school in the country. So that is amazing! We hope you're the first of many. San Andreas High School is the first continuation high school. That is amazing! We'll continue to expand and build muscles, right? And Cajon's new Silver Pathways, you're gonna be gold in no time. We just know it. So I think it's really important that we have the opportunity to expand these opportunities for each and every one of you and everybody who follows in your footsteps. And we wanted to thank San Bernardino for leading the way. We know we can do it for more people. You've shown us how to do it. And thank you for helping to bring the vision that we all have to reality so much in every day and every way. We're honored to be here. Keep learning, keep growing, and congratulations, you are stars. Thank you so much.
All right, I wanted to give a few minutes for each of our principals of our gold pathways to give a few remarks. So I'd like to please welcome Dr. Natalie Raimondo to the microphone, and then Mr. Bernardo Valenzuela.
Thank you. Thank you and good evening. I'm proud to be the principal of Pacific High School. It's a great place to work, and every day I get to work with these young people and an excellent staff. I'm extremely honored that all of Pacific High School's pathways have been recognized by the Link Learning Alliance as gold-certified. We have two pathways opening next year, so we can no longer claim to be the only school that's all gold-certified. I'm kind of rethinking that, maybe we should - no, just kidding. Our two new pathways coming up have been a long time in planning, one in the hospitality industry and the other in the transportation and logistics. These programs provide students with relevance and connection of their educational outcomes to real-world work and careers. Students are more engaged, they are connected to school, and additionally, students have shown ownership of their learning by receiving feedback for improvement and continuing to build their skills and knowledge, which has increased student agency and confidence. Link Learning is one of the ways that we can bring our school-wide learning outcomes, the five Cs, from ideas to reality. Our school-wide learning outcomes are for students to be effective communicators, complex thinkers, collaborative workers, college and career-ready, and community participants. Link Learning meets all of these outcomes and allows students to put them in practice in real situations. Recently, we held a community event to highlight some of the work that students have been doing. It included many of our community and business partners. The adults facilitated, but I was so amazed at how much of the work the students actually did themselves, from the planning to the execution to the cleanup. You know, that's one of the things when you end an event is you're like, oh, we have to clean all this up now. Within 20 minutes, it was cleaned up. Students put it away, they took ownership. What else do you need us to do? It was wonderful. And all of our community partners and families that came to view the event just complimented over and over the quality of the event. From our annual showcase to daily labs and projects, students are able to see the real outcomes of the work that they do in the classroom and transfer those skills to college and career. I want to thank the Board and Cabinet for supporting this work, and Link Learning Alliance for guiding us in building these effective pathways.
Charles here. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everyone. I want to make sure I thank everybody, so I'm gonna be sure, I'm gonna get through this first. I want to say, I would like to thank the Board of Education and Superintendent Doc Irvin, Cabinet, for the continued support at Arroyo Valley High School for the academy. So thank you for your support. I would also like to thank Dr. Escavell's office for supporting us in our academies and for college and career. Thank you, sir. I would also like to thank Link Learning Alliance for helping us build a template to have a meaningful, successful, and sustainable college and career academies. But I will be remiss, we're celebrating two gold academies today from Arroyo Valley High School. But a very special thanks goes to Mrs. Natasha Flores. She was the lead for the DMA. Let's give her applause. And Mr. Vincent Warsaw, which is now Vice Principal at San G. Just give him applause. And I would also like to thank the many staff members and students in the Business and Logistics Academy and DMA. Because of their hard work and dedication, we have achieved the gold certification. I look forward to our future. Starting this fall, we will open up, it's called a HAWK Hub, where college and career and creativity meets. Students will have an opportunity to learn, work, and create in four different spaces during and after school. Creating and designing in the Innovation Fabrication and Design Hub. On the other side of the HAWK Hub, our students will receive hands-on training on how a logistics distribution center works and how they can create their own e-commerce business in the HAWK Works Logistics Lab. Lastly, we will have the HAWK Works Creative Digital and Design Lab, a student-run enterprise. Students will do it all. HAWK Works will generate, will have graphic design, will have printing services, will have photography, video production services, marketing, development, and social media. I just want to say, it's because of these students right here and the teachers' work, they created all this. They have a passion. So let's give them a hand, please. Thank you. Last thing, I'm honored to be a principal at Arroyo Valley High School. We have seven academies. We have three gold, and by the end of the semester, we're gonna have four silvers. Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, we have our teachers, our principals, our students, our students' families to thank, but we also have some very important people, our industry partners, and we've invited two of them to come speak tonight. So if I could, please invite George and Bill, please, to come give some remarks.
Hello and good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for the support and allowing us to be partnered up with schools, both Pacific High School and Arroyo Valley High School. Congratulations to everyone. You've all worked so hard to get that accreditation. Some of the things that we've done with the schools would include financial literacy classes that are very important to these pathways. One of the examples that we've done was the Battle Reality Program, which we weren't able to do during the pandemic, like, when we're all away, but we're excited to come back and start doing those again. But it's a financial simulation where students can actually see what it's like to have to pay bills and have to manage their finances over the course of a month in the simulation. So things of that nature, and being able to present to the students different financial literacy-type topics, and get that engagement with them, really go a long way and hopefully impact their success on the financial side. There's nothing more tragic than having a career set up for you and then having different obstacles in your way to not take advantage of the gifts that are given to you in your course of life. So thank you, everyone, and congratulations to everyone.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's great to be here. My name is Bill Tynen. I'm a Director of Education with Garner-Holt, Education Through Imagination, and just have a few brief remarks to share with you today. It's really an honor to be working in collaboration with the San Bernardino City Unified School District and to be doing this very important work together in the area of college and career readiness. The district's vision is clear to us for the value in creating experiences and opportunities that elevate students' competitive advantage in the world they are inheriting. So really, more than anything, I'm here to express our gratitude and appreciation for the partnership that has been created between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and Garner-Holt, Education Through Imagination, and to say that we're only getting started. I would be remiss if I didn't come up here and tell you that I too am a proud graduate of Pacific High School. Arroyo Valley High School wasn't here when I was going to school, so I may have wound up there too, I'm not sure. But I like to say that we're honored to be part of shining a light brightly on the extraordinary achievement of both PHS and Arroyo Valley High Schools. And to say that this is how we believe multi-generational change comes to be, and how we send a very clear message to the students of San Bernardino City Unified School District, that this is a community that wants you, that respects you, and that really hopes you will decide as you begin your adult lives, and perhaps largely based on the experiences you have in the Career Pathways Program, that this is the community where you want to be, where you want to invest, and where you decide to help create that brighter future for us all. So students, congratulations, congratulations. Pacific High School, Arroyo Valley, congratulations.
Okay, now for the best part of the whole afternoon. It's time for us to hear from our students. So I know we have a lot up here, and we have 10 minutes. So if not everybody gets to speak, I still want to say thank you for coming and participating. So I wanted to open it up. What have you gained from your experience in a gold-certified pathway? What has it been like? Yes, go ahead.
I was able to be able to find out what professionalism is inside of a workplace.
Another student would like to share? Go ahead.
The DDC pathway has given me pretty interesting skills that I think I can use in the future. It's definitely taught me how to use a lot of cool things like Adobe and animation.
Digital Media Academy has been great for me so far, for three years of high school so far, because I always grown up, like, being interested in cameras, video editing, because my sister, my older sister, she used to, she does the same thing right now. And I always did the same thing.
Everybody able to hear that? Can you repeat that again, please? Maybe bring the mic a little bit closer.
Okay. Sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The Digital Media Academy has been great for me so far, because I always grown up, like, being interested in, like, cameras, video editing, just filming in general, because my older sister, she does the same thing. She went to college for it. So I've just always seen it, and I was always interested in it.
Business Academy has helped me a lot, because I've always wanted to become a businessperson. I've always wanted to create my own business and, like, a clothing brand. So it has helped me learn a lot of skills, like, having to have more than one person to work on your business, having to, like, come out with new ideas, how to start your business too, because it's very hard when starting a business. It's never, there's never always a positive outcome. There's always ups and downs, and business has really helped me understand that.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Alexander Villanova, and I'm a part of the Business and Logistics Academy at Arroyo Valley High School. And the academy has helped me in a wide variety of ways, from teaching me what the difference between a bank and a credit union, and the benefits and the cons of each between them, as well as retirement for my possible future. Most likely here in the city of San Bernardino, and as well as how to properly look for buying a home in my community and area that's, well, I can financially afford. The biggest thing that I've learned so far in the Business Academy that I am very grateful for is how to properly and efficiently budget my own money to be able to afford things like college and possibly even trade school.
Hello. Hi, my name is Natalie Juarez, and I graduated from the Digital Media Academy in 2021. And one thing that the Digital Media Academy has greatly helped me with is establishing my portfolio, where straight into college, I was hired as a social media coordinator for one of the schools on campus because they loved my portfolio. because they loved my portfolio, most of those projects being from film classes or the digital media classes we had on campus.
Good afternoon, my name is Leona Williams. I am a senior and I am the Vice President of the Business Academy, Business Leaders of AVHS. And I'm not a fan of speaking, so please bear with me. When it comes to business, the path isn't straight. You learn to get off track sometimes and learn to fail. You can draw the path, but sometimes you can't determine where you'll end up. Over the four years of being in the Business Academy, I have learned something new, fresh, new. Freshman year, I had Mr. Lozano, thank you. He taught me how to network and be more open to others and now, and how opportunities can be made. Though at the time, I was not an introvert, but I'm still not an introvert, I'm still shy. It's stuck with me. Sophomore year, I had Mr. Warsaw and he taught me that in life, nothing is free and there is a cost for everything. And how being an entrepreneur isn't just about making money. It's also about how your mindset is and more, and so more. Junior year, I had Mr. Warsaw again and Mr. Accampo. Forgive me because I rarely went to my online classes, but I learned about needs versus wants and why having a growth mindset is important. Although over that year, I invested my money into a company and started my own business for the first time. Although my business failed, I learned that failure can push you to do your best when you put your mind to it and when you really want something done. As of right now, I'm learning about the supply chain and when, which is taught by Mr. Lomax. And I had the opportunity to receive my OSHA and Forklift Training Certification, which has given me an opportunity to work with the field when I'm 18. And overall, the experience with the Business Academy has been wonderful and I would like to thank you all for your time.
Beautiful, we have time for one more.
Can you guys hear me? Okay. Hi, my name is Tiana and I am a student at Pacific High School. And this is my first year in the Business Pathway class. This pathway has taught me so much, like how to stay on a budget, how to speak to a customer, how to apply for a job and many other things related to that. Before I got in this class, if I were to like, apply for a job, I wouldn't have been, be able to like, get the job because of half the stuff that I didn't know. And this class has really like showed me how like, what to say and what not to say and what to expect and what not to expect. So, yeah, this class, so if I were to apply for a job now, I'd probably get it.
All right, let's give our student panelists one more round of applause. And you can all go ahead and get up and take your seats. And while we're doing that, I wanted to recognize some of the policymakers we have here today. We want to recognize all of the elected officials and community representatives who have come to support our amazing LINK Learning Pathways. As I call your name, if you have any certificates or resolutions to present, please come forward. From the city of San Bernardino, we have Second Ward, Ward Councilwoman Sandra Ibarra. And I understand that you have a certificate that you would like to present.
And Councilmember Sandra Ibarra from the Second Ward, representing, I actually covered three of the high schools. San Gregorio, Pacific High School, and San Bernardino High School. So congratulations, Pacific High School, for all the work that you are doing for our future. I love hearing the stories from our students right now because that, those are all life skills that we need. And not all of us in high school get them. So good job, School District, for this amazing program. With that said, I have a certificate of recognition from us, the mayor and the city council, congratulating and honoring the Digital Design and Communications Academy from Pacific High School. Congratulations on receiving the LINK Learning Gold Distinction and being amongst the first pathways in the country to achieve this significant honor and recognition. Thank you for creating and maintaining public will for equity and excellence in education while creating advanced policies that serve and support all youth. The city of San Bernardino thus hereby commend you for continued dedication and commitment to excellence. We wish you the best success in your future endeavors presented on this fifth day of April 2022, on behalf of all of us. Thank you.
We also want to recognize San Bernardino's Sixth Ward Councilwoman Kimberly Calvin. Please come forward to present your certificates.
Well, congratulations, scholars. I am your council member at Arroyo Valley High School, in case you guys don't know who I am. I'm so, so excited and so proud of you and how you're representing the west side of San Bernardino. Give it up for yourselves! Gotta love those Hawks! But as Bill just already mentioned, my dear friend here, about what I see and what I hear today is how you are being prepared to take over as the future of the city of San Bernardino. And that preparation is priceless. Because while we sit on the dais right now, we cannot stay there forever and don't want to. So we are happy that you are being groomed, nurtured, trained, educated, to take over. Because it is your future that you're building and creating right now. And we, as your elects and your policymakers on the dais representing the city of San Bernardino, we are awaiting you. We are looking forward to all the wonderful and magnetic things that you're gonna do for our city. So we thank you. I thank you, Doc Irving. I thank you, everybody board. I thank you, all of the cabinet, teachers. Mr. Venezuela, thank you for all the work that you've done over at Arroyo Valley High School as you've come and transformed the school and transformed the community. It is a pleasure to work with you, sir. And it is a pleasure to support and represent the Arroyo Valley High School Hawks! Give it up! Before I leave this diet, before I leave the podium though, I need to also thank my dear friend Victor Suarez for all the work that he does over there and his passion and love for the scholars. Thanks, bro, appreciate you.
Good afternoon, I'm Councilman Damon Alexander, representing the Seventh Ward. I thank Councilmember Ibarra and Councilmember Calvin because I don't have any high schools in my, in my ward. So, but I, I'm here because everybody's a resident of San Bernardino. So with that being said, I love, you guys see something that you've never seen before. You see council members supporting the school district. And that's, that's unheard of. So we just want to make sure that we're working together jointly. Something that we want to see continue in the future. So come on up, Councilmember Ibarra, Doc. We want to present you these certificates and, and your board, absolutely. Board Member Flores, and, which is a Seventh Ward resident, so I got one. It's important that we show unity in San Bernardino and that we work together, not individually as boards, the school district on one side and the city on the other. Because only together shall we make this work. So with that being said, congratulations, everybody.
Michael Gloucer is here to represent Senator Rosalici Ochoa Bo of the 23rd Senate, State Senate District.
For me, it's an absolute pleasure to be here. I love the youth, I love education. And on behalf of Senator Ochoa Boog, I just want to congratulate both Pacific High School and the Arroyo Valley High School for these wonderful certifications. It's quite an honor and you should be proud of your efforts. The senator is an educator herself and is a graduate of a high school here in San Bernardino. I'm not gonna say which one because I don't want to offend anybody. It's not Pacific or Arroyo Valley, but she, she is from the community. This is her home. She's a Cardinal, it came out, it came out! But she's very passionate about, about all of you and the efforts that you're making. So congratulations on her behalf. And to you students, congratulations for your efforts to college and career preparation that you're doing and that you schools are participating in together with linked learning alliances is incredible. And it's only gonna do good for the future. Like we heard, to have leaders here in the community and in the world. Education is not just high school. Older, education should not stop, informal or formal. Remember that. So congratulations to Arroyo Valley High School, to Pacific High School for these certifications, on behalf of Senator Ochoa Boog. Thank you.
If I can ask for everyone's patience, now it's time for group photos of our Pathway students, our staff, and our industry partners. I ask the SBCUSD Board of Education members, superintendent, and cabinet to please join us at the diocese for all three photos. Will the students, staff, and industry partners from Arroyo Valley High School's Digital Media Arts Academy please gather in front of the diocese. Our official district photographer will provide further directions. Now I would like the students, staff, and industry partners from Arroyo Valley's Business and Logistics Academy to please come forward for their photo. And it's fine to be in both photos if you're part of both Pathways. Finally, I ask our Pacific High School's Digital Design and Communications Academy students, staff, and industry partners to come forward for our final group photo. Thank you. This concludes our reception, but I encourage you to stay for the official presentation during the Board of Education meeting. And we also welcome you to take some pictures in the back. We have gold and silver numbers. If our principals want to hold up the number of gold they have or the number of silver they have. Also, our Pathway leads and our students. Thank you so much, everyone, for coming.
It is 5:30, sir. We'll call this meeting to order. We'll start by the Pledge of Allegiance. Do I have a student out there that wants to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Right there. You have to tell me your name, your school, your tenure, okay? Come to the microphone, press that button. Ask the folks to stand and...
Is, is, okay. Hi, my name is Natalie Juarez and I graduated class of 2021. From Arroyo Valley High School.
Go Hawks!
Will everyone please stand? Place the flag, place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Great job, young lady. We did a good job with you.
Alrighty, thank you, Vice President Tillman, for getting us started. Good afternoon, everyone, great to see you. And we will go ahead and we are at, I believe, approval of the agenda.
Board President Wyatt, I do need to pull an item.
Yes, sir.
Speaking of motion for a so moved?
Second.
I was moved and properly seconded by Ms. Biles.
Close session, item HR Cert 21-22-08 ER. Close session item HR Cert 21-22-08 ER. Alright, it's been moved properly second and then amended. A discussion in regards to amended agenda. Alright, let's go ahead and vote on the agenda.
Alright, approval of the agenda carries. We'll move on to, looks like 2.4. Inspirational message, and it looks like I'm up today, so... Yee-haw. Well, I'll start with inspirational message first, just by congratulating our students and staff again on the amazing, amazing acknowledgement today for the Link Learning Gold Certificate certification. Let me see, is it standard for equity and excellence? So let's give them a round of applause again. Job well done. As you know, each month, we have a... Each month always has something special, you know, to celebrate. And in April, there, of course, are many items to celebrate, but also items that I just think are very important to acknowledge that we need to always put at the forefront in regards to our kids and their safety. And for those of you that don't know, this is Anti-Bullying Month. You know, so let's keep that in mind, that, you know, kids, regardless of what's happening out there and all the things we do, continue to be bullied. And, you know, I grew up that way myself, and so when there's bullying happening in our schools, we need to make sure to take care of that. I think we have one of the best programs in our anti-bullying program here in this city, but at the same time, we need to keep a focus on that. I like quotes, so I'll start with a couple quotes in regards to bullying and abuse. And some of you may know this one already. "Each of us deserves the freedom to pursue our own version of happiness. No one deserves to be bullied." And that's like a bonus question, if anyone knows. No? Alright, it's former President Barack Obama, so... And then another president that I admire. "Knowing what's right doesn't mean much unless you do what's right." Okay, and so that's a pretty simple quote. Now we say the definition of character is to do the right thing when no one's looking. Right? Because that's us being who we are and being honest to ourselves and doing the right thing, so... It's also, it's also, and I have a couple, but I'm not going to read them all. It's also How to Observe Stress Awareness Month. So this goes out to my fellow administrators out there and folks that are stressed out every day, as well as our teachers and our students. And so what can we do to obviously reduce stress? If not eliminate it, would be really nice. And I think all of us know this one, but some folks like myself need to do this more often. It's a simple one. Exercise, right? Exercise. And it says, you probably heard this one before, and even though it's probably not exactly what you want to do when you're feeling stressed, because laying on the couch and watching movies sounds much more appealing. I would even throw in eating some food to go along with it. Exercising gets endorphins pumping through your brain, which triggers a happy feeling. Exercise lowers your body's stress hormones like cortisol and releases chemicals that make you feel more at peace. Light a candle or turn on the oil diffusers. Put on some soft soothing music and dim the lights. Take a deep breath and count your blessings. For me, it might be some hard rock, just so you know. Caffeine intake reduction. Well, this one I will probably never get down, okay? And I already started Red Bull before I got here, so ignore me on this one. Think we already know that. More importantly, spend time laughing with friends and family. I think that's important, that we laugh and laugh often, right? I'd rather much laugh than cry. And then the last month of inspiration, and this is one of our mantras, is the National Month of Hope. And, you know, we've talked about making hope happen for our students, our community, our city, and ourselves. So I think it's extremely important that we continue that mantra and continue that tradition of making hope happen in our city. So just a few things that we can do to honor the Making Hope Happen Month. Everyone needs a little hope now and then. Spread a little sunshine their way and bring some hope into their lives. Do so by volunteering, by reading to children in schools. I know some of us did that recently, Read Across America. Experience meaningful and healthy communication with loved ones, family, friends, coworkers, and colleagues. Giving of time, food, and money to help families in need. Minister to those incarcerated are obtained by writing letters and visiting. Post on social media, words of hope, not words of hate. Sharing your story of overcoming with those who are going through hard times. Lending a helping hand to those in need. Cleaning up areas where there is trash, such as parks and beaches. How add our city. And then last, spend a day with the homeless, whether on the streets or in shelters. And it's a quote, "Unless you walk a mile in their shoes, you won't know how to help." And that is my inspiration for this month. Thank you. Alright, it looks like Superintendent Irvin has a message.
Jennifer, are we doing the onboarding right now, right? Correct? Yes, so we want to do the onboarding. So please join us in welcoming our new managers, who are here in attendance this evening, as part of their onboarding program. The first one is Arturo Vasquez, Custodial Supervisor. Can you stand? Okay. Arturo. Okay, he's not here.
We'll still clap for him, alright? Great job, Arturo.
Craig Foucher, Custodial Supervisor.
Alright, Craig.
Congratulations, Craig.
Erica Soria, Nutrition Services Business Manager. Erica.
Erica.
Eugene Dak, Warehouse Manager, Custodial Supervisor. Michael Rodriguez, Warehouse Manager. Alright, Michael's here. Noel, is it Polby? Poli? Yes? Polvez? Okay, got it. Polvez, got it. Custodial Supervisor. Richard Duncan, Custodial Supervisor. And Francesca Reyna, Custodial Supervisor. Thank you.
Alright, welcome aboard and congratulations to all. Alright, we'll move on now. We are at 3.0. Special Presentations and Recognitions. 3.1, recognition of Link Learning Gold Pathways. Alright.
Good evening to members of the Board of Education and Cabinet. My name is Rose Gonzalez, and I'm the Workforce Development Coordinator in the College and Career Readiness and Link Learning Department. Thank you for your leadership and your ongoing support of College and Career Readiness on behalf of our students. And thank you to our principals, our counselors, teachers, students, and families. I am so excited to congratulate Arroyo Valley and Pacific High Schools for earning Link Learning Gold Certified Designations for their career pathways. It is because of your tireless dedication and your hard work that we're here to celebrate this momentous occasion. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Damian Lozano and students from Arroyo Valley High School's Business and Logistics Academy to share their presentation.
Good evening. My name is Damian Lozano, and I'm the Business and Logistics Academy Lead at Arroyo Valley High School. I would first, I would like to thank everyone from our district and our community present tonight for their commitment and their six... To their commitment to the success of our school district. Today, we wanted to speak on the importance of how our career academies help our students with their future career and university endeavors. Our student success is at the forefront of our mind whenever it comes to building our classes or in our partnerships. For example, we have built partnerships with ThinkWise Credit Union, Schools First Credit Union, and Chase Bank, who come and educate our students on their personal finances. And of course, our partnerships with our universities and colleges, with San Bernardino Community College District and Cal State San Bernardino and Chaffey College, where students earn articulation credit in our supply chain class. Without further ado, I would want to introduce, and it's my pleasure to introduce, my first student, a junior in the Business Logistics Academy, Alexander Villanueva.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Alexander Villanueva, and I'm a part of the Business and Logistics Academy at Arroyo Valley High School. As Mr. Lozano said, I am an 11th grader at Arroyo Valley, and I would like to talk to you guys and to thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to have these academies at our school. Because of these academies, I have learned a great amount of things that will help me throughout my lifetime and in my future. I would have never been able to learn these skills, these concepts, and these ideas without the Link Learning and Gold Certification of the Business and Logistics Academy. Because of this academy, I have learned from saving money to whatever I would like to desire in my future for retirement. I've learned the different retirement plans, from a 401K to a traditional and Roth IRA. I have also learned how to properly communicate in a business and formal setting. Without the academy, I would have never been here today with the confidence to talk to you all. And I have great pleasure talking to you all. I would like to thank you from the bottom of my heart about... I would like to thank you from the bottom of my heart that I am grateful for the existence of this academy, and thank you all for your time.
As you can tell, these are future business leaders that are coming up within our community. So the next individual I would want to introduce, she's an amazing senior within our Business and Logistics Pathway, the amazing Leona Williams.
Hello, and thank you for having me here. My name is Leona Williams. I am a senior, and I'm also the Vice President of Business Leaders of AVHS. I would like to thank you for allowing us to have an opportunity like this at our school, knowing that business is needed everywhere, and it is important for everyone to know. And it's not really like in other schools, you know? This is like one in a... Once in a lifetime opportunity. And I've taken that advice from my teachers and experience, and I applied it to my life. Like I said, I've started my own business, but I failed, and I learned to pick myself up, and I gained more experience, and also I've been investing, and that has been going well for me. And I hope that I can apply this to college. Thank you.
Again, I would like to thank all the board members, the extended cabinet, and the community for our continuous support for the Business and Logistics Pathway, our academy at Arroyo Valley High School.
I hope you guys could come on back real quick, because our board would like to ask you some questions.
I just want to congratulate both of you for doing a great job in your presentation, and you touched on some key points. I've been with the County of San Bernardino for 42 years, so I'm going to retire this year. But I started at the county when I was a senior in high school, and I didn't realize the work that I was doing then was going to impact my retirement. So that just for you to be starting thinking about that now is a big deal. And as soon as you can start putting money towards your retirement, the better off you're going to be. So it was good that we're giving that type of economic, financial education, because it's going to impact you and the people around you. So I commend you for being in the program, and congratulate you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President Tillman, Dr. Flores.
I want to congratulate you as well, and also Mr. Lozano and all the teachers, Mr. Valenzuela. When the board decided almost 10 years ago, 12 years ago, 2010, when we had strategic planning, that was a vision, right? It was a dream. It was a dream to create academies for our kids. And we didn't know how many we were going to create, what types, but our teachers stepped up to the plate. They had ideas. They work hard. We want to recognize their hard work, because it's for you, because you are our future. You are our hope. You are our faith. You know, we believe in you. And so I want to commend you both. Failure, there's always lessons to learn, because then there's always a next time, right? And so I embrace failure, because I know it's a lesson. It's not a mistake. So I commend you, and I wish you the best. And on behalf of the board, congratulations to Arroyo. And by the way, Mr. Tillman's responsible for Arroyo High School. He was the one that pushed to have a royal. That was one of his dreams. And so we need to also applaud him, so... Congratulations again.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, and I see Ms. Seviles has her green light on. Ms. Seviles?
Yeah, I just really want to say congratulations. I sit up here and, you know, my face and my eyes and just my whole being is, you know, so happy to see you guys up here, because it's not easy, you know? We have today a lot of people in here, and so you're speaking before not just us, but a lot of other people in the audience. And, you know, public speaking is not always an easy thing to do. And so just coming up here and, you know, having the courage to come up and... I saw you, you know, you had your whole thing memorized, you know, and, you know, so commend to you. Commend to you and both the staff and the teachers. When I was your age, I didn't even know there was a board that we existed, so, you know? You're a step ahead. But congratulations again. Really good to see you guys up here.
Thank you, Ms. Seviles. Alright, and thank you, everyone. Thank you again.
Earlier today, the Business and Logistics Academy received their award from the Link Learning Alliance. As they take their seats, please take a look at the photo of the award presentation that's featured on the displays. Thank you, Mr. Lozano and students, for your presentation. I would like to invite Mr. Victor Suarez from Arroyo Valley High School's Digital Media Arts Academy to share their presentation.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, board. Today is an excellent day in San Bernardino. And we have excellent days every day. It is... It takes time for us to slow down and look at what we have in our schools. Today, we heard about many positive stories and stories that have really uplifted our cities. With DMA, we see a lot of potential growth in our students, but also in our communities, because every day I'm inspired by my students. I come into my classroom, I hear about different stories, how they're using what I'm teaching them. Most of our students, they have parents that have their own businesses. And every day, they're telling me, "Mr. Suarez, this is what I'm doing for my dance business, business cards website." So it's really impacting our community. It's time to uplift our city, and we have very wonderful stories. And one of them is actually from our alumni, Natalie Juarez.
Hello again. I won't take up much of your time. Well, that's a lie. When I was younger, I knew I wanted to be a filmmaker since I was a very small child. I haven't grown much, but I still want to be a filmmaker. One thing that my household always prioritized was a great education, which is why I went to Arroyo Valley High School. I knew I could have top-of-the-line classes and a great social life and have a nice time. What I wasn't aware of was that I could also get hands-on experience with filmmaking and with establishing photography and graphic design and being well aware of all these skills I didn't know I could achieve. So when I joined Digital Media Academy and I realized, well, hey, I like the artistry behind this, and I did want to be a filmmaker, but now I know how to edit photographs, and I know how to create banners and flyers. It was really fun, and it was completely unexpected, because like I said, I thought I was just going in for my normal math and English class. And instead, I created great connections with my peers. I had wonderful staff and teachers working with us. And I know so much now. I've already gone into college, and I'm well on my way to already taking my first film classes. And I have a position where I'm a social media coordinator. And one of my favorite stories about my job interview was I went in with a flyer. It wasn't my best work, but I had created it in Mr. Suarez's class, and there was an animated version of it, and I'm pretty sure that's what sealed the deal for the employers. And I had the job shortly after. Thank you.
Thank you. So our students are actually, when they graduate from high school, they have a portfolio from DMA showcasing the same level of professionalism that they... Someone out in the field would be showing when being interviewed. And Natalie did compete against professional individuals, graphic designers, and I am very proud of what she has accomplished. She has also... She has also shared with me that for the summer, she is actually going to London for a film study. So I'm very proud of that. Our Hawks are going all the way across the pond and making sure that our, our district is known also. My next two students, John and Alisa, have also participated in a big project that DMA was part of last year. And that was that we were documenting, documenting a, actually we did three documentaries, documentaries. And one was on the late Dr. Margaret Hill. And I believe we were one of the last group to interview Ms. Dr. Hill. And John and Alisa will share their experience.
Hello, I'm Alissa and I am a senior at Arroyo Valley High School for Digital Media, I'm part of Digital Media Academy. And me and John were lucky enough to interview Dr. Margaret Hill and it was such an honor. Sorry, I'm so nervous. We were, I don't even know how to start it. Go, John.
I'm sorry, I'm really nervous. I was the one who edited all three, three of the interviews for the document, document, I'm sorry. And it was a great experience. It was my first time editing something that's really big, besides like a little film project. It was a great experience. I was taught through from Mr. Mejia, our, our teacher for film. And it was, it was a great experience. I learned a lot from it. He taught me a lot of things that I didn't know.
Lastly, I just want to say that Digital Media Academy like really helped us become more open-minded and become more creative with our ideas. And just, we are very thankful for all the opportunities that this academy has given us.
And in closing, I want to say that today we saw excellence and we see excellence in every day at our school. And the way that we see excellence is by investing in our students and also in our classroom. So thank you for investing in our future.
All right, and thank you. We have, it looks like a comment or question by Mr. Tillman, Vice President Tillman.
What technology did you use to do the editing? Is it software package or what do you use to do editing?
I used Premiere Pro and then I used the, the school computers they had for us, the, the MacBooks and I edited it within like three days, just using Premiere Pro and that's really it.
And then the data was stored on a hard drive or a flash drive?
It was stored on a hard drive.
And then, so someone gave it to you? You downloaded it or?
Yeah, Mejia gave me, gave me the hard drive and the MacBook to edit it and I already have my login for Adobe Premiere. So I just used that and he let me do what, do whatever I wanted with it and make sure, he said it was great.
Now, actually, it was a question because you take all that for granted, but you just named a bunch of software packages, applications, hardware that you use. So you have that, that expertise already. And it's, it's just beautiful seeing that you guys are getting exposed to it at this early, at this early age. I was at a conference, National School Board Association over the weekend and there's a gentleman by the name of, the guy from the Shark Tank, Damon Johns, he did a presentation. And he said that 50% of the 20-year-olds will retire from positions and titles that don't exist right now. So your, your future is going to be an exciting future and you'll, you're going to be doing things with the, the technology that you've been exposed to right now that we've never heard of. So I just commend you all to the instructor, the district for the program. It's wonderful. You have someone who graduated already, she's doing that kind of stuff already and you guys really are getting a head start on your competition. And that's the goal of the board, our board. We want to give you tools that help you compete in the real world. And these type of programs do that. So I commend you for taking advantage of it because it is going to make a big difference in your future. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice President Tillman, Dr. Flores.
I want to commend you all. Getting a gold certification is a big deal. And I want to ask each one of you, what are your aspirations with these, this knowledge that you have, that you've, your teachers have taught you and what, what, what do you see ahead of you? Even you that's going to London, Ms. Juarez, what, what do you, what are your aspirations?
You know, growing up especially in, we see the community we have at Arroyo Valley. We're extremely thankful for what we have because we don't come from much. And one of my hopes is pushing representation in the film industry when I get older, you know? I'm a Latino woman. I think it's important to see more Latinas in filmmaking and I hope that by going global, you know, maybe these other places that may not have expected to see another Latina filmmaker will be open-minded and realize that, hey, I'm here, I exist and I'll make sure they know I exist because I'll make sure I'll keep doing this in the future.
So my aspiration, so as soon as I graduate, I already plan on going to RCC and majoring in film production. And well, right now, even on the side, like my free time after school and stuff, the weekends, I already do photography and I, this past weekend, actually, I was a photographer for a wedding. I did film and, and photos. And it was just a great opportunity and I learned, I was able to borrow the cameras that my school had provide, has provided for me and was lucky enough to take it with me. And also, so my dream too is to become a director, a director, producer, and screenwriter for movies and TV shows. So I've been working really hard. I have already been working on a bunch of films, thankfully for, thankfully for DMA. And because we have an after-school program called Film Society, which I go, I attend every week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, to get more, to learn more, what's the word? Yeah, to learn more about filmmaking and to be able to use more tools that they provide us. And like, I'm sorry, I'm so nervous. So that, that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Good luck.
For me, entering high school, after eighth grade, entering high school, I already had an idea, I could've seen the introduction film for DMA when, when all the, when the few of the high schoolers went to, to our middle schools. Like that, I wanted to be in Film Society, not Film Society, DMA because I love photography, filming, films, all that stuff. And so I didn't really have a grasp on what I wanted to do after high school, but you know, after all these opportunities they gave us, I wanted to do more towards photography, like freelance work, just like just anything related to photography or filming. It's just, I guess it's like my current dream so far.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Suarez, what is your dream for our academy, for the DMA?
My dream moving forward with DMA is to continue partnerships with industry leaders, but also with our community. One of the future partners that we have is actually the city of San Bernardino, county of San Bernardino, and also Loma Linda Children's Hospital.
Thank you.
Digital Media Arts Academy received their award from the Link Learning Alliance earlier today. And as they take their seats, please take a look at the photo of the award presentation featured on the display. Thank you, Mr. Suarez and students for your presentation. Lastly, I would like to invite Ms. Megan Moore and Ms. Becky Huff from Pacific High School's Digital Design and Communications Academy, along with their students, to share their presentation.
Good evening, SBCUSD School Board, Cabinet Members, Superintendent Irvin, Link Learning Alliance, and Community Members. I would like to thank you all for your support of these programs and investment in our students and their college and career preparation. My name is Becky Huff and I'm the Link Learning Program Specialist at Pacific High School. I'm honored to be here today representing the Digital Design and Communications Academy known as the DDC. A quick history of the DDC Academy. It's a group of dedicated educators that wanted to come together to invest in our students by building a collection of highly qualified linked learning pathways. Offered under one academy umbrella, we have an amazing team with great support by our principal, Dr. Natalie Ramundo, counseling team, career center team, pirate support team, and intervention team. We have been able to create an academy that offers many supports for our students and endless opportunities. Our pathways being recognized in the DDC Academy tonight consist of the Adobe Pathway led by Mark Billings, the Business Pathway led by Carolyn Welliver, the Animation Pathway led by Nick Collins, and the Performance Pathway led by our dearly departed Marcy Collins. The pathways in the DDC all work collectively to provide students with experiences that are heavily connected to our student, student learning outcomes, the five Cs. Twenty-first century skills and all pathways were designed and accredited A through G courses to help prepare students for college and career. We provide certification opportunities in both Adobe and Microsoft for college certification and dual enrollment and articulation credit opportunities with San Bernardino Valley College. We currently have over 200 Pacific students taking one or more dual enrollment college classes this year at San Bernardino Valley College and of those 296 are DDC students and 40 are Biomed. We have strong connections. We have strong connections with our industry partners. We have amazing partners that were here tonight. I'd like to thank Thinkwise Credit Union, George San Martin, and Lauren Morris representing Thinkwise and they are one of our adoptees. They've been with us for five years. They've supported us, they've sponsored us, they attend our events, they put on micro internships, they put on our financial literacy workshops. They're an amazing partner. We also have Sue Abito with the San Bernardino Department of Behavioral Health here as well today that provides get psyched workshops, guest speaker opportunities, and also provides our SCL resources for advisory, school-wide lessons. We had Bill Tynan with Garner Holt who closely works with us for hands-on work-based learning workshops and industry tours. Finally, I want to share how proud I am of our pathway students. There's so many here tonight and there's so many back at Pacific. We're so proud of them for their pursuit for more, more education, more career skills, more opportunities to work with the community and on their path for a bright future. I'm honored to present one of our DDC Academy teachers who's our VAPA Department Chair and leading our new Art Communications Pathway starting this fall, Ms. Megan Moore.
All right, so good evening. Before I get started, I want to take a moment to actually thank Becky for all the hard work. To create a pathway for our students at our school cannot be done by just one individual. We need to have support from our administrators, you as the board, supportive staff like Becky, as well as our college and career program here at the district. As Becky told you, my name is Megan Moore. I'm the Visual Performing Arts Department Chair. I'm also the CTE art teacher at my school, I'm one of our psych tech coaches, and also the Link Crew Coordinator, which is a peer mentorship program at Pacific High School. I've been a part of the DDC Academy since its very beginning. Our goal is to create a community that bridges the gap between our individual classrooms to the community at the school, as well as prepare our students for post-secondary life. With our collaboration at our school, we are actively working school-wide with fellow teachers, supportive staff, as well as community members to create work-based projects, as well as cross-curricular projects at our school to help them prepare for the future and 21st century skills. One of the things that we have done is that we have actually had our students do a student-run program, such as our Winter Family Festival, which actually hosted over 150, was this year? Over 150 community members, not just from Pacific, but also our feeder schools and elementary schools, which was wonderful to see. My students have also helped prepare for back-to-school night, as well as many more programs. Right now, I have the honor of introducing one of our students who's the beneficiary of being in one of our pathways and receiving the support at Pacific High School, Roxanne.
Good afternoon. My name is Roxanne Aguilar and I am a proud student at the Animation Pathway in the DDC Academy. Being part of the DDC has helped me by discovering behind-the-scenes steps necessary to become an animator and digital designer. It shows me the difficulties and makes like some experience of, of like animation and digital design. Pathways are a wonderful experience because it shows different careers that students can do in, in animation or graphic design. You learn about challenges that you could, that you can prepare for and overcome when you meet those challenges. It is like getting firsthand experience in the field before, before like you go into college. Actually, I'm a TA for my teacher in the art class and I've seen so many talented students. And so many actually wanted to join the DDC, DDC program because they enjoyed doing art and they realized the talent they have. So the pro, but the pathway for animation, Adobe, students have realized their, realize, has realized what their potential can be and have them, have them realize that their potential could, could, um, sorry, that their potential could turn into a career and could make them hap, like could have them do something that they're happy and passionate about. I have collab, I have collaborated peers and many friends who have really appreciated and fallen in love with art and drove into projects in their pathway classes. I have a friend who is pursuing a career in art, a career in art in college currently from the Animation Pathway and another friend who's pursuing a college degree in graphic design with, with their Adobe Pathway. My future plan consists with me pursuing a degree in computer science with an emphasis in game development. Getting, getting recognized as a gold certificate program is nice for our students, being recognized for the hard work that they put into their classes, staff helping students, making sure that they're on the right path, making sure the classroom environment is safe and comfortable for them, for them. They prepare us to ask questions and ask for help when we are falling behind and make sure we are understanding what we are learning. I was one of the students that was falling behind in sophomore year since my pathway was in seventh period and I had sports and I was falling behind and I thought I couldn't make it until my teacher did videos. And so when I come in class, I did those videos and I catch up. And I was doing really well in that class due to my teacher, due to my teacher making sure that I could catch up. For the pathway to be gold, it shows our school's potential and what students can achieve by coming to Pacific High School.
Good evening. My name is Donovan Priestley. I am a student, I'm a student in business, in the Business Pathway, in the DDC Academy. Being a part of the DDC helped me learn how to be able to apply for jobs and get a job, actually. And I have attained some skills in filling out a job application, how to do a resume also, and finding out what other jobs and companies will want you for, like your skills that you need. And I've acquired, also being in that class of business, I've acquired mastery skills of learning PowerPoint and Word and I'm looking forward to learning Excel soon too. Different colleges I also applied for, for being in that class is San Bernardino Valley College and Forte, where I look forward in learning more about business and how to own my own one day. And being gold-recognized is great for our school, for others to learn what I learned by being in this program. And that's what I think. And that's what I think.
Alrighty, I think we may have had a comment by Vice President Tillman.
Again, great presentation and great job. I see the principals for both schools out there beaming. So congratulations to you for facilitating these great programs. The logos on the shirts, is that something that somebody designed in the program?
It was designed by Adobe a few years ago, and actually Thinkwise Credit Union, our adopter, helped purchase all these shirts for our school.
And I am truly impressed by the technology you talked about you're using. I do technology for a living, and that's what we do in-house. Those are the same applications that we use. So you're being well-prepared for your future. And as you said, you learn how to do a resume and search for jobs, and that's what it's all about. And you can never start too early, trust me. Time goes by real fast. And so it's beautiful that we're giving you the tools right now to be successful. And you know, the sad thing is, for all you that have presented tonight, a lot of you students are invisible to the community that we live in. No one realizes the talent that we have in our city. They wouldn't, when they think about San Bernardino and the students we have, they don't see you guys' faces. That's what's beautiful about having these presentations, to see the gold-minded talent that we have here in our district and how the district is cultivating and giving you guys the tools to be successful. And with that, you know, I did the inspirational speech at the last board meeting, and I talked about money. And Dr. Wyatt said, "Why is money inspirational?" Because we can give you guys what you need. So I do want to say to all the programs, we do have one-time money that we never had before. So if you need new tools, it was this beautiful hearing, the student talked about how she borrowed a camera from the district to go out and do work. That's what we're talking about doing. So if we need to buy more devices and more tools to make you guys successful, you make sure we know about it. And if they're telling you, "Know what your site in the district," they call me direct. Now, I know I'm not supposed to do it, but I don't mind fighting those battles. And you got a board, a total board that supports you. So this is the time now. You let us know what you need, and we're going to at least be able to do more in terms of equipment so that we can keep hearing these success stories. And I commend you and thank you all for doing the great work that you're doing.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. And trust me, I know money's inspirational. Dr. Flores.
I did all what Mr. Tillman said. We have the money. We need to support you. And Mr. Tillman, I think that's a great idea. We have a gold mine in all of you. We need to publicize it. We need to let our community know what gold mines we have in all of you, in our teachers, in our programs, our kids. And that's a digital media academy, how would you say, challenge? How do we do it? How will we let everybody know who we are, what we have, what you're doing? We need to do that, okay? And I want to thank, you know, the Program Specialist Becky Huff and also Dimitri Kornopoulos at Arroyo for all their work that they do. I see Laura Smith in the audience. She was the leader and Program Specialist in the Teaching Academy. I hope the Teaching Academy gets a gold certification next, because we need teachers. We need great teachers. We need to grow our own teachers. We need, we love you, okay? And we support you. And come back, come back, and lift up others, okay? Go be successful and come back and lift others up. So congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. And I think it was me. Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Well, I'm going to say this much, it's not a secret to me that I know we have talent here, okay? We have outstanding talent in this city and in this district. And you know, I'll definitely say that, because my two children went to school in this district, and I know what they're doing now. So just know that we have the utmost confidence in you. You know, we are very proud of you, each and every one of all our students that are here tonight, not just the ones that are standing up there right now, as well as our staff. And we believe in you 110%. I'll put our students up against anyone, anytime. Let me just say that. And trust me, I like to brag every chance I get about our students and what they're doing. And back here and what you're doing right now, oh yeah, that's going to be out there, I guarantee it. So, great job. I think it's, I don't need no questions. All right. More member, Ms. Rosales Medina.
So much, and congratulations again. And I also was at the National School Boards Association this past weekend. And then when Damon John, who was the creator of FUBU and also is part of the Shark Tank, is that one of the conversations he was asking and making sure that we look at future employment or future jobs out there that maybe not have been created. You know, technology advances, and we have to make sure that we're advancing with technology. So what you're all doing, that's the future. And we need to look at career pathways that will be relevant 20, 10 years down the line. And this is an industry, this is the work environment that we do want to promote and expand on. So thank you so much for what you're doing. And for those in the arts, I wanted to be an artist in high school, and I remember someone told me, "Well, the problem is that they don't make much money." But people don't realize that even with fine arts, you can go into digital arts that is the future, graphic design and all these other aspects, that we can motivate those that are within fine arts to look at career pathways as well, within the digital aspects. So thank you so much again.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Alrighty, thank you again.
The Digital Design and Communications Academy received their award from the Link Learning Alliance earlier today. And as they take their seats, please take a look at the photo of the award presentation that's featured on the display. I will now turn it over to Dr. Esquivel for his remarks.
Really appreciate you and all the effort that your team put in to make today possible. Good evening, Board, Superintendent Irvin, Cabinet and members of our San Bernardino City Unified School District community. Board, I'd like to begin by recognizing your vision and support for our career pathways. Earlier this evening, we had the pleasure of recognizing three new Link Learning Gold-Certified programs. These achievements are a direct result of the priorities you set and investments you have made in connecting our students to college and careers. You are also to be applauded, along with our principals, our teachers, counselors, students and industry partners who were honored this afternoon. Without you, the quality and opportunities we provide would not have been possible. A gold certification is the highest level of achievement awarded by the Link Learning Alliance, and we now have five in our district. I want to also call attention to a few others who deserve recognition. SBCUSD also has seven silver pathways on their way to gold, with four of them added this year. Congratulations to Cajon High School and Principal Tania Bishop for their Link Learning Silver Certified IB Film Theory and Production Pathway, and the Behavioral Health and Human Services Pathway as well. They're back there. We're also very proud to have the first two Link Learning Silver Certified Pathways in the state. Congratulations San Andreas High School and Principal Dory Stranton. San Andreas achieved silver status on their Business and Technology and Health Science Pathways. Lastly, I want to thank the Link Learning Alliance for celebrating our district and our pathways. The Link Learning Alliance is an important partner in the development of our pathways. Their framework emphasizes cross-subject, student-centered learning with strong career and post-secondary integration, combined with plenty of student supports. This means that our pathways, students are, in our pathways, students are not only prepared for jobs of the future with hands-on learning, but also prepared for college as they can also graduate A through G-ready. Please join me in welcoming their president, Ann Stanton, to make a few comments. Ms. Stanton, thank you for your leadership and welcome.
Good afternoon or evening, Board. I'm short, thank you. Superintendent Irvin, all of the young people and educators who I don't, I'm sorry to have my back to. It is absolutely a joy to be back in San Bernardino City. It always feels a little bit like coming home to all of us at the Link Learning Alliance, because we once again get to witness the incredible work that's being done here, the talent and the power of the young people in this community, and the community itself that's doing everything possible to build those powerful futures for young people, where every single one of them are connected to purpose and prepared for college and career, both, not or. And everyone with Link Learning, and this is a movement that's been going on over a decade, we believe that the magic lies in the power of plus, right? That if we can really work to integrate college preparation and rigorous academics and real-world learning, student supports and the opportunity for adult mentorship, we can ultimately help every young person get to the position where they have total control of their future. And this power is really, really important, and no more important than it has ever been as we emerged from the pandemic during this decade, which we call the Decade of Difference, where young people are between the ages of 14 and 24. During that time, they develop a sense of who they are, what they can do, and what their aspirations are for the future. So that time really demands opportunities and learning opportunities that engage their minds, that engage their hands, as you've heard, that engage their spirits, that engage their hearts and their passions. And the gold pathways that we're celebrating today are excelling at this on every level. The educators are igniting students' passions. They are seeing young people dream bigger, work harder because of those opportunities. And the power of plus in San Bernardino has always been the collective power of each and every one of you in this room, every parent in this community, every young person in this community, the business leaders that join with educators to create these opportunities for young people, the board. All of these golden opportunities that are being given to young people pair academic learning with real-world experiences. They introduce career possibilities to young people that they could never even imagine without the support of the work that's being done here. And we just look forward to the day when every young person in the state of California has those opportunities. San Bernardino's journey to gold has been one that we celebrate, and it's also, as it's something that you all celebrate, it pushes us at the Alliance that much further to expand these opportunities for more young people. And we hope that we can, in 10 years from now, say we have a million young people that have these opportunities for gold-certified pathways. And we are really happy also to say that with the Governor's Budget, there is a significant investment proposed to expand Golden State Pathways and combine those with dual enrollment opportunities that have the power, in partnership with Community Schools Dollars, to transform the education for adolescents in this state in a time that is so important, given what has happened during the pandemic, when so many of them have disconnected from education and education pathways. These investments also really allow us to build on investments that have been made in the state already, and allow us to expand significantly what is going on to really provide pathways to purpose for young people. San Bernardino City has been at the center of that story for a long time, and you should be incredibly proud of the fact that you're showing everyone how it can be done. Pacific and Arroyo Valley High Schools are home to some of the first-ever gold Link Learning Pathways. Pacific High School is the first school in the nation to have all of its students enrolled in Link Learning Gold-Certified Pathways. So that is an amazing accomplishment. And Dr. Wyatt, we will join you in getting the word out wherever it can be spread about the tremendous success. I also just want to say, and Dr. Esquivel noted it, but San Bernardino's San Andreas High School is also the first-ever continuation high school in this state to reach a silver certification status. And Cajon is on the heels of all the gold pathways, with new silver certified pathways well on their way to becoming gold. So we stand at the ability to look at the state as a whole, and we are so, so enormously proud to be in partnership with San Bernardino City Unified School District. The time is really now to expand the opportunities. We know that you can do it, and you know that you can do it, and you can help us lead the way. Thank you for bringing this vision of the and to life in San Bernardino City, for leading the way for Link Learning Schools here and students everywhere across the state. Keep learning, keep growing, and congratulations on all of the many ways you're transforming this system, as well as this community to prosper and thrive in the future. So thank you.
At this time, I want to take a moment to invite the Silver Certified Pathway administrators and Program Specialists and teachers that are here tonight. If you could please stand. So we have Silver Certified Pathways at Arroyo Valley High School, Cajon High School, Indian Springs High School and San Andreas High School. If you could please stand so we can clap for you. All right, with that, I'd like to conclude our presentation and just thank you all again for all of your support. We hear it loud and clear that you are behind us, and we are so grateful for that. So thank you so much.
All right, thank you again. An outstanding job again to all of our students and staff. I'll tell you, when we talk about, I said it earlier about making hope happen, well, our students, you give us hope. You really do for our future and our community. So again, absolutely amazing job. Alrighty, we will move forward on our agenda. We are on 3.2 Resolution and Recognition of Administrative Professionals Week and Day, and this is Ms. Savios.
Thank you, Board President. Whereas both Administrative Professionals Week and Day are observed every April in workplaces across the country to recognize the important contributions of administrative professionals and the essential roles they play in coordinating the office, operations of educational institutions and other organizations. And whereas Administrative Professionals Day is celebrated on the Wednesday of Administrative Professionals Week, and whereas the work of administrative professionals require advanced knowledge and expertise in a wide range of areas including communications, computer software, office technology, project management organization, customer service and other vital office management responsibilities, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of San Bernardino City Unified School District hereby recognizes April 24th through the 30th of 2022 as Administrative Professionals Week and April 27th, 2022 as Administrative Professionals Day, and encourages administrators throughout the district to recognize the hard work, dedication and important contributions administrative professionals make each and every day to support the education of our students. So moved.
All right, it's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Thank you, Ms. Savios. Move on to 4.0 Public Comments, 4.1 Receive Public Comments. This is the only time to poke, we'll have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda, and with their subject-matter jurisdictions such as district policies, procedures, programs, services or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will be provided no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned, under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. All right, we'll go ahead and start with public comment number one. And this is our CAPS Golf Squad, so come on up, CAPS. Caps Golf Squad, so come on up, Caps.
Good evening, Board President Scott Wyatt, Vice President Danny Tillman, Board members, Superintendent Mr. Irvin, and the Cabinet. My name is Dominic Guterres. I am a San Bernardino native, I am a Cardinal City graduate under Dr. Rodriguez, and a proud resident of the city, and I am here on behalf of the San Bernardino Golf Squad 61. We want to just be -- we just want to, number one, spend the time of this public comment to thank you guys for all your support. We're really seeing the comment about the talent here. We have a huge talent in San Bernardino, and the golf program is definitely showing that. With your support, we've been able to do some really cool stuff. A couple of days ago, we actually took this group to an LPGA event, a lot of them for their first golf major event they've ever been to, and some of our young ladies made a heck of an impression on the LPGA Commissioner, so I'm pretty sure we'll be seeing them again really soon. And with your support, we've definitely been able to do this stuff. And we have some of the parents here and some of the students that wanted to say thank you and share their experience of how with the golf program. First, I'm going to call up Ms. Elizabeth Basin.
All righty, welcome.
Good evening, thank you guys. First off, I want to say I'm so impressed by these programs. I had no idea we're in the school district, and this program's been great. I'm really thankful. We moved to Rosanna Ranch in 2018 from Eastfell, and my daughter's school experience has been life-changing here. You know, we came here, every teacher she's had, Ms. Ayola, Ms. Scalfani, Mr. Asparza, Ms. Garcia have been exceptional. She goes to Pacuma. The principal, Ms. Morales, has been pivotal, just amazing lady, and I just want to thank you guys so much for that. I've been in healthcare since I was 16, but I took about two years to work with autistic kids in the community, not here, but in LA, and I worked with a lot of junior high and high school kids, many of them, some came from more affluent families than others, but I saw the side effects and the aftermath if they didn't have somebody at home to watch over them and they were left alone. You had the kids running to the sports from school, you had the kids running to their parents because maybe they had some social outings, and you had the kids that, you know, they kind of were left on campus to their own devices and unfortunately may have gotten involved in some things. I know statistically speaking, 95% of Fortune 500 top executives played some kind of sport. I know that about 80% of teenage pregnancy basically is because somebody didn't have anything, whether it's music or school after school. I know that over 90% of drug use and smoking is based on kids just not having something to do. So this golf program has been amazing. My daughter, last year unfortunately, on January 31st of 2021, we lost my father. I'm a single mom, I've raised my daughter on my own, and so my dad was very pivotal in that. Unfortunately, it's three years old, we went our separate ways completely, and my dad has been her father figure. I've been blessed with the means to be able to provide any kind of support I could for her, go to any therapist I want, and I tried sports, I tried different things, different therapists, and you know, it was really hard. In September of 2021, my parents were happily married, my mom was put on a ventilator and almost passed away, leaving a lot of heartache for my daughter, and I have tried so many things to, just, you know, to get my daughter's attention. There's been a lot of anger and other things going on, and golf has just been so life-changing for us. I did not even think about golf for my daughter. I know that my daughter knows how to socialize very well with adults but children, she's kind of a more interpersonal, maybe one kid at a time. And we went to golf, and I've seen tremendous amounts of change in her since December. In December, she said, "We're going to a white elephant gift exchange," and I'm in golf. I signed myself up for golf at Pacuma Caps, and I'm like, "You signed yourself up for golf?" Like, I was a little confused, and then she's like, "It's on Sundays." And I'm like, you know, we kind of go to church on Sundays, it's a little difficult to get to golf on Sundays, but then when I went and I saw the benefit, it's not my daughter I've seen change. I've seen these kids just really go to a whole nother level, really supporting each other, being excited. I've seen kids that started off where they were a bit shy, and they're like, "Hey, let me, like, let me see how I can help you out." And I just think this program's amazing, and I'd like to see, you know, it be more of an outreach, you know? I didn't know about it. I don't think a lot of the parents at Pacuma did not even know about it, you know? I'm like, "Hey, Sarah's in golf." They're like, "Where'd you get that from?" I have a friend, she lives in Eastfell, she's like, "Can I bring my boys? Like, why don't we have this here?" And so this golf program's been amazing. Coach Larry brings a really cool perspective. He's like that tough-love coach, he cheers on the kids, but he calls them out on the lessons they need to learn. Coach Dom is just always like in this amazing mood and really inspiring to the kids. Coach Natalie's just a doll, you know, she really inspires the young ladies. And Coach Vic, he brings that form of wisdom, you know? So it's a really dynamic group of coaches that I'm very impressed to see my daughter working with. I took some time, I have my own business, so I get a little more flexibility, and last week, I'm like, "You're going to have practice on Monday, Wednesday, you know, from 3:30 on, and you want me to go, you want to go to the women leadership in golf, and you want me to go to the LPGA?" But of course, I said yes, and we went, and I mean, it was so amazing to see these women in golf signing these kids shirts, hats, the kids were speaking with them, and I think it's amazing for the kids to see that, hey, you know, these ladies that have really gone far in their careers, they're just like me, like, they're just like us, you know? Everyone has a story, you know, not everyone came from, you know, some people come from more privileged families, some don't, but this program's amazing, and I really wanted to thank you guys for bringing it to the community and just tell you guys also that Caps has been amazing. Lakeisha has just been a doll, and I really appreciate everything this district does. I've seen what other districts do. Like I said, we came from the Corona Norco School District, and I was a little bit worried at first, like, "We're going to San Bernardino School District?" And my friends in LA are like, "Oh, you're moving to San Bernardino?" Because I don't really understand exactly where I live in Rosanna Ranch. And then when they hear the stories and the opportunities my daughter has, they're like, "Hey, can you find out from, can you find out from the school board how we can get those opportunities in our district?" Like, some of my friends are like, "My daughters and sons are in private school, and we pay thousands of dollars, and they don't even have this opportunity." So I'm just so humbled and grateful to have this opportunity in her school, and I want to thank all of you guys, and I would love to see it continue throughout the year. I think in the summertime, it would be really helpful for some of, maybe more of the junior high and high school kids that maybe their families unfortunately have to work several jobs and things like that, you know? There's something called Going to the Khaki hat, and Jerry was the first one to got it, which was amazing. I've seen him improve so much since the beginning, and when you have that hat, you're kind of allowed to go to the golf course and kind of have a little bit more opportunity to practice. So it's really something that, of course, if the kids have other golf friends, it's a good group for them. If they're a little bit more to themselves, it's a good way for them to find something to do within the community, and I thank you guys so much for your time.
All righty, and thank you. We really appreciate the comments as well, and, you know, I know I speak on behalf of the Board here, we want everything possible for our kids, and it's moments like this that inspire us as well. Let's say we want to do everything we possibly can to ensure our students excel. And I'll say this to the young ladies and young men out there, we want to see you on our high school teams, we want, like you heard me say earlier, I want to see you taken into those other districts, right? And we've got problems like this, for that reason, start them young, make sure you get the great teaching now, and then represent our schools on a high note, because again, we're very proud of you, and we want you to excel and do your very best. And I think, Dr. Flores.
Yes, I'd like to hear from a couple of the kids, what you think about the program. Bring the mic down, Mia. Bring down the mic, yeah.
First, I wanted to say for thank you for letting 61 Golf speak. I'm a little nervous because I've never done this before. Golf has changed my family and our lives, and last year, my grandfather passed away, and I had a lot of grief with my family going on, and my mom tried to put me in therapy and that didn't work, so I found out about golf, and I came, you know, I started practicing, and it's really made me really happy, and it makes my energy go up a lot. And I just wanted to thank you guys for letting our program go on. And golf, this program's not just a program, it's a family. Thank you for letting me speak.
I don't know about you guys, but I --
Thank you.
You touched my heart.
Thank you so much. Yeah, you touched my heart. And you know what? Mr. Tillman is a golfer, so I want him to tell you why he loves golf.
Well, I love you all. I think it's a wonderful program, and you touched on it. When we have our kids in constructive programs, it makes all the difference. And the people in the district that know, I go to bat for it all the time. I know that when my students are doing stuff constructive, we're saving lives.
And sports.
So I don't mind, I don't mind fighting for it, and I'm glad that we have a board that supports it, and you guys coming down here telling the story, it's what it's all about. And we're going to continue to do it, continue to support it, and grow it, like you said, and spread the word that we're doing it here.
We thank you, parents.
Yes.
Yeah, we thank you so much for supporting. I know it's hard to take them here, take them there, and all of that, it costs money and time, but it's worth it, isn't it? It's worth investing in our kids, and kids, can I see, how many of you love it? Do you all love it? Right, okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Ms. Rosas Medina?
I'm just really excited to hear you come down, because sometimes as Board members, we get several groups that will come in, and I just want to say thank you for coming. And really, I mean, you have a wonderful spokesperson that just spoke right now, the student, and I mean, this is an amazing program, and I would definitely want to find out how we can expand it. But with the district, I do have a question. Is this, is there a golf team at high schools and junior highs? And I'm wondering, do they go through competition as well? Or is this just something that we just do as Caps program after school where it's not? I mean, so I'm just curious.
I'm going to address that. I played golf at Purdue my senior year, right? And then after graduating high school, I went on to the Navy and kind of just forgot about golf. When I came back, I fell in love with the sport again because it's kind of spiritual, you know, it's an individual sport, it's not a team sport, and we think if the kids can catch on to that, they can do anything in life, right? After coming back to San Bernardino, I fell in love with golf again, and I started reaching out to the community to find out that there wasn't golf at Purdue, there wasn't golf at Pacific anymore, there wasn't golf at any of the schools. And, you know, sometimes things get looked over, and the kids weren't given that opportunity, there wasn't anyone here doing that, creating that possibility. Our goal is that over the next few years, these guys really adapt to the sport and take it on seriously and create those high school teams. We believe that we have a very solid team here that can do it, and with your guys' support, we will make it happen, and this sport can definitely shape the city, for sure. And it's very exciting to do, so hopefully, over the next few years, we have a couple more golf teams going in these high schools. That'd be very cool.
Okay, great.
Some more college looks too.
All right, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you, Ms. Rosas Medina. I'm looking to see if we have more lights, and I'll say this, you know, six years ago when I first came on the Board, Caps was one of the very first discussion items that we ever worked on and voted on, and I know Mr. Tillman was instrumental in that conversation. I'll never forget it, because it's when I realized that, being on the Board, you actually have tremendous influence on what happens in a district. And I believe it was that night we allocated, it was either $1 or $1.5 million to ensure we don't have any kids on a waiting list, and that the Caps program will be support us to our best of our ability, and that we'd have programs like this. So I'm really emotional about that, because six years later, you know, we get a testimony like this, and we want to hear more testimonies like this six years later when you're, or 10 years later when you're in high school on that golf team, doing what we're hoping you're going to do, and that is excel at that sport. So thank you again to all of you for being here tonight. Oh my gosh, it really motivates me, just as a Board member, as a parent, and I know Mr. Shackelford's here, he's hiding in the back, and that's because he's a humble man, but I just want to say thank him, thank you to him as well, so thank you.
If any of you guys ever want to come play, I'm pretty sure it'd freak these kids out to play with the Board members, so.
Yeah, I'm going to need some practice before I get beat by them though, okay? Because they're going to take it to me. All right, I'm sorry, I got a call on that public comment, and I apologize, that was a long one, so, all right, and let me put my glasses back on.
You got one more?
Oh, gosh, we have one more? You know, we did say one thing, we get 30 minutes.
Oh.
It hasn't been 30 minutes, all right, go ahead.
Just want to say thank you. Thank you for investing.
A little closer to the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Just want to say thank you. My son started in, with 61 Golf when he was in fourth grade at Palm Elementary, and that provided him the, it provided, it provides our family the extension that we already try to instill in our son, got this sport. It teaches endurance, it teaches mental and emotional strength. This sport is so important in our family. He's now a junior, and he's, this is his passion. And now he mentors with the kids, because he's been golfing for so many years now, and he loves the sport, and we love 61, because with it being in the schools, it provides the kids like my son that don't play the normal football, basketball, it provides them the opportunity to share it with their friends and realize that it's not a nerds sport, or it's not, you know, just for one specific group, you know? And we appreciate that. We appreciate that with 61, because it brings golf to us, and it's been a huge blessing for our family. Just want to say thank you.
Wow, thank you again, thank you. And we may have a question for you, for Dr. Flores.
Yes, I just want to thank you for sharing that story about your son and all your stories, and I just want to, I mean, we don't get to talk with you because we're up here, so we need to know what you need, how can we support you even more, and what can we, you know, as a Board, support the kids, support the parents, how can we expand it? I mean, I'm sure your son goes as a mentor and volunteers, correct? Yeah, he volunteers. So, I mean, how can we, I mean, think about it, how can we support you even more? Do you have anything on the top of your head?
A voice, your voice, just, you know, if we could, if we can get more from the top-down voice spread out over the community. The thing is, golf is an individual sport, so when we do the enrollment process, the kids got to go to their parents and say, "Hey, I want to play golf," right? So if we could get a little more access to maybe the beginning of the year at each individual school, if we get the word spread out from the Board members down, and the principals can kind of be a little more aware of us, that'd be very cool. But other than that, just what you guys are doing now, allowing us to be here, the kids are going to do the work themselves. They're going to, they're going to do the rest, they're going to put the work in, you'll see more of them for sure. And I believe I have two more if we still have time.
I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Lydia, and I have two daughters, and like he said, they enrolled themselves, and they let me know about the program. And I think programs like going to themselves to go see the Women's Championship, that was amazing. Like, I was even inspired, I was born and raised in San Bernardino, so to tell my kids, like, "That could be you. We're from San Bernardino, but that could be you, and we're there starting young," and I just wanted to say thank you, and little things like that accommodating us with allowing them to go there, and helping us with the bus so we wouldn't have to, like, you know, put in money for people that can't afford it, to allow us all to go as a family. So that was amazing, and I think things like that could help us. So anything, we're open to anything, so, but it's, I just want to say thank you, and it's amazing, and my girls have so much fun there, and it's like the little teammate said, "It's a family here." So thank you, that's all, I just wanted to get that through.
All right, thank you again. We have one more, all right, welcome.
Hello. Okay, thanks for the 61 just setting up and stuff, yeah. So the tournament, like, the LGPA was just fun to watch, so I can just, like, watch and try to improve my skill and stuff, just like try to improve. And it's always fun just seeing new people join, and just so I can just help them out and stuff. And it's always fun just seeing how they improve from helping. And then when I went to the tournament, I just got the hat, like, it leveled up just right there, and then I just met some of them, some of the golfers, and it was just nice, just me and them. It's always nice just helping out people, just like play golf and stuff, just showing them how to do it and stuff, like, see them just improve.
Look, ready you in? What school do you attend?
I'm sixth grade in Arrow View Middle School.
I went to Arrow View.
And I started just five months ago, in December, yeah, in the golf. Yeah, I just joined it because it was just an opportunity I saw, because I just saw it was just there, so I just wanted to join to try it, and I ended up liking it. Yeah, I go everywhere.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate it. Love hearing from the kids. All right, thank you again, and thank you for that public comment. All right. Thank you again and, uh, thank you for that public comment.
Thank you, everybody.
All righty, moving on to our next, uh, public comment, we are welcoming Paula Plunk. Welcome, Ms. Plunk.
Hello.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm just gonna put out a trigger warning for people because we still have some students here. Parents and students, we see you, we heard you, and boy, do we love you. Mayoral candidate Helen Tran and mayoral candidate censured and verified sexual predator harasser John Valdivia with five court cases pending in the San Bernardino court system because of mayoral candidate Helen Tran has been caught on your campuses illegally. And for Helen Tran, that extra step of depravity, illegally caught on field trips without prior knowledge or okay from parents or guardians. These blessings or collusions of these illegal, say again, illegal activities comes from President Wyatt, some San Bernardino school board members, staff, and now Hillsdale High School principal. Wow, the lack of integrity and unprofessionalism and complete lack of understanding the positions to which you are to serve is alarming, if not dangerous, especially after just what happened. Amazing. You are not to service Helen Tran, John Valdivia, and/or any other mayoral candidate to think that they will, with their ongoing predatory and illegal behavior to end up on your campuses. The lack of an investigation into these illegal activities as predatory and instills a closed door policy mentality, you are saying you are professionals, you and the parents, sit down and shh. For all the doctors in front of your names, it is deplorable to think are all unwilling to ask the resignation of President Wyatt tonight. And that would take honor and desire for change. And for President Wyatt to do it himself and take the San Bernardino saboteur extraordinaire and so proud of it, Mr. Tillman, would, it would take courage. What is seen is bullying, narcissism, and mocking these employees who have chosen to do good works every day and to serve with a purpose that doesn't look like a clumsy arrogance. Mr. President, resign tonight, please, because if you do not, then the chair is run with your ego. Ego surrounding 48,000 children who by law have to attend the school system. You hand parents and guardians anti-bullying papers and code of conduct papers telling the sign, under the threat of what? These programs and your code of conduct rules are just words now that can be downloaded and held to you, Mr. President Wyatt and your peers, for you have failed your assignment. You have now become that bully. As a sexual assault survivor, now warrior, your silence in this matter with your enablers is disgusting. And quite frankly, shows your, really shows, to put the middle finger up, to all the women in this district who have battled, yes, battled back, back from sexual harassment, sexual assault, and/or both, to find their desire in giving children and young adults the pleasure and desire to learn, thrive, and find their true potential, which was here tonight. Apparently, the Hillsdale principal got an illegal photo op with a verified sexual predator harasser, mayoral jo, mayoral candidate John Valdivia, was way too important to herself than doing her job and pursuing the mental health safety of her employees under care. And she believes she's not a bully, really. Superintendent, it is known that there are some still in this room who continue to sabotage your position, sir. And now by pursuing this and getting caught in these activities, now they're trying to drop it off at your office door, sir. And the line is a failure of duty. Interesting. Second, a real nasty rumor, usually that rumors do come in this room are true. The meaning to set a new school board member, that was a utter failure, was still resabotaged and probably by VP Tillman, bringing the process purposely to keep the seat open for Helen Tran. Really? Ouch, parents, using your voting powers. And if you haven't signed up to vote, please do it now. San Bernardino school board, you sit in those chairs of democracy because of the sacrifice of our veterans, laying in our cemeteries and our wounded and forgotten veterans, and my beautiful husband of 35 years, Ron Plunk, and his family. Shame on you if you think this is your best practices. Mayoral candidate Helen Tran, if you're listening, please, ma'am, she goes on and on and on about, well, we don't want to do the blame and shame game. No, Ms. Tran, Superintendent Wyatt, school board VP, Mr. Tillman, it's called accountability and responsibility. It is that simple. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Plunk. All righty, we have another public comment for 7.2, and it is Ms. Isabel Robinson. Did you want to wait till 7.2? You'd like to speak now? All right, come on up.
Hi, I am Isabel Robinson. I work at the special ed department in, at the wall building. Um, my concern is the COVID. I think I got it really bad compared to other people. But on October 8th, I went to work and I told every, my coworkers, I go, I think I had, went rounds with Muhammad Ali. I go, my body hurts. I go, on October 11th, I went to urgent care Highland. It was not confirmed till October 20th. I called and emailed my department. I submitted my timesheet, my smart find and my HR 57s to go with 100 days half pay. I was told by Crystal to contact COVID cases. I did. I did several HR 57s. I would do them when I saw the doctor. They were approved at first by Barbie Roland. On October 15th, 21, I got a regular check. Then October 31st, my check was $500 short. I thought, okay, the 100 days hasn't kicked in yet. On October 22, 21, I was told to fill out workers comp. I had to deal with Bill from Keenan. I do not think COVID is being reported. If it is, they are so confused, it is not posting correctly. I called several people at the wall and told them I had COVID and I am sorry. I did not want them to go through what I was going through. I was sick. They were not informed by letter, email, or anything. On November 19th, I got an email from my payroll clerk that my HR 57 was denied by Dr. Lundie. I would not get a check. When I submitted it in the beginning of October 10th, it was approved. What happened? Dr. Lundie said I would be docked. Affirmative action confirmed. And I said, and said I was notified by mail. I have never received these notifications by mail. Iris from affirmative action said my HR should never have been approved. Really? Why? On 12/15, no check again. District affirmative action says I have to do the HR 57s again. Richard Carlos, the COVID person, said to check off CDC COVID. I have done them about five times. This I know. I get no answers or different answers regarding my HRs. Now I am told to use the long term instead of COVID. I did. My complaints are numerous. COVID kicked my butt. The first five weeks I was out of it and out of sick time. I am high risk. On November 16th, I asked affirmative actions if I could work at home. They told me no because they stopped in the beginning when everyone came back to work in July. Is this really true? I called in and emailed and kept in touch with wall, smart find, HR 57, COVID cases, payroll, affirmative action, employee relations, and anyone else that would listen. Dr. Lundie wrote in an email on November 17th, 2021, Isabel is to be docked full pay. What do you need from us to acknowledge it? How could it sit so long? That was November 17th. I have done my paperwork from October 11th. Not only did I have to fight for my life with COVID, I infected my whole household. I was positive. My symptoms were fever, cough, congestion, runny nose, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, fatigue, muscle aches and pains, chills, headaches, heart palpitation, and I lost over 30 pounds. And I lost my hair. My eyesight is still off. My taste and smells are still gone. Now I feel so sad of how the district has handled this. Too many people, too many departments were inver, involved for this situation to be ignored. I got it again February 2nd. I'm one of those that tests every week. So on February 2nd, I came to get tested. It came out incomplete. So I'm off three days again. COVID Julie says, don't go back to work till the 14th. Then she calls and says you can go back tomorrow, but don't get tested until May, they told me. I don't know if it's just my body or what, because I, I, I never got better. But that's all I have to say.
All righty, Ms. Robinson, thank you for your comment. And please know that, um, Senator said somebody from his office will be following up with you. All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Cunningham, is there any more public comments?
That's it.
All righty, it is now, um, time for 5.0 closed session. We will go ahead and go into closed session. Thank you. All righty, folks, we'll go ahead and come back from closed session and bring our meeting back to session. Thank you to everyone for being, uh, patient with this. And those of you that are watching, thank you for being patient. Uh, um, we'll go ahead and, um, report out of closed session. And so 6.0, move on to 6.1 expulsion of students. Be it resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts a recommendation and findings of the hearing panel based on a review of the panel's findings of facts and recommendations and orders the expulsion of the following students with the identification's numbers as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations and compliance with Education Code 48900.
A move?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second by Dr. Daddy Rogers. Any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. Move on to 6.2. Students recommended for suspension or expulsion excluding mandatory offenses but remanded to youth court or for other means of corrections. Be it resolved, that the Board of Education accepts and adopts a recommendation and findings of facts of positive youth development and orders suspension, uh, of expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the board rules and regulations in compliance with Education Code 48900.
A move?
Second.
It's been moved, um, by Mr. Tillman, properly seconded by Dr. Daddy Rogers. Discussion? No discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, motion carries. Moving on to 6.3, students recommended for suspension but deleted from student assertive discipline due to completion of youth court or due to due process errors. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the following student was recommended for suspension, but the suspension was deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence, and/or the availability of other means of corrections in compliance with Education Code 48900. Therefore, although they were recommended for suspension, suspension was reversed or modified.
A move?
Second.
It was moved by Dr. Daddy Rogers, seconded by, uh, Vice President Tillman. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, motion carries. Move on to 6.4. Uh, student, uh, recommended for expulsion but terminated and student has served discipline due to completion of youth court, availability of other means of corrections, or due process errors. Be it resolved, the Board of Education approves the following student was recommended for expulsion, but expulsion is deemed inappropriate based on due process errors, insufficient evidence, and/or the availability of other means of corrections in compliance with the Education Code 48900. Therefore, although they were recommended for expulsion, expulsion is not granted.
A move?
It's been moved by, uh, Vice President Tillman, seconded by, uh, Dr. Daddy Rogers. Any discussion? All right, let's vote.
Ms. Sabios?
All right, motion carries, 6.5. Petition to expunge, rescind, or modify youth court or expulsion. The Board of Education authorized expulsion and/or youth court modification, expulsion or rescinding of the following students with the identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the Samuel S. Unified School District in accordance with the board rules and regulations and compliance with Education Code Section 48900.
A move?
Second.
It's been moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Dr. Flores. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. All righty, uh, motion carries, 6.6. Other closed session action. There are no other closed session actions, so we'll move on to 7.0, public hearings. We'll go ahead and close the current, uh, board meeting. We'll go ahead and open for 7.1. Public hearing and adoption of tentative agreement between Samuel S. Unified School District and the California Employees Association, Chapter 183, Human Resources.
No comments.
All right, there are no comments. The public hearing and adoption of tentative agreement between Samuel S. Unified School District and the California School Employees Association, Chapter 183 is now open. Oops, I did that. All right. So are there any public comments or are not? So do we, we vote now? Or do we close? Oh, close? Sorry. Now we vote. All right, now let me read it. Be resolved that the Board of Education adopts a tentative agreement between the Samuel S. Unified School District and the California School Employees Association and at San Bernardino, Chapter 183, on the amendments to follow the eight existing job descriptions, cafeteria worker, campus security bicycle maintenance, uh, campus security officer one, campus security officer two, instructional assistant, tutorial assistant bilingual, nutrition services equipment mechanic, public safety dispatcher, and small engines mechanic.
A move?
It was moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, motion carries. Move on to 7.2. The public hearing and adoption memorandum of understanding between Samuel S. Unified School District and the California School Employees Association, Chapter 183, COVID-19 supplemental paid sick leave is now open. Are there any public comments?
No.
All righty, public hearing is now closed. Be it resolved that the Board of Education adopts a memorandum of understanding between the California School Employees Association and at San Bernardino, Chapter 183, and the Samuel S. Unified School District for supplemental paid sick leave related to COVID-19 for the 2021, 2022 school year.
A move?
All right. Uh, it was moved by, uh, Vice President Tillman and seconded by Dr. Flores. Is there any discussion? All right, let's go and vote. All right, let's go and vote. All right, motion carries, moving on to seven point three. The public hearing for California School Employees Association, one eighty-three, initial contract proposal successor to the district is now open. Are there any public comments?
No.
All right, the public hearing is now closed. Be it resolved that the Board of Education received the initial contract proposal from the California School Employee Association and its San Bernardino, Chapter one eighty-three.
A move.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? It was moved by Mr. Tillman and, uh, and seconded by Dr. Flores. There is no discussion, so we'll go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries, thank you, Ms. Cunningham. We'll move on to eight point O, reports by union organizations. Eight point one, San Bernardino Teachers Association.
Good evening, President Wyatt, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good me, good evening.
Good evening, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, members of the board, superintendent and cabinet. I'm Ashley Bitas Alcala, president of the San Bernardino Teachers Association, speaking to you tonight on behalf of our three thousand members. Tonight, I would just like to, to bring to your attention that yesterday, April fourth, was National School Librarian Day. This day recognizes the professionals who keep this, our school libraries in working order. Teacher librarians spend long hours keeping the library organized. They are also dedicated to helping our children find the resources they need to keep learning. Teacher librarians provide guidance and exposure to our youth, not only to texts, but also to print media, literature, and digital resources and technology, too. These resources also connect our students to libraries around the world. A school librarian's ability to manage scores of media and a school full of students with numerous projects and schedules astounds us. And tonight, we would just like to acknowledge and thank our teacher librarians for their dedication to our students and the education perfection, profession. Five years ago, on April tenth, a tragedy struck our North Park Elementary School community. Tonight, I would like to acknowledge two amazing individuals who we lost that day. Karen Smith was a dedicated special education teacher who brought joy to all those who crossed her path. She loved teaching, and she pushed her students with special needs to graduate from high school and pursue careers of their own. Jonathan Martinez, her student, had an infectious smile and was a friend to all who knew him. Karen and Jonathan are greatly missed, and their families, friends, and classmates forever remain in our thoughts and prayers. I also would like to take a moment to acknowledge Jonathan's classmate, our superhero Nolan, who I hear is thriving now in ninth grade. To our North Park educators, staff, and community, we love you forever. San Bernardino strong. Thank you.
Thank you, President Alcala. We appreciate those words and sentiments. Eight point two, California School Employees Association.
No report.
All right, no report. Eight point three, Communication Workers of America.
No report.
No report. Eight point four, Samuel School Police Officers Association.
No report.
All right, no report. Nine point O, reports and presentations. Nine point one, late start implementation update presentation. And that will be, who is taking that one tonight? All righty. Dr. Funches and Mr. Pacey, welcome.
Good evening, board. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to say, uh, make sure that I gave a special thank you. So, good evening, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, Board Superintendent Irvin, Cabinet, our community here and watching. Want to thank Marie and Sam as well. I just want to take a quick moment to thank all of our hardworking and dedicated administrators, our employees, our team members, union partners, our families, uh, for demonstrating resilience in the face of many challenges that we've overcome this year as represented tonight before the board meeting. And it's just a testament of our resilience, our perseverance, our dedication, and our strong ethic of care. So thank you, board, as well for leading during this time. Much appreciated. Thank you very much. Tonight, what we have for you is an update, next slide, please, on late start implementation, where we are, and our, uh, recommendation to the board tonight based on the proposed bell schedule, based on the student transportation, pieces that we looked at, uh, the late start survey results that we put forth as we polled our employees and our community members and families, and the implementation timeline. But toward the, towards the end of our presentation, we will recommend, according to the requirements of SB three twenty-eight late start, that we push the, uh, implementation to July of two thousand and twenty-three, which, which is in line with the requirements of the law. And we'll tell you why we're doing that. Next slide, please. So as you know, board, Senator Anthony Portantino's rule, or his, he's the author of the requirement or late start three twenty-eight, and he argued that later start times benefit the health of our secondary students by positively impacting their sleep patterns. Next slide, and as you also know and are familiar with, board, is that the Portantino rule or late start requirements were for middle schools to start no earlier than eight o'clock AM. High schools, no earlier than eight thirty AM, and that implementation of three twenty-eight late start would begin on July one of two thousand and twenty-two or at the expiration of the collective bargaining agreement, or CBA. And it just so happens that the SBTA and SBC collective bargaining agreement does expire on June thirty of two thousand and twenty-three. Next slide, please. And so, under the leadership of Dr. Harold Volkermer, uh, when Dr. Volkermer was here, you may remember that a committee was convened uh, during his time here back in two thousand and seventeen to begin looking at late start. And this year, we reconvene that same committee, and we presented the board with bell schedule options that range from cost neutral to additional ongoing costs. Next slide. And so, at one of our board meetings in March, early March, our board gave us direction on the bell schedules that were presented from the committee. And if you look at the slide that we have here, we purposely put them side by side so we can give a clear understanding of what our current bell schedules are for the regular day, what the proposed bell schedule were, and the requirements of SB three twenty-eight. So if you look at our current bell schedule for elementary, middle, and high school, you'll see eight fifty start time, seven forty start time, and seven thirty start time respectively. In the proposed schedule that our board gave us direction on, you see a eight fifty start time for elementary, leave them where they were. Middle school, nine o'clock AM, and you also see high school at eight thirty, well within the requirements of a late start SB three twenty-eight. One of the initial accident steps was to secure additional resources for the proposed schedule, for example, cap staffing and additional busting, bussing, sorry. And we explained that to the board the last time that we were here, uh, giving you an update on late start implementation. So I'm going to turn it over to Marie at this time to talk about, uh, going out to bid for the bussing resources and some of the, uh, updates around that, uh, action that we took.
Good evening, distinguished board, cabinet. Uh, so, as presented in our previous, um, meeting, we had, it's a two-part process for implementation. For our gen ed services, we had a plan of action using our existing services, buses and drivers, to address our gen ed bussing needs. However, for our special needs bussing, our elementary component, um, had to go out for bid. In early March, we put out an RFP. We held a pre-bid conference on March fifteenth, whereas we had five vendors present for that pre-bid conference and, um, asked, uh, some very basic questions. We were very detailed in our scope of work because we wanted to make sure that whatever, whatever vendors, um, acquired our services were well-informed with the size and the magnitude and the number of students and the need specific to our district. Um, the basic questions that were asked were basically, is there flexibility with the type of vehicles that could be utilized? And of course, we, we were willing to engage any type of services in order to, um, to make this happen. On, uh, Friday, March twenty-eighth, all bids were due, and unfortunately, we had no response from any bidders. Um, a few were present, and so they were asked, you know, what was the biggest challenge? Why, why wouldn't you, um, submit a proposal? And the biggest deterrent was, was two-part. One, acquiring fleet, and two, acquiring the number of drivers that would be necessary for this service was a considerable challenge for, for all vendors.
And so that was some of the outcomes with the bussing, um, bids, uh, or the going out to bid for bussing. So we also wanted to make sure that we had a chance to survey our employees, our community members, our families. Next slide, please. And in that survey, uh, we had over seven thousand responses. The survey was open for two weeks, and we gleaned a lot from the responses, which will help us moving forward with our implementation process. Next slide, I'd like to show you some of those results. And if you look to the furthest right side, you'll see, uh, some of the respondents when it says elementary, middle, and high, those were our parent groups. Elementary, over two thousand of the respondents identified as elementary parents, which could have included some of our, um, staff as well. Middle school, one thousand six hundred and fifty-eight. High school, uh, eighteen hundred plus. School staff that responded to the survey, twelve hundred, over twelve hundred. District staff, uh, three hundred and twenty-six. And then unknown, just took the survey but did not identify. But if, we, we asked a few questions about the proposed schedule. For example, how satisfied they were with that schedule, uh, or how, or not satisfied, sorry, somewhat not satisfied, neutral, and somewhat satisfied. And if you look at the results, a not satisfied portion or percentage was thirty, thirty-six percent of the respondents.
Who's being surveyed here?
Uh, elementary parents were surveyed, uh, middle school parents were surveyed, high school parents were surveyed, that's what they identified as. And then district school staff as well, meaning educators, uh, and employees, non educator employees. Okay? And then if you look down, keep going down through the results, or the percentage is somewhat not satisfied, was eleven percent. Neutral, meaning, I could go either way, or it's, uh, you know what neutral means, ten percent. Somewhat satisfied, fifteen percent, and then satisfied with the proposed schedule, twenty-seven percent. Right, that's where we fall at this time. Next slide, a further breakdown of some of the-
Dr. Funches.
Real quick, I think we need clarification on that slide.
Are the parents in elementary that were, uh, just a clarification, were they the ones that send their kids on buses? Or was this all elementary kids?
It was a combination of bus riders and general elementary students that don't take bus, uh, take the bus to school.
Wasn't exclusively the parents?
It was not. It's exclusive. We wanted to hear-
That are, whose kids are bus riders.
Correct, we wanted to hear from a range of elementary parents.
I would think that we would need to know from the parents that, that send their kids on buses, not everybody, because that'll confound the, the responses.
Understood.
Yeah.
We don't have an issue doing that.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, Mr. Tillman.
Yes, um, I, I think, number one, we have to remember that, uh, this is a state mandate. So-
We do.
We can postpone it till next year, but it's going to have to be implemented.
It's correct.
And I think that it's important that, in this survey, that we see the different groups, because it makes a difference. Uh, a good, big, a big, a big example is your employees, whether they're certificated or classified employees. You, you want to see whether, where they're at with this as a group.
Right.
Because right now, it's hard to get employees. It's hard to keep employees. So if you see where you had, whether it's, they are satisfied, not satisfied, that makes a big difference on, do we need to do more work?
Yes.
With working with them, talking with them, changing the schedule versus with the, knowing where the parents are, too. But it's, they're two different groups. And at some point, um, if we have the resources to do it-
Right.
And the parents are upset about, make, for, a prime example is this. If you have parents that disagree with starting high school later, uh, than we are right now, that's out of our control. And that's what the messaging has to be. There's been a law passed that suggests you have to change this. So we need to make sure we tell the parents that we got, we're going to do it because we have to. And them saying they're not satisfied with it, this, you still got to do it, right? So I think we definitely got to separate the data. If you could bring that back to us, it'd be great. Thank you.
And Mr. Tillman, towards the end of the presentation, that you'll see some of our follow-up steps for what we plan to do moving forward. And so, if you go to the next slide, you'll see further breakdown in terms of the proposed schedule that we asked. We asked, um, at this time, is this, uh, better for your students? Or worse for students? Easy for my family to make? Will it be difficult for my family to make at this time? Doesn't really affect my family, or I don't understand the need for this change? And you see the breakdown in the respondents. They could check, uh, several boxes on that survey. So for example, I'll just point out the first one, better for my children. You have about seventeen hundred respondents that are saying this is better as opposed to eighteen hundred that are saying this might be wor, this is worse for my children at this time. So when we get to the last slide, we talk about how we might, uh, go further with this process.
Okay, Dr. Funches, but, you know, I apologize. I did let some people ask, and I probably should have told them to wait till the end. But we have some lights on, so I don't know if it was on the last slide. So I want to go ahead and clarify since I have three more lights on. And then after that, I would ask us to wait till we are done. Thank you. Ms. Sabios.
I will actually honor that, and I will wait till the end of your presentation. Um, just want to make sure that we are consistent with that.
Mine is at the end.
Is that the end, too? All right, thank you, ladies.
All right. And so, with what was shared around the staffing, the bussing, and working with our union partners, and even working further with our community members and families. Next slide, please. We are recommending that, in, in line with SB three twenty-eight late start, that we implement late start, uh, at the expiration of our collective bargaining agreement, which would be July one of two thousand and twenty-three. Actually, the collective bargaining agreement expires June thirty of two thousand and twenty-three. So we would recommend the implementation, uh, be July one of two thousand and twenty-three. And here are some of the reasons, or here, here are some of the advantages and disadvantages, next slide. So if you see there, the icons, if you go down the left side, uh, some of the advantages, providing more time for transportation companies to secure proper staffing, making sure that we generate opportunities for alignment of transportation quadrants and plan out efficient routes. Uh, we do know that in the survey, some of the trends, some of our district staff and families pointing out the need for childcare, so it gives us time to work with our families so that they can, uh, secure additional staff, uh, sorry, childcare. And then, number four, creating opportunities for the district to coalesce around common goals or improved systems alignment. Uh, the fifth one, where you see the, the, the person with the soccer ball, if that's what that is, uh, providing more time to secure resources for funding for athletics, like the lighting, as we're doing right now, working with, uh, athletics departments. And then, as you know, we're at the table with all union groups around, uh, late start, and that's one of the key areas that we'll continue to work towards, just the scheduling, um, and making sure that we get, uh, employee schedules ironed out as we go towards the late start implementation. And then finally, for the advantages, allowing time for the district to replicate and implement educational programs and services to allow more opportunities for students to stay at their home school should they, uh, choose to, and for us to promote, uh, the home school, uh, programs. And then finally, there's always some disadvantages. We want to be transparent about that. And as we met with the committee, and we met with the, uh, late start group leads, some that were pointed out were, well, some districts have already started because they could. They may have started this year with late start implementation, and we'd be behind them. But that's, that's a given. And also, uh, adding money for CSOs or paying our CSO- a given. And also, adding money for CSOs, or paying our CSOs for athletic programs that start a little bit later, and they may have to stay a little bit later. We know that that may have to happen. And then finally, the bus contracts. We will continue to send out for bid and try to get bus contracts. But if they, if they are might, if they're not ready, then we'd have to be ready to look at other options around scheduling and such. So those were some of the advantages and disadvantages. But we do recommend a July one, two thousand twenty-three implementation, which is in line with late start requirements because of the collective bargaining agreement. And thank you.
All righty. Thank you, Dr. Funches. And we will entertain questions now. And Ms. Vios, you had a question, right? And then I think it was Dr. Daddy Rogers, correct? And then Ms. Medina, and then Dr. Flores? All right. In that order. Thank you.
So, thank you. So actually, some of, some of the questions that I had resemble Mr. Tillman's questions in terms of kind of like desegregating the data, right? I did, one of my questions was, why, why weren't they satisfied for the individuals that responded not satisfied? But then on the next page, you kind of showed data, and the data that you showed on the next page, it's still taking into consideration not only parents, but everybody that was surveyed, right, including teachers and staff?
Did.
Okay. And I think that in addition, I know that Dr. Flores had mentioned surveying parents of students that are only riding bus. But I think, I think we need to survey, continue to survey everybody in the district. Just, just make sure that we separate between those that are parents and those that are staff, so that we know kind of where we need to put in extra, extra work to accommodate. But we need to survey everybody, because it's a change that will be affecting everyone in the district, not just bus riders. And then in, in addition to that, I would have thought that probably the reason why people may not be satisfied with the change is because of, you know, people have to go to work in the morning, like parents have to go to work, right? And I'm just kind of curious, like, what does that mean for, for our community?
Right.
I'm sure that we're still gonna offer like sunrise, but, but then, then again, that defeats the purpose of late start and being able to sleep in.
Right. So some of the trends, Ms. Vios, you hit the nail on the head. Some of the trends for the dissatisfaction were childcare, being able to get to work on time and such. And so yes, we would continue to survey, and the year would allow us to continue to help our, or give time for employees and families, give them time to secure proper childcare, and the means to get to work on time, if, if need be. But those were some of the things that were pointed out when the dissatisfaction was cited or noted.
Yeah, it just, it just, again, it just doesn't make any sense. And I know that this is not our thing, you know, it came down from the state, but, you know, again, if the purpose is to have our students sleep in longer, then that should have been thought out a little better, in my opinion. Anyway, in addition to that, I do see on your next steps, the, I'm sorry, on your advantages versus disadvantages page, of, of pushing it to two thousand twenty-three, you know, it gives us a lot of extra time to plan for some of these things. My specific question is here on promoting home school. So again, you know, it kind of goes back to what I had mentioned in previous board meetings, that we need to have great schools so that parents actually want to send their children to their home school. So my question is, what does that mean from today to two thousand twenty-three, July first of two thousand twenty-three? What specifically are we going to do besides spread the word and say, hey, enroll your students at your local school? How are we gonna incentivize these parents to actually send their students to their home school?
It's an excellent question, and it's part of a longer journey. I'm gonna allow Sam to jump in here, and then I'll chime back in.
Yeah, thank you. That was an excellent question, and it is something that we're embarking on as far as a district-wide initiative, and it's gonna be a cross-collaboration across the entire district, because it's gonna impact just about every single department. But what we're looking at is helping to replicate some of those programs that are, that a lot of our parents and students want to participate in. And we want to make sure that we do provide equity and education across the district. So replicating some of those great programs that we have, and in some of those school sites that don't have those programs, and looking at a regionalized implementation. So in this case, instead of one large district and busing kids cross-district and having to go through transfer stations, as well as a long transit time and impact of their school life, as well as their quality of life, what we're looking at doing is regionalizing the transportation and programmatic systems. So this way, if you're in Bonny Oil and interested in a program, and it doesn't offer at Bonny Oil, you can go to a Cypress instead of going all the way across district to a Salinas. So we're looking at trying to create those programs in their home school, or at least in our neighborhood school to get them a little bit closer.
So when you talk about creating those programs in their home school, do you have the authority to do that without district direction, or, I'm sorry, without board direction?
So that's a great question. So under the leadership of the school site principal and oversight of cabinet, we are able to make decisions about programs that are happening in schools to the benefit of that student body or community there. As long as it's not negatively impacting the district, we're well within our rights to make great decisions around programs at school sites. Of course, we'd update the board and let you know what we're doing every step of the way. But that, that is well within our purview.
Well, I thank you for responding that question, because I really want to emphasize that if you have the ability to make, you know, some of those changes without necessarily board approval, then great. But if you don't have the ability to do that, then, then we need to know, and we need to have that conversation, right? And so I just want to make sure that you're being transparent with us in terms of what you are and aren't able to do, so that we can have that conversation that we need to have.
Understood.
Thank you, Ms. Vios. Dr. Daddy Rogers?
Thank you. And thank you all. This is, I know it's been a long journey of five years. Here we are, and still, you know, getting a chance to have a little bit more time, but I think we have a lot more information. But my first, and I'm, I'm excited about the fact that if we can get a program alignment, because I can go all the way back from my kids where, you know, you're looking for this, and when are we gonna get that, but wanting to be in the neighborhood, because it was so much more easier. But my first question is, are, will you guys be doing any adjustment, or will you all, sorry about you guys, will you be making any adjustments to the distance of, you know, the busing? I, I know it's been quite some time, and it was a one-point-five, a two-point, whatever is, my first question, is any of that changing?
Well, we had the Transportation Task Force that initiated back in August. That was a component of that discussion to see what we could do in order to help improve the efficiencies, and if we were able to reduce or relax that requirement, and maybe go from one and a half to one, or two and a half to two. That was part of the scope. And then with implementation, I'm sorry, with SB three twenty-eight being implemented potentially this August, back in the last fall, we decided, okay, let's put the Transportation Task Force on hold, and let's realign our focus on our SB three twenty-eight implementation. So we kind of halted those conversations back in November, December timeframe. But it was something that we were looking at, and it was part of the overall Transportation Task Force objectives.
And that's good, because I, I know it's been a long time since we really looked at it. Homes have been built. Sometimes it just doesn't make sense. It's like, you think you're gonna go to this school, but you really go to this one. And in reference to that, then the input, and I, while I agree, how, you know, the surveying, the more information you get, and of course, kind of breaking it out, but one of the challenges that I'm getting mostly when I speak to staff, and which is why their input is important, is because they have given us input on how the bus are colliding on the same corners at the same time. And so when you're looking at this, and maybe you haven't looked at it already, but it's come up several times when I'm talking to individuals that are at the school site, and this bus is going in this direction, or we have schools like right within the four walls of each other, that I would hope that we're gonna kind of take a route and see what it really looks like when we change these times, because the closer those times are together, the shorter period, more traffic, all types of things are going on, intersecting with those schools that are within those close proximities. And they've raised that concern. So their voice is also, you know, as you, you know, break it down, that's one of their major concerns, because they see that while they're out there trying to get the kids across the street, make sure while they go to this school, it's the next school.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. That is an area of concern for us, as was presented a few board meetings ago. So we will be taking a look at that, and bringing the board back that information as well. Yep.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Daddy Rogers. Ms. Rosales-Medina?
Thank you. And luckily, a lot of the questions were already answered, and that pertained to the, the survey and how it was accumulated. I do want, just to make sure when you do the, the disaggregated, even with this survey, maybe you can send us, even with this one, separate the parents, separate, I mean, then that way we can actually see, as well as elementary students are not necessarily being impacted, they're not being impacted by this. So I don't know, maybe you can separate even from elementary, middle school, and high school within that survey, so we can kind of see where is a pocket of parents that are actually more concerned? Is it the middle school students versus high school students? And let me see where else. As well as that page ten, where you have everything combined, you know, is worse or better for children and students, and just separating it, because that way we're seeing parents versus staff. And as Ms., Dr. Rogers mentioned, it's still, it's still important for us to look at staff's responses, but at least separating it will give us a bigger picture, realistic picture.
Not a problem.
Oh, and then regards to Ms. Vios, with looking at, you know, for students to choose their neighborhood school, similar to that point, I wanted to kind of piggyback in, and find out how can we share during registration, information of the advantages. Not necessarily use the word disadvantages, but use the word advantages of choosing the school that's in your neighborhood, or either their home school or the neighborhood school, within the registration or application process. That way they can see the benefits of, of choosing locally. And that's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales-Medina.
Sorry.
Dr. Flores?
Yes, I, I agree with your recommendation that we wait until July to be able to get more information and so forth. I think it's prudent, it's a prudent recommendation, so that we, and the reason for that is because we have forty-seven thousand children, or students in this district, and we haven't even surveyed majority. And so we need to know from, you know, all families, what, what works, what doesn't work, and so forth. And also, just to follow up with Dr. Rogers too, and Ms. Medina, we need to know more from our staff, you know, what, what, what works for them, and, and so forth. And especially for, you know, the different programs we have. For me, it's an equity issue in terms of the offerings that we give. And we have programs that have been developed and are stellar. And so, yeah, we need to implement those in different neighborhood schools. But Ms. Vios, where they would need our direction and support would be resources, because you need resources if you're going to develop, you know, similar programs and similar sites. And we don't know, you know, if they have the capacity, staff-wise, or if that's, you know, a focus that, that, you know, that different neighborhood schools would, you know, even aspire to. I mean, we don't even know what is it that they want and aspire to. And like what Ms. Medina said, you know, you know, what do we offer in our neighborhood schools, you know, for you? I mean, we need to branch out. And then that brings me to another big question. And that would be, you know, do we really know from the area? I mean, do we actually know what programs our kids are bused to?
We have that information.
I mean, I, I would like to know that. I mean, you know, the kids that are in, say, you know, the Lincoln area.
Yeah.
You know, where, where are they bused to, right? We have programs, IB programs at Cesar Chavez. Well, a lot of our kids go there. We're not gonna have IB programs at every single middle school. That takes time. And we don't have the capacity. I mean, we can aspire to do that, but we can't do it overnight. We can't do it in a year. I mean, it would have to be a, a good five-year plan in terms of where, you know, and even do we have the capacity to do that? I want to look at the bell schedule for a regular day, and this is what I noticed. I noticed that everybody ends at the same time.
For the proposed, yeah.
Right? So if everybody ends at the same time, are we gonna have enough buses to take everybody home? That, I'm just positing, I want you, I don't want you to answer it. I just, that's just what I noticed, right? We start at different times. And so, I mean, I'm glad that we're gonna take a year. I, I hope we, we vote to extend it for a year so that we can look more in-depth into what we're doing, and, 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 you know, be good by, by everybody. So I know, we can't, we won't, you know, there'll be some people that won't like it, but we have to do what we can do. And it'll give us more time also to hire bus drivers, you know, get, get moving again. And, you know, the fact that we don't have an RFP, I mean, nobody responded to the RFP, it shows that we're still not out of COVID, and we're still struggling. And so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Mr. Tillman?
Yes, I would like, if we're gonna do a survey, I would like the questions to be created in such a way where they will inform us on the decision we can make. So asking somebody if they're satisfied doesn't give me any information, right? So I, I think what would help is if we said, in the start times right now, a good example, let's say for the educators, the proposed start time for middle school is nine, nine o'clock. Would you prefer, prefer eight-thirty? Then we know, they don't want nine o'clock, they want eight-thirty. And so, and we could do that for the different scenarios that we know we're capable of implementing, right?
Understood.
Then, then, and also, then you're managing expectation. I think we're past the part where you ask people, do you think late times are a good idea? It doesn't matter. We're past that. The state has decided you're gonna do late start. So I think when you ask a question, you just frustrate people. So I'd rather we, we cast the questions in a way that's gonna help us decide which start times we go with. So it's real clear to the board that the parents would rather have the start time for middle school be eight-thirty, or, and the teachers would rather it be, you know, closer to eight. But, but that helps us that. And then dealing with reality that we are gonna, next year, we have to make the change. The other part, I, I know there was the discussion about where we're gonna change distance for busing. If, if we're gonna have the discussion, it has to be agendized, and the board as a whole will give direction. I don't want, what I don't want to have happen is you guys walk in for this meeting, saying, oh, the board says they want to make distances longer for people to ride the bus. That, that hasn't happened. So, and I know, I've heard people say, the board said, we're gonna change this, and you guys make the change, and you say, based on the meeting, we did it. So I just want to be clear that, that, that direction hasn't happened. So if you guys want to look at agendizing distances that people get transportation, that needs to be agendized, and the entire board can discuss it, and we could agendaize action if this, if, if the board makes a decision they want to change something. That hasn't happened right now. We're on the same page with that, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
All righty. That looks like it for our board comments and questions. Thank you very much, team, for your presentation. And we look forward to moving on and researching this further.
Correct.
Good information. Thank you. All right. Excuse me, let me bring back my, my screen as I was reading the report. All righty, nine-point-two annual report on charter schools.
As presented?
As presented? I'm, I'm sorry, I thought I heard somebody say that.
Is that as presented? Is that a presentation, or is it as presented?
Oh, boy. Is it as presented?
I believe so.
I believe so. It's as presented.
And I do apologize because I have questions on this report. So I was pretty quiet on the last one, but on this one, I have quite a bit to ask. So let's go ahead and look at, I think it was the dashboard results on charter schools. And I'll just go over my questions real quick, starting with ASA. You know, and thank you for the report, by the way, and information because this is critical. We've asked this in the past. I noticed that ASA has an outstanding balance of a hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars to, I believe, us, if that is correct. And my concern is, do they owe us, currently owe us money, yet they went to the Desert Mountain Supa on July first, twenty twenty-one? So they're in a different supa now, but they they still owe us money. Is that my understanding?
Dr. Wyatt, I believe Ms. Ernestine Hopwood is available online. I think they're just working on pulling her up so she can answer your question. She wasn't feeling well. That's why she went home, but she is available.
Completely.
There you go. Thank you.
Sorry about that, Ms. Ernestine, that you're not feeling well.
Oh, I tried to make it to the time when we were going to get together. I do apologize. ASA does owe us encroachment. We will continue to collect that balance. It has been reduced substantially. But yes, they did exit our supa and will continue to make payments until they're down to a zero balance.
Alrighty, thank you very much. And I did notice on Hardy Brown College, excuse me, Hardy Brown College Prep, that they had on special education students, there was not a number. Do they? Do they have students with disabilities? Because I do see that they're being provided services by El Dorado County Charter Supa. But just want to, you know, because that's been a concern, obviously, when we look at representation and equity. Is there any special education students there? Was that just a mistake in recording of a number?
Yes. So at this time, we do not have those numbers since they are in a different supa. But we can certainly ask them for their actual numbers and put that in a Friday report to the board.
Thank you very much. And we do need to have that information. I think that's very important information that we receive. And quite honestly, I was trying to keep up with some of these. I I do find it interesting. You know, we we have authorized, you know, obviously, all these charter schools, yet, you know, and I guess this is their option, they're contracted with a number of different selpas. And in some cases, they're actually providing their own specialized services, which, you know, is great. I just wonder, my question about they're providing their own services is, what is their monitoring in regards to accountability? Is that through each supa? Because, you know, we're responsible for knowing that they're providing the services as they should be per the IEP. And I just would like to know, how are we monitoring that they're doing that?
That's a very good question. Thank you for asking that, Dr. Wyatt. I recently went to Casbo, and one of the recommendations that was made was to ask each of the selpas how, for a letter of good standing, and if they have any outstanding encroachment fees and if those services are being provided. So we will be asking for that information as well.
Alrighty, thank you. And then my last observation, I will say, is I'm looking at Savant Prep Academy of Business, and they have zero students with disability, special ed students. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. As of that snapshot in time, what we can do is ask again for real-time numbers and also provide that in a Friday report to the board.
Okay, and I I do appreciate that. And again, my concern is access and equity in regards to our students, all students having access to charter schools. So thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Okay, we, I'm sorry, and I did not see who was first or second. Ms. Rosales Medina, go ahead.
Right. So and I do want to follow up, and I'm glad you brought this up, Dr. Wyatt, only because you do work in these areas with special ed. So I'm glad that your expertise is kind of coming into place in this, in the situation. So then with regards to Hardy Brown Prep, and then when you look at options for youth, one is in El Dorado County, and the other one is in East San Gabriel Valley. I'm curious is, are they the ones checking to see or doing the accountability piece for them? Are there certain counties that are less strict versus other counties? Or is this something where it's at the state level, this is what you need to do? Because I'm wondering why they go to different counties? Is it to try to go to areas that are less lenient? I mean, or that are more lenient, I'm sorry, or easier?
Well, Ms. Rosales Medina, in my current head as board member, I would defer to staff on that question.
Am I kind of explaining what the question is? Are there areas? So for instance, if you want to go to like this, this county has, they're not as strict versus this county is a little bit more stricter. Why are they going to different counties? That's what I'm trying to find out. If all counties have to go by the same rules because of the state, or are there counties that are easier? Let me try to try to switch to this area because it'll make it, make the process easier for my school. Does that make sense?
I think, if I may clarify, Ms. Medina, I think you're maybe referring to as why do charter schools open different learning centers in different areas?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
We're receiving the supa services. I'm sorry, maybe the supa services. Yeah. So why are they? Yeah, so.
So I'm going to speculate and answer and try to answer that question in regards to special ed services. Typically, they might have like a pricing, a price point that may be different for service. So maybe they're going for someone that maybe offers, you know, more competitive pricing. There may be a relationship that's maybe built where they have a connection with someone from another county to choose to provide that service. So that would be something that we might have to talk to the charter schools to find out why they chose to do that. But the regulations for special education and IEPs are universal across the state, across the nation. So it's not that some school or some selpas may be easier to work through. Compliance is the same. I think it's a little more about price and probably relationships.
I'm wondering accountability as well. So are all, are, you know, each district manages, you know, accountability in a different way. So I'm just, that's, that's another big piece, you know, can their accountability be not as, not as strict versus other districts or other counties accountability process? So anyways, that's just a question. I'm trying to analyze why they went to these areas. And it may be for what you're saying right now, but I'm I'm just curious to see about those areas if if they're, how their accountability process looks like. So what it does look like? And then those sites that are doing their own supa, I mean, who who evaluates? And I'm glad Dr. Wyatt asked that question. Who's evaluating them? And who is it the state then evaluates them? So that'd be another question to ask.
Thank you. I will certainly follow up with those questions and get more information. When I first started as the charter school director, there were already schools that were in other selpas. And since then, more have joined other selpas for various reasons, but I can certainly put together a full report for you.
Okay. And then maybe even asking the county directly if they have something that you can ask them what their accountability process is at or what they actually do.
I will absolutely look into that. I imagine that they have the same requirements. But I will definitely make sure that we put that in a full report.
I do want to make note, just to, you know, bring light, this report is for last year, twenty twenty-one. And so the data is a year old. And so it would be good to get more recent data as far as kind of like what's the mid-year point for this for this school year to provide to the board, and we'll work on that.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Alrighty, Dr. Flores.
Yes, I just noticed that ASA had a positive fiscal certification. But they owe us a hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars. So I'm wondering, how could they possibly have gotten a positive certification? I I am just curious.
So there, it's, it's like any other district. We can certify positively. We still, as a district, will owe money to vendors or providers. It's no different for them. So it's a liability that they have, that they owe the money, but you can still certify positively and still have liabilities. All districts have accounts payable receipts that are due to vendors.
And it's the Sam, okay, thank you. And so the San Bernardino County Superintendent Schools Office School are the ones that certify, right?
So the, yeah, so ultimately, the the reporting of interim budgets, budget adoptions for charters as well as school districts resides with the county office. We have oversight responsibilities, so we actually review their financials. We provide statements of findings and information that accompany that are that are provided to the County Office of Education who who ultimately reviews and and approves and submits their budgets and interim reports to these CD.
So the next question I have is for Ballington. Ballington's fiscal services is qualified. So for them to be, do they make the criteria for us to renew their charter status? Or is that a criteria to to put them on like, I don't know, another status in terms of how they're doing? And when we, when we audit them yearly?
So certainly. So typically, when you have a charter school that has a qualified or some some findings of financial distress, then we we provide information and recommendations to them, as does the county office. They have the opportunity to improve. If there are instances where there are gross malfeasance or financial distress, then that is grounds to revoke a charter.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wyatt.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Ms. Savios.
So, you know, I agree with 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 what Dr. Wyatt and Ms. Medina have shared in terms of finding out about the accountability piece for selpas, you know, outside of our supa and what that looks like. And then in addition to, you know, some schools on here not having special education students, they also, there's some here that also don't have any English learners either. So, you know, that would, along with that, a Friday report, if you can include that piece. And then on the bottom, I noticed that some of these have English language proficiency numbers to report and some don't. So I would like to, I don't know if that was an error or why it's not reporting any. Or maybe it was the ones that didn't have any EL students. But either way, no, this one does have EL students, and it still doesn't have any information at the bottom. Because it's fear of the lessons. Okay. Yeah. So so just those pieces.
Thank you. I'll certainly identify those that don't have a report on English learners or don't have English learners and ask the status of their current status. And again, the reason why this is a night, a twenty twenty-one report is because it's after the fact. So I'm reporting on last year, but we also have to wait for the test scores to come in as well as the audits to happen.
Alrighty, I think that's it for comments. Or Ms. Savios?
Yeah, just very briefly. I I do notice that here, under the California Accountability System information, there's colors, you know, orange, yellow, red. Not all have a color. Some say no color. So, you know, I would, I would be curious also to see what that means. And then if if it means that a student, or I'm sorry, that a charter maybe is not meeting, is not improving in a specific area, whether it's like suspension rate or, you know, mathematics or or in fact is regressing in those areas, like, like what happens in those cases?
Yeah. So there were two questions there. And the first question is, if they don't have a color, that meant they didn't have enough students in that subgroup to report that specific piece. And if there are some that are, you know, in error, I'll go, certainly go back and double check that and make sure that that's not the case. As far as your second question, was that in relation to the data that was turned in for each charter for twenty twenty-one? Because the state put out a list of accountability measures that each individual district could use. And so each individual charter chose different accountability measures to send to the state, and that is exactly what they sent to us. With fifteen oh five, the accountability measure will be a piece that we'll be looking at when charters come up for renewal. But we also be looking at them in in between now and their renewal date to see if there are areas of concern and have that conversation as far as what exactly are you doing to improve these areas and document and keep track of that.
Okay, thank you. For the no color, though, it it, like, for instance, for this one, Woodward, it has no color for like English Language Arts and no color for like mathematics. So.
That that would be in relation to the ones who have the California, let me take a look at Woodward to see which, what area exactly you're talking about. So they didn't do the CASP. You'll see that instead they selected I Ready. Therefore, they wouldn't have a color in English Language Arts or Mathematics.
The one does have CASP. If you're looking at the same one.
Woodward is the last.
I know they have.
School. So, Dr. Rogers, which school are you looking at?
The one that I'm looking at is Entrepreneur. Is that who? Are you looking at that one? With no colors, it has no colors. And then at the bottom, it has the CASP at a glance. But then at the top, it's not showing the the California Accountability System info that she, that Ms. Savios is referring to on any or all of them that shows no color. But they didn't use I Ready.
Okay, so for Entrepreneur High School, they, you're right, they do not have a color system on the California Accountability System information. So I'll get more information on that. And why would they were not assigned a color and see if it was in fact an error or if there's no color on the California Department of Education's website?
Alrighty, are there any other questions?
Just, I'm sorry, just to add on to that. So this is a first year Entrepreneur High School will have graduating seniors. So if if the if the students who took the CASP were not calculated on the California Accountability System, that may be a reason as well. I'll make sure to put all of this information in a Friday report.
Alrighty, we appreciate the information. And I know it wasn't a presentation, but quite a few questions on the documents that were provided. So we appreciate your time. Hopefully, you feel better. All right, we'll move on to ten point O, Board Policies Bylaws Discussion, first reading. Ten point one, Revision to Board Policy thirteen thirty, Use of School Facilities, Civic Center Act. And at this time, I believe we'll be reviewing that particular BP. Is that what we're doing? All right. Welcome. Before we get started, I will ask board members to wait until we are done with the presentation before we ask questions. It is only a few slides. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. We have three slides. It should go fairly quick. But then this is, so good evening, board, cabinet, and community. With me presenting is going to be Tom Pace. He's our Director of Facilities Planning and Construction. And Michael Pacias, our Use of Facility Supervisor. And Davil Sedani may or may not be in or out, but he's a legal counsel, and he was also a part of our Board Policy Subcommittee. So we're going to be covering the use of facility. So we're going to be covering the Use of Facilities Civic Center Act item. Next slide, please. And the, you know, last fall timeframe, we had some conversations regarding the use of facilities. We recognize that we had some gaps between some of our customers' expectations and the way the board policy was written and the execution of that board policy. So we heard from the board that we wanted to get the Board Policy Subcommittee together and kind of take a look at those, the language within that document to see how we can help improve the services to our community and make sure we also improve the process with our staff. So we went, we, we looked and embarked on this through with three objectives, you know, encouraging the use of facilities. And the board, actually in Board Policy 1330, does state that the board believes that the school facilities and grounds are a vital community resource, which should be used to foster community development. And we also share that belief. We want to make sure that we afford our facilities to as many individuals as possible in the best possible condition that we can provide those. And especially me, myself, being a previous user of those facilities, definitely appreciated having access to them. The second, provide structure and direction. You know, we recognize, like I mentioned before, that there was that gap between the expectations and the policy language. So what we wanted to do is we, we took this charge to close that gap, to make sure that we did provide the structure and direction to the facility staff who are charged with the execution of those policies and to make sure that we have good customer service at, at our facilities. The third one is also to make sure that the policy does adhere to education code. So we do have Legislature 38130 to 38139 for the ed code, as well as Senate Bill 1404. Those both state that authorizes a school district to grant the use of school facilities or grounds as a civic center act, as well as allowing and authorizing the school district to charge a fee not to exceed the district's direct costs. So basically, it places a cap on what the district can charge its community. Doesn't say there's a minimum, but it does say that there's a maximum amount that you can charge, and it has to go through a complete fee justification process. Next slide, please. So in that discussion with the Board Policy Subcommittee, we had a lot of discussions. We reviewed the board, the existing board policy, as well as existing administrative regulations documents. And we had a few members on our team, so thank you very much for your guys' participation and direction on how to craft the new language. And I believe you guys have access to the Red Line document, which shows some of the adjusted language. And then once we get to that, we'll turn it over to Mr. Saldani to help walk through those changes. So you'll see here, some of the items, just the highlights of the differences between what was being proposed and discussed within the Board Policy Subcommittee, as well as what's being implemented in that language. So those are a few items there. There's a couple of discussion points regarding the 60-90%. And then when it comes to use of paid terminates, there's a discussion point that was requested by the Subcommittee to also have regarding concessions and the dollars that are generated through those paid tournaments and how those are distributed or accounted for. Next slide, please. Insurance requirements is a very important aspect of this. When we talked about insurance, we also pointed to a latest situation where we had a potential, or we, we had a claim close to $100,000 due to an event that occurred on our property where there was not an insurance documentation because they didn't go through the use of facilities process. So unfortunately, the district had to have that cash outlay for that particular claim. So we wanted to make sure that we tightened up the insurance language on that policy. Also noticing that there's a difference between games and practices. So what we've had is we've had some organizations that have submitted permits for practice. Meanwhile, they're actually having games at those particular dates and times and reservations. So that insurance policy for practices is basically null and void because the insurance agent is not going to cover any incident that occurs during a game process with a practice policy. So we wanted to make sure that we spelled that out. And then progressive penalties for noncompliance. This is something, again, a, a discussion point for the board. We wanted to make sure that, or the subpolicy, or the policy Subcommittee members had mentioned that they wanted to make sure that there was some level accountability, but wanted to make sure it wasn't overly punitive. So we didn't immediately go straight to suspension of our use of facilities, that there was some type of communication process and progressive discipline process that was included, as well as all of the facility MOUs that need to go through the contractual process that we already have established with the district. Unfortunately, there are a lot of MOUs that we have with, with the city and with other agencies that kind of circumvented that process. So we want to make sure that we tighten that process up and that we communicate out to all parties, that they all go through one channel, through the facilities office, through purchasing, and then ultimately being approved by the board. So at this point, I'll turn it over to the Subcommittee members, see if there's any discussion points, and then also to Mr. Saldani.
Alrighty, Ms. Precy, is that on the presentation right now? Okay, thank you. And I will go ahead and entertain questions from the board. And I do apologize because I was reading the BP while he was talking a little bit, so someone could help me out with the order. Oh, Mr. Tillman says he was first. Alright, and then who was after, Mr. Tillman? Ms. Vios, and then last two. Alright, that's the results, Medina, then Dr. Daddy Rogers, then Dr. Flores, and maybe me. You don't ask all the questions already. Alright, Ms. Vios. Oh, wait, Mr. Tillman, excuse me.
I'm assuming that the lawyer's here for this item. So if we turn to Echo I-1, it's in, it's provided in the presentation. And it says, "A school district authorizing the use of school facilities or grounds under subdivision is liable for injury resulting from the negligence of the school district in the ownership and maintenance of the school facilities or grounds. An entity using school facilities or grounds under this section is liable for injury resulting from the negligence of that entity during the use of the school facilities or grounds. The school district and the entity using the school facilities or grounds under this section shall each bear the cost of assuring against its respective risk and shall each bear the cost of defending itself against claims arising from those risks." That's what it says, right? So doesn't that basically say that the, if something occurs, then the district bears responsibility and the organization does too?
And that's why we have insurance requirements to protect the district.
Right. But, Mr., what's your last name again, Sam? Mr. Precy mentioned the incident where something occurred and the district had to pay $100,000?
Yeah, through our insurance process.
So we had a claim through the insurance?
Yes, sir.
And did the organization have insurance?
The organization, it was a private party individual, so it was an individual that was bringing other folks onto our property and had a paid tournament.
Yeah, what?
A paid tournament.
Did he have insurance?
He did not have insurance.
So the, if, if that person doesn't have insurance, wouldn't their organization be liable that could get sued?
Yeah, and that's why we have insurance.
Yeah, but I'm saying, even if they didn't have insurance, they're still liable.
They could bring a claim, but the finding a liability is different. But I, I think I understand what you're saying.
You know, you understand what I'm saying? Right. So, I mean, we could ask for the insurance, but this law is saying that both entities are responsible, and it, it'll be determined who has the response, responsibility, whether it's the facilities. And then that's when it determines what we have to pay, right?
Yes, and that's why we require those organizations that use our facilities to have that insurance. So when there is something that goes wrong, we, we have some means of recovery other than just those individuals.
And then on the, this page that has the summary, when it says weekday 60% within district and weekend 90% within district, what does that mean?
That was a discussion coming out of the Subcommittee. And that has to do with whether or not to provide free use, meaning we won't charge them for our cost of utilities and maintenance and other things. And they wanted to put some parameters on that. If it was a weekday use, they wanted to make sure that those organizations that were going to get the benefit of free use served at least 60% in district residents. Whereas on the weekend, they want that number to be higher in order to enjoy free use on the weekend. And I think the rationale there is on the weekend, it costs us more because we're paying folks overtime to come in during their off hours, to come in over the weekend, like custodians and others, to prepare the site, clean the site, et cetera. And so they wanted a higher threshold to be able to utilize it for free on the weekend.
Let's have it be clear. Let's take the, a good example would be the Junior All-American team that uses our field at the Royal Valley. And we waived the fees for them. So are you saying that if their entire team is from San Bernardino, but the other team is not, then that's not 90%? If the visiting team is not from San Bernardino, and they normally aren't, does that mean that it's not 90%?
No, sir. So the host is the one that we would be looking at for that percentage. Obviously, we recognize that visiting teams would not dilute, would not further complicate the freeze.
And I'm all for that, right. I'm, I'm all, I don't know where he came with the magic number, 90%. To me, if I got 50% of the people on the team are from our school district, and they're able to have a team because of that, it's just like the ladies talked about today about the statistics for kids involved in constructive programs. And the law states in here, you may charge a fee. May is an important word, and you're a lawyer here, so you can tell, you can explain. May means that you don't have to. And it says that you may charge a fee, and you, the, the, the thrust in this law is to make sure you don't charge more than what the costs are. But I just want to make it clear to the board that it is saying may, which means you do not have to charge a fee. If the board chooses not to charge a fee, you don't have to. And I would hope and pray that this board understands the benefit to our district students by providing them the ability to participate in constructive activities. A prime example is when we had Drumline, and our kids from San Bernardino participated in Drumline. And we would go to, we would go to competitions, and you would go to someplace like Corona. And the millionaire parent would buy the trailer and the instruments and everything, and pay for the food and the drinks and the uniforms. And these folks looked like a million dollars because that's where they live. Because our district sponsored them, paid the, the money, we were allowing them to participate in something that normally they would not be able to because our district has 90% of the students that qualify for some form of free or reduced lunch. One of the, one of the, the poorest counties in the state of California. I, I just hope that we understand that. And my only motivation for allowing us to waive these fees is to allow young people to participate in constructive activities that they would not participate in if we didn't waive the fees. And if, and if it gets to the point where you don't understand that, we're in trouble. And, 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 and I don't know what the difference is between a weekday and a weekend. I'm all for, if the school site has an event, then the school site gets first, they get first access. I'm not talking about having a Junior All-American team take over the football field on Friday night from the football team. I'm not saying that. But to have an empty field sitting there because you said that they had 80% of the kids were from San Bernardino versus 90%, so you would rather see the 80% not participate and have the field empty, doesn't make sense to me.
Mr. Tillman, I think we can provide some context for you around the discussion. And I think you share the sentiment of the board Subcommittee when we met and discussed this very item. And the group acknowledged that the goal is to get our students access to these facilities. It was not a discussion about restriction of access. One of the things that we discussed, and I'll give you a couple scenarios to give you some context around how, and the, this is the first reading, so I think the board Subcommittee also made something very clear. They wanted the rest of the board to weigh in on some of the parameters that were discussed when we met over multiple weekends. So the idea is really around the discussion of this topic. Let me give one example that we used. We built a pool at Indian Springs. It's a very nice facility. It's something that we should be very proud of. It is so nice, though, that there are surrounding communities that would like to use that pool. And so when we look at free use, if we just say all nonprofits will have free use, then you could have a water polo team from Redlands that would like to come in that don't sponsor any of our students and use that facility for free. So the idea was, how do we create the scenario where we allow our students access to our facilities, but at the same time, set some parameters so that we know how to navigate the requests that are coming in so that in the end, we can apply a policy equitably to all users? And that was the context around the discussion. And so I think that that is the 60-90, yes, during the day or the week. And we work with those facility, or with those users where we have custodians. We try to allow for the use where we already are paying people for those facilities. On the weekends, those costs become exponentially higher. And the idea was, how do we, how do we look at district resources so that they benefit our students?
And I would just add that the Subcommittee is not saying that if you don't meet those percentages, the, the fields go unused. You can't use them. No, they're saying if you can't meet those percentages, then you have to pay what everybody else pays. And it's more than just the percentages. It's, you don't charge entry fees, right? So what we want to avoid are giving these facilities away for free for folks that come in and then charge our students and families money for parking. They charge them tournament fees. If they're charging them that money, why, why are we giving them the use of that facility for free? So that, that's one of the sentiments coming out of the Subcommittee. And that's why we draw that distinction between free use.
And I hope we got input from the, the organizations that, for instance, the, the primary one would be the one that uses the Royal Valley. And, and talk to them about if they, if they, I don't know if they charge anything or not, but if they do, is the money being used to pay for the membership into the league? Yeah, and I'll say this, and, and I know that I may be out on an island, but people don't understand poverty that haven't gone through poverty. I, I grew up in poverty. So I, I, I know what no money is. You, you, you actually have situations in, in our district where if you're going to go with something where you say you're going to charge fees, I'll give you a prime example. You're talking about the 90%, I don't agree with it. Because if the, the guy over there at the Junior All-American has a, a team with 100 kids on it and 50 of them from San Bernardino, it's worth it to me to waive the fees. And, and, and if it means that if we don't waive the fees, that the organization doesn't exist, that's not a good thing for me. And I do know this, they talked about it tonight, the golf team is gone. We don't have the Little League teams we used to have. And the only reason why is because San Bernardino is less affluent than it used to be. And for us to contribute to that makes no sense. And you're literally talking about pennies when you talk about the money, amount of money we have as a district. And I understand that the average person doesn't understand that. The average person doesn't understand what a billion dollars is. We got a billion dollars in a budget. I got an extra $300 million this year, or close to $400 million here, and you're talking about peanuts. So would I rather see kids on the site using it on the weekend versus us making this policy? And all of a sudden, my fields are empty, and we sit back, act like we did something good. That's crazy to me.
If I?
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Ms. Vios?
I'll actually wait until Mr. Tillman returns for my comment.
Alrighty, I believe, Dr. Daddy Rogers, you were next.
Thank you. So first, I will say thank you all that have worked on this because this has been a long time coming of trying to provide, the biggest thing for me is the consistency and to navigate what's best for our entire community. And I do believe at the crux of this, you, there is, we're not trying to be punitive to our own community of students. We have to prioritize our students, right, upfront. And nowhere am I seeing that we're saying that that's going to become the problem. But I also want to provide and bring clarity, as we talk about this in full transparency, when we say things like may, we got, we have to be clear. Because if a, a may could be anyone, you know, who, who may call me up and say, well, am I that exception to the rule? So I know you all have some schedules. I don't see all the schedules. I see the verbiage in here and, and reading it now, and I did read it over the weekend. And I, and I'm, and I think we're, we're moving in that direction. But again, we don't, we don't have the schedules in front of us, right? And then my question would be, I, I think, Mr. Precy, you told me that it is also automated, right? Is it, is it automated? So will the, will the policy? So will the policy also be attached to what the individuals see? So it's just like anything, if I'm going to buy a ticket to something, I need to be able to determine those things that I can and I cannot do. What my charges, what they are up to, or whatever the case may be. And then the numbers in which we call, if we need clarity. Because this is going to be somewhat new. I'm also appreciative to the insurance, because I know for a fact that there's been some confusion about fees versus insurance. And so while also, I'm sure people are listening, the question directed into saying, "We have an umbrella policy." Well, of course we do. You know, we're a large institution. But we are not, we don't have that just to utilize it all the time either, because we want people to do things properly. So if everyone is required to have insurance, again, how much is that insurance? Will it tell them? Is it a million-dollar policy? Does it cover, you know, if shenanigans take place versus an accident? Because there's several types of insurances now for nonprofits. So we want to be clear on that as well. And then, let's see. And then the charges, and I've may mentioned this to you before too, Mr. Precy, that when we look at the charges that will take place, is it on the backs of the site? And if it is, and that's a problem that they're not even sharing with us, do we need to fix that as well? Does there need to be a pool of funding that covers for facility usage that we can implement into the budget, so that we are also helping? We've now identified that if there is a cost that has been occurring, we need to put that in our discussion when we're looking at the budget, so we don't have to continue to come back and say, "Well, they covered it, they didn't cover it." Something changed. Perhaps we may be able to come up with a dollar amount based on the average of whatever's been occurring. But I do agree with the work that's being done and the direction that we're going. Clarity and transparency and consistency for our community, and never an effort to not serve those that are underserved. We want them here. We know that being on a campus at any time is safe, because we have the wonderful police that we have patrolling all the time. And the disheartening thing is, I do have the community that have asked, "Well, why are they charging, and how come they're charging?" Because if it's not us charging, or our locals charging, it is offensive to some. And it may not be 50,000 people saying it, but it has been said, and that's where all this input is coming from. So I appreciate this, and then also the clarity around all those other, you know, issues with charges. And if it's automated, then is that information going to be transparent and there for them to understand?
I think one of the things to, now that Mr. Tillman is back, to respond to his comment about the 60 and 90%, staff didn't come with the recommendation for 60 and 90%. It was truly a discussion about what does the board want out of the policy. If we want to advocate for no admission, no charge, then that's the direction that we will build our processes and procedures around. And so the idea is, how do we engage the board and look for the direction that you want out of your facility use, so that we can build policies and procedures that implement that? Because ultimately, that is our responsibility, is to take your direction and implement it equally across all users within the community. And that's the discussion that we're looking to have. We're not trying to give you recommendations on what you want out of this policy. We're truly looking for your direction as how you want this to be implemented.
And I would just add that it was clear to me that the subcommittee was, big picture, concerned with a couple of things. Number one, how to make it more user-friendly, to your comment, Dr. Rogers, and making sure the end-user experience is accessible, that when they go to a site, they have all that information, policy, insurance requirements. The other overarching comment, and this goes back to Mr. Tillman's comment about the fact that we have discretion, we may. One of the things that the subcommittee was interested in is having a consistent process for the "may," rather than have it be an ad hoc decision, because you might get different answers from different staff people, and then you have different users getting different deals. And so it was really important, whatever that is, whether there's percentages or there's not, but to have a consistent process that's accessible, and that's applied across the board, so that it takes out some of that, takes out the discretion and makes it a fair playing field for everybody. So if you're going to use the site, these are the terms and conditions under which you're going to use it. And so these specific recommendations, the 60%, the 90%, the not charging fees, that's some brainstorming that came out of that subcommittee. And I'll, of course, defer to those members of the subcommittee if they want to, you know, explain the rationale behind that. But the overarching point is to come up with something that is accessible, user-friendly, and most importantly, applied consistently across the board.
One of the items that was discussed, to your point, Dr. Rogers, is that if there is a waiving of fees, that there is an offsetting budget someplace within our overall budget, so that the costs that are incurred are, we're not trying to pull from other places and trying to figure out how to pay for those charges. So that was discussed. That was something that the subcommittee felt needed to be explored. So that was one thing that was discussed. And so, yes, we do agree with you that there are ways that this can be implemented and planned for if we want to really open up free use or free access to our facilities.
Absolutely, so I appreciate that.
And I just wanted to point out, the policy as it's constituted now indicates that we will charge for use on Saturday and Sunday. There are no special dispensation for groups. What I think the policy committee took under consideration is, what are those circumstances, percentage of students served, et cetera, that would provide the opportunity to not charge groups for use on the weekend?
We're going to continue in the normal order, so, Ms. Sevales Medina, you were next.
Oh, she had her light on before, and then it was...
I think she wanted to make her comment...
After?
When everybody was back, is that correct?
I can...
I did. I wanted to make sure that we were all here, because, you know, my comments are important.
Okay, so did you want to...
You can go ahead and go first.
Okay, so I think there was a lot of confusion. I'm glad, you know, you were able to explain a little bit of it. So I'm going to kind of try to go down the line, because I think, just to kind of get my perspective on it. For-profits do not qualify for free use. So the thing is that, and I think it was mentioned with leagues, right? My daughter, when she was in high school volleyball, I wanted to get her into a league and realized I'm one of those families that could not afford it. So it was like thousands of dollars just to participate in the league. And that's what I thought was for those that could afford it, great. Those that maybe made sacrifices in order to have their children participate. I had five children, so there's no way I was going to be able to participate, have my daughter participate. And that was a bummer, because I really wanted her to get those opportunities. So I guess that's one of the things that I was looking at, is really looking at those for-profits. Don't necessarily, they're able to earn money. They're able to, whatever resource, maybe charge students themselves. So they don't really qualify for the free use. That's where my understanding came in from. The 501(c)(3) and other charitable do and may participate in this, where they can have free use. When it comes to the weekday, those are numbers that we just came up with. It's just so we can put some numbers to it. And we know organizations, maybe like, for instance, an example, 10 students, and maybe only five of them are within our city. And it doesn't even have to necessarily be students that go to our schools. It could be students within our school district, period, that can benefit from the free use. So we were looking at just a number, 60%, because if we lowered it down, we thought, let's just say out of 10, only three. I mean, they could possibly, so I'm okay with lowering it. But we want to make sure that organizations are looking for our students. They're trying to, you know, kind of market and reach out to our schools to increase more students. When it came to the weekend, specifically, for example, on Sundays, that it was a lot more money for our school sites to have, you know, the games. And then on holidays too, because apparently I was listening that there's, you know, Christmas. Having our staff work on Christmas. So then I thought, you know what? Okay, let's just say that, you know, we do want to have the free and participate, but let's just hire the number to 90%. Like I said, these were just ranges of numbers, how we can look at, that those that were going to get those free were because they were really servicing a large amount of students. So Sundays, when I was looking at the 90%, and maybe correct me if I'm wrong in that area, it was Sundays and holidays. When it came to the free, the no free use for paid tournaments, I did not realize that many of these entities that were going to our schools were actually charging for the entrance fee. And they were getting free use, but yet they were charging. And then even some of them were charging parking fees to use the parking lot at our schools in order to get more money. Now, if they're a nonprofit, they would be able to waive that, but they wouldn't necessarily pay, have their families pay tournament fees or parking fees. So definitely a big no-no when I found out. Regardless of how they're using the money, if they're literally, and I'm willing to make exceptions, if they have noted that they will pay 100% of the league fees for the students that are within our school district, by all means. We'll let you use the facilities for free.
And to Ms. Medina's point, let me give you the context, board, around the idea of parking. So board policy allows for grounds to be used for free now. That was passed close to a decade ago. So grounds are to be used and fields to be used for free. So we have outside user groups that will put in for free. They'll say, "We want to use the parking lot at a particular school." And I can tell you that I have had this happen to me personally, that on the weekend, working on schools, I have pulled into the parking lots to try to park and work on our schools, only to have someone at the gate of our school try to charge me entrance as an employee, because they have put in for facility use for free use of the parking lot, and they're using it for just parking for other events that are occurring in and around the school. And so when we look at these policies, we're trying to promote those that want to truly be there for the benefit of our students and put guardrails up for those who have clearly identified, let's call it, weak spots in the system. And so that was the discussion, and that's how we got to the idea of we have to look at parking differently. We do have user groups, and I've been there on weekends for not those particular events, but for other reasons, only to find that we do have user groups that charge $20, $25 a person to enter. They charge for food. They don't allow for food to be brought into the facility, because then they charge for food that is being sold within the facility. And so the discussions really, and we spent hours with the board subcommittee talking through the different scenarios. And what you're looking at is the first attempt at how do we look at that free use but still provide for some rule of law, so that we don't have the confusion that at times we have on our facilities?
And just to clarify too as well, there's many outside, many that are requesting to use our facilities. And it's making sure that our, the students within our region, doesn't have to be San Bernardino City, five school district students, because we know that even if you are not attending our schools, you still live in the area and you will benefit from this. And just to clarify on that piece, that we want these entities that are serving our students in this region, in this area within the city, are able to use it for free. We don't want to ever create, you know, a hindrance. If they're helping our students, we want to help them. But don't come like, for instance, you have 10 students and then only one student. And I guess every student matters, but if only one, because they're not really marketing, and they're not really targeting our students then. They may just have one, just so they can meet the criteria, and then want to use the free. But I'm open to whatever the board suggests. But on other areas, when it comes to fees, I do agree that we need to start charging for nonprofits and so forth.
Just one comment on that.
I'm sorry, for-profits, I apologize, for-profits.
Yeah, with regard to the comment on the number of students, maybe they have one person that's... We do, since we don't have a charge for our field use, we do have a number of organizations from Rialto, Fontana, as far as Riverside, that will book facilities at our location. They will overuse our fields. So we're at a point where our fields don't have an opportunity to regenerate, to maintain green grass, so they're just getting pounded. So when our students are willing or wanting to use those fields, there's not a process to allow them to come back, because they're being overly utilized, because we're the, I think, the only district in our region that has a zero charge for our actual fields. All the other school districts do charge a small fee for their field use. So they'll come here because it's a zero fee versus their own districts.
Thank you, Ms. Sevales Medina. Dr. Flores?
So Ms. Medina, Ms. Sevales and I are on the Board Policy Committee. And we really engaged in very deep, deep, deep discussion and analysis and so forth. And this is a draft. This is a draft. We need everybody's input. It's just a draft of the changes. And I asked, and I'm going to ask again, how many people? How many organizations do we waive? How many nonprofits do we waive?
The organizations that get waived comes out to about $155,000 on an annual basis. And the number of organizations is about eight, eight or nine. So it's a very small number.
So it's a very small number that we're...
Of individual organizations.
Of individual organizations.
Now, I will say that the disclaimer on that one there, though, is, that's the number that's going through our Facilitron process. Unfortunately, we are aware that there's a lot of organizations that'll utilize our facilities for free that are working outside the process. We've come across some of those agreements that people have made outside, but in the system, eight.
Just to lock you down, there are only eight...
Only eight in the system, yes.
...that we waive fees for.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, out of how many?
I don't have the total number.
We have over 158 user groups, outside user groups.
Okay, outside user groups that we charge fees to.
So those are the user groups that are in the system. So we know of 158 users that have supplied insurance that are looking to use our facilities, whether it's for religious services, personal events, sporting, and other types of student-based events.
So just to clarify, out of those 100 or so, how much fee do we charge them fees for usage?
We do. Yeah, the total fees that we collect, that we're projecting to collect for this year is $113,500.
Okay, but we do collect fees, okay?
We do.
So we didn't discuss the overuse of our fields in our subcommittee? We did not discuss that. I don't recall that we did that. So maybe we need to put a policy in there to protect our fields, right, from outside use?
And I will say that although our fields get overused, I will tell you, one of the things that has always brought some joy to me about our facility use process is that we recognize that our fields should be used. And AYSO, a lot of nonprofits use our fields for free, and that benefits our students on a daily basis. If you go by Serrano every night, there is soccer being played until late into the evening on the fields.
And do they get a facility's use?
So our grounds are free. That was passed, Michael, I believe in 2008, was the last time that our fees were approved by the board. And in 2008, the board wanted to move in the direction of free use for grounds. So when we say user groups getting fee waivers, although we told you eight, there are probably 40 or 50 other groups that are receiving. there are probably forty or fifty other groups that are receiving free grounds use per board policy now.
Okay, so there's more than eight?
This is eight that are receiving, so outside of grounds. So let's think of our facilities in two chunks, right? So your grounds, your flat area, that is, per board policy, you are allowed to use those for free. When it comes to entering buildings, there are fees, and there is a fee structure depending on what type of building.
Are we talking about eight organizations that want to use facilities?
Buildings themselves.
Buildings, okay, not grounds.
Correct.
Okay, so that's a distinction that we hadn't made. I mean, I didn't, I don't know about you guys, we, uh, that was not made in our subcommittee. Okay, so it's, it's coming out now, so that's good. Because you guys have local knowledge, and we don't, because you're involved in the daily use of it, right? Okay, so, so, so it's just eight groups in terms of facilities?
In the system. I wanna, so one of the things that has occurred over the past several years is there are user groups that have been and are using the facilities that are not working through the system now.
I don't understand what you're talking about.
Uh, as an example, and we, uh, we can get into details later, but we had this past weekend, a user group that no one knew about, using one of our facilities, that was having a tournament at one of our high schools. Paid tournament.
They just came in?
Correct.
And didn't, didn't, didn't tell anybody?
Was not in the system, the site didn't know about it. And so we have, uh, Sam can talk in greater detail about the specifics of that, but those are multiple examples. I can tell you, just having been on our campuses on the weekend, we've had people use our pools. The XG key, I, it's a joke, internal joke, but the XG key, the gate key that we have, uh, I think everyone has a copy of the XG key within our community. Uh, we have several groups that have found ways of accessing our facilities over the years. And one of the reasons that we created the position of the Facility Use Supervisor, so that we have someone dedicated to this work, trying to find those gaps in the system, shoring up those gaps and promoting the free use. Because one of the things that we want to do is promote using the system, so that we get the insurance. If we protect ourselves with the insurance, if you ask us to prioritize, what is a greater priority for us? Insurance or fee? It's insurance. And if we have people working outside the system, we are vulnerable to much more than just a hundred thousand dollars on a per annum basis.
Yeah, one thing that our team talked about is if, if there's a zero fee for everything, from a facility standpoint, we're okay with that. Because that gives us clear direction on what we have to do, as long as there's insurance documentation in place. So, uh, from us, the, from the facility staff, the direction as to what the charges are, are completely not our recommendation or our decision to make, that's completely on the board to provide us that information on what you guys collectively want to, for us to do.
So, Mr. President, I, I think, I think we need, uh, more time to discuss this, to maybe have a board workshop, to, so for you to lay out all the different issues and challenges, so that we can discuss it all together. Like Ms. Savios always recommends, that we
Well, Dr. Flores, this is still a first read, right?
I know, it's still
I mean, we're getting a lot of information for a first read, so, but I, I think it's good, because
Yeah, but we can do more
we're not gonna finalize a BP without all the information.
Yeah, I think I would like to do a board workshop or something, so that we can get more, because, I mean, I didn't know some of the stuff you were saying. I mean, that, those are egregious, right, some of them. Uh, but, uh, anyway, um, that's what I recommend. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores. Ms. Savios?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Scott Wyatt. So definitely a lot of new information, uh, as, um, Dr. Flores just mentioned, that, that we, that we are even being newly introduced to, right? For instance, like the eight facilities, um, or the eight
Organizations.
Organizations, thank you, that are utilizing it for free. So I have some questions about that, but before I enter into my questions, I just want to, um, give a summary, I guess, into, uh, because, because we did spend a lot of time, um, you know, late in the evenings, um, really working through some of the details of, of this, um, board policy. And one of the things that we had discussed as a subcommittee was the use of, um, the incentive or encouragement to have our students utilize the facilities, for them to get direct benefit from them. And so, you know, the, the sixty is just a little bit over half, right? So, you know, I think it's pretty doable. During the week, if you're a nonprofit, you can, you, you can, you know, submit a request to use our facilities for free. If you have one plus fifty, right? That would be the one plus fifty, which I think is completely reasonable. Now, on the weekends, it does come to be more costly, not just the cost, you know, but like, you know, Ms. Medina was saying, sometimes it's on holidays, or it's, it's sometimes it's, you know, on days that maybe employees don't want to come in and, and work, even if it's over, you know, being paid extra or whatnot. And that's why that number had come in, the ninety percent had come in for, for those specific days. Um, again, it's not that they can't use them, it's that they'll just have to put out of pocket to be able to cover those fees. And if, and if we have an organization that has eighty percent of our students, if they have eighty percent, they can do ninety, right? If they have seventy, they could do eighty. This is actually helping to really incentivize those organizations to really target our students, which is, at the end of the day, what this board wants, for our students to get the benefit, right? Um, and so, to me, it really is very clear and straightforward. We want our students to benefit, and we want to make it easy for those organizations that are targeting our students, to be able to participate in, in their, in their sports, or whatever it is that they're offering. You know, I, I heard Mr. Tillman say, you know, it's pennies that we, we are kind of, you know, picking, or, or outpicking or nitpicking here. Is it really pennies that we're talking about?
We're, we're in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars?
Correct.
Okay. And, um, are we currently? So out of the eight, out of the eight organizations that currently use our facilities for free, how many of those are nonprofits?
Seven of the eight.
Seven.
Correct. So why don't we, why don't we quickly, uh, talk about who those user groups generally are? Uh, and let me give some context on why the board policy was changed just a couple of years ago. Uh, so we heard loud and clear from Mr. Tillman that we needed to open up access to our facilities, which is why two years ago, or it might have been a little more than two years now, the policy went to the Policy Subcommittee for Revision, this was done several years ago, for the idea of opening it up and really looking at nonprofits. So when we look at the eight, one of them is San Bernardino, uh, San Bernardino City Parks and Recs. We think that's a great partnership. We know that our city lacks green space. We know that we can provide that green space. So one of the biggest user groups that receives free waivers is the city itself. Because the board, several years ago, and Mr. Tillman and I had a lot of conversations around this, that we should be supporting local agencies, that we should be cooperating with one another, rather than trying to charge each other's fees and not promoting our constituents' use of our schools. So they are one of the largest users. Uplift San Diego is, or Uplift San Bernardino is another one of those groups that uses our facilities. The San Bernardino Water District is one of those facilities. So a lot of those nonprofits are local government agencies, looking to run adult leagues, looking to have meetings in our spaces, to where they can have their own Brown Act meetings, when they can't hold them at their own spaces. And from there, then you have, uh, a smattering of, uh, athletics, from OG Ducks, to, uh, Vision Youth, to San Bernardino Hawks Youth Football. You know, and when we look at the groups that are currently using our facilities, seven of the eight of them are nonprofits that benefit our students. And I can tell you, there's nothing that makes me more proud than seeing those facilities being used. When we look at the investments that we've made, and Mr. Tillman and I often agree on, we have some of the best football fields in the inland empire, and they should go used. I hope we wear them out to the point where you're begging us to put new ones in, we just gotta find the funding to put them in. But we want our facilities used. Uh, and we're currently doing that, and the previous board policy allowed for that. Really what we're discussing tonight is where the system is getting abused. Where we're not, we haven't put up the guardrails to protect ourselves from people who've figured out how to use the system for their own personal benefit. And that's the discussion that we're trying to have, and figure out what's appropriate and what's not for our community and for our facilities. And ultimately, what we'd like to do is to go back and build transparent, structured systems that you can hold us accountable for, uh, with each of the user groups within the city.
Thank you, um, thank you for that. Explanation. Um, I do have a couple other remarks here that I would like to make. First of all, I want to ask, you know, our current board policy says that we are to be charging. Is that happening? Are we charging?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, do you want me to walk you through how, uh, facility use is currently being handled? Because I heard we had a comment about, I heard it's automated, and I know the board subcommittee got to hear how the current process, uh, is being handled, but I'm not sure the full board has heard exactly what that user experience is. So right now, if you are a user group in any part of Southern California that wants to use our facility, there is a website called Facilitron backslash San Bernardino, where you can log on and see every one of our facilities. We took pictures of our facilities. We outlined the condition of them, what the spaces are, and we've applied, and you can click on their availability. So if you want to have a church event at the Sturgis Center, you can click on Facilitron, you can click on the Sturgis Center, you can see what times it's available. You can click on it. It will even allow you to buy insurance on a per-day basis, because we know that insurance, previously we had asked for a policy for up to six months to cover future use. If you just want insurance for a day, because that's all you can afford, you can buy insurance on the website itself. It then takes you to a checkout, just like buying something on Amazon. You can pay in multiple different ways, and your reservation is made.
So, currently, the, the board policy that we have says that we will charge on weekends, correct?
Correct.
And we are following that?
In all but maybe one or two cases.
Okay.
As a whole.
So then, my next question is, why aren't we doing that for those one or two cases?
I think that brings us to this discussion, because I think that there is divergent views on how our facilities should be used. And in order to avoid the conflict or the appearance of, uh, uneven application, instead of moving forward with those divergent views, we asked the board to look at the policy, so that we could get clear direction on what the board would like, so that we can move forward in equally applying that.
So we are currently violating board policy for one or two organizations?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
In the black and white sense, yes.
Okay, so then, I personally have a problem with that. Because then that goes back to our conversation, and the reason why we are here, that if we don't have clear guidelines and clear guidance, then it becomes a matter of discretion. A subjective decision on a specific day to a specific employee at any given time. And that's why, again, in my opinion, we tend to get in trouble with the community. Not just in the, you know, facilities use agreement, but also in the after-school program partnerships that we have, in, with charter schools. You know, with all of these different areas, we don't have policies where it's clear-cut that could apply across the board.
And I think one of the things, it's not just, so we, when we talk about the eight, right? We talk about those that are within the system. So for several years, let's call that there's been a degradation of divergent views at all levels. So it's not just the eight that we're talking about. It speaks to the one group this weekend, that somehow found a neighbor's key to get into the gym. Right? And they found a free way of using our facilities. So over the years, as we've talked about, who should use our facilities, who shouldn't, there's been a degradation at all levels of free use. And so the, the purpose is really to shore up from top to bottom. So once we get the board direction on what you're looking for, we can then build the guardrails from the top all the way down, so that we can ensure that equitable application of process. And we hear you, and it makes it very difficult for staff to, one, find people that we don't know about, because we want to make sure that, it's not just because we're trying to enforce. Enforcement's a hard word, right? The context of enforcement in our society right now is one of a pejorative. Uh, so I, we don't try to use enforcement. We actually want to know who our user groups are, so that they have a good experience, one. We want to make sure that people are opening up the doors for them. We want to make sure that they understand that they're welcome. We want to make sure that we clean the facilities for them. We want to make sure that they have the controllers for the scoreboards. We want to make sure that, when, and we often, when people don't have access to our restrooms, but they have access to the gyms, they will use whatever corner of the building they would like for their restrooms. We want to know who they are, so that we can have a great customer experience.
So I just want to say two last things. One, I hope that we do move forward in implementing current board policy, until a new board policy is adopted. That we are not violating that. I hope that we can agree to that. And two, I forgot my second one. I'll come back to it. But that's it, thank you.
Alrighty, wow, um, I think this is enlightening to all of us up here, even our board subcommittee, who has worked hard to get us to this point. So thank you to our subcommittee. And I'll say thank you to our district and our staff as well, for providing such tremendous access to our fields and facilities. I think much greater than any of us even realized up here. And when we're talking about a hundred and fifty-eight or a hundred and sixty-six, if we're not including the eight in that, a hundred and fifty-eight groups using
Those are external user groups. You have to remember, we have internal user groups.
Oh, and there's internal groups in addition to that.
So if you are contracted with the district to provide tutoring services, there are blood banks. We have on any given day, a whole host of outside user groups that are using our facilities in ways that benefit our community. And we are actively making sure that they have equal access to our facilities.
And I hear you, Mr. Pace, and Mr. Precy, what you're saying, uh, I mean, just logistically, that sounds like quite a monumental task, and I learned about Facilitron today, didn't know about that as well. Didn't know our fields and facilities were being advertised all over Southern California, if not California. So I could see why folks come here and use, and like I said, in some cases, and I agree, some of our beautiful facilities. Brand-new facilities. And I get that, I do. And, and I applaud us for allowing folks to use our fields and facilities, because hopefully they're there to do what's right, and that's to get away from things they shouldn't be doing, playing sports, music, whatever it may be. I didn't, you know, we had religious groups coming on our sites, but, uh, you know, I'm fine with that too. But my gosh, I, I think this has been a very robust discussion. I don't think, any of us probably thought it was gonna go this far when we first started. I know I sure didn't. Um, but it has created a lot more questions for us as a board, and definitely us as a subcommittee, that, um, we weren't, we're not gonna resolve tonight. I'll say that, I know that for sure. And, you know, again, this was a first read, and this is probably the longest first read I've seen since I've been on the board. But that's okay, because we're answering a lot of questions and creating more that need clarification on, and so, and I think I'm echoing what a lot of my colleagues up here have said, is, uh, you know, first and foremost, it should always be our students, our kids. you know, first and foremost, it should always be our students, our kids, our family, our community, who have access to these resources, to these fields, to these facilities, uh, before anyone. And, and I hope that's the case. Uh, 'cause I could see where it could be a scheduling and competitive nightmare, um, through Facilitron, as people just put in for it. And, and again, we'll get more information on that, 'cause if I'm going to, say, tomorrow, and field's open at eight, can I just plug in and then boom, there I am? I get it, and maybe somebody else doesn't. So, you know, those are things that we're gonna have to flush out as well, 'cause a lot has come out right now. And, um, a- again, I think it's been emphasized that our students, our kids, our communities, our families are first. And that's how it needs to be. We also need to flush out those that have abused the system. And I think we've heard plenty of that tonight, and I'm not gonna go on anymore about it. But if there are those that are abusing the system, then they need to be removed. To me, that's plain and simple. If it's written in the board policy, there's violations of doing so. So be it, you know, I'm, I'm not shocked, but I'm a little bit astonished that people are charging for parking for events that have nothing to do with the school. I mean, that's criminal, in my opinion.
So, Dr. Wyatt, and I think we oughta be, uh, clear around, uh, I think what Ms. Sabios was asking. That until we pass a new board policy, so until we get a second read, are we, as a board, asking staff to follow current board policy?
Well, and I, I did hear her say that, and, and there is a huge concern here for us as a board. I think because in previous meetings, we've been, we've been given approval, whether, I'm pretty sure it's his board, uh, and the superintendent that said, we're gonna continue to allow those clubs, nonprofits, whomever they may be, to use the facilities as they have been. So if that is what we did say, now we're going against that. So I think that's my clarification for us as a board. Because my understanding was, as of right now, it was business as usual until we could clean this up.
And I think that's, we heard Ms. Sabios ask for one, uh, interpretation. We just wanna make sure that we're providing you what...
And I respect her, her, her question, obviously, but right now, a- again, this puts many people in an uncomfortable situation. If we say we're gonna continue to do so, and then now we're putting the brakes on it.
And I think we understand, uh, the direction from the board president, and we will continue down that path until the policy is enacted.
And I, I think the message needs to really go out that it's coming. And for those that are continuously abusing it, you know, I guess that's where I have an issue right now. Is that those are abusing it, and they know they're abusing it, let's just be honest. It needs to be addressed. If it's in this, and I apologize, I tried to read this board policy again and again. If it's already in there, I know, I, I see what she's saying. If it's already in there, we had that leverage, but we said no. So I, I, I mean, I have to look for consensus here, because we agreed, I thought, as a board and, you know, the superintendent, that we're gonna allow this to continue until this is resolved.
Can I, can...
Yeah, and Mr. Tillman is next, but, um...
Can I clarify my request, though?
Yeah, please.
Yeah. So, so it's actually more than just a request, it's current board policy. We can't give a consensus, at least, you know, somebody, you know, helped me understand. It has to be agendized before we can actually make a vote to say that we're gonna assist them. We can't, it's a board policy, those are our rules. It shouldn't have been happening in the first place, no matter, you know, who allowed it. It, it doesn't matter who allowed it. I'm not even saying, let's go back and collect the money that's owed. Let's just stand on our current policy? Because what president are we, are we sending, then? We're not following our own board policies here? I mean, that's my concern. And so I say we stick with the current board policy. I'm not saying, let's go back and charge, but stick with what it says. And if we wanna change it, let's then agendize it on our next board meeting, and then we can make a vote.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios, Mr. Tillman, and it looks like Ms. Rosales-Madina.
This is very, very frustrating. As a board, and Mr. Pace, you were in the meetings. This board years ago had the discussion that we were gonna waive fees for nonprofits that use our facilities. It was a long discussion, just like we're having tonight. Ms. Jenny Christakis was sitting in Mr. Sullen's seat. Mr. Pace, you were in the meeting. We had Dale Marsden, who was a superintendent, in the meeting upstairs in the chambers. We had the nonprofits in the room, and we said, how are we gonna make this successful? So you guys can have access to our kids and use the facilities and do it in a way where you can afford it. Were you not in that meeting, um, Mr. Pace?
We were, sir.
Yes. And so it wasn't against board policy, and we didn't do things against the board. The board gave direction to do this, am I right, Mr. Pace?
So, look, Mr. Tillman...
Let me finish, and the board set aside money, and Ms. Christakis had a fund, 'cause the goal was this. We weren't gonna, we weren't gonna injure the sites. The concern was for the sites in terms of the basketball courts. That if the, if we allow those sites to be used by the nonprofits, and that it was damaged, then there was a, a, there was money set aside to make sure the maintenance was done, and the sites didn't have to pay for it themselves. We did that, and we did it in order, and it came out of direction from the board with the existing policy. So to suggest that the organizations that are having their policies waived in some way, in some seedy thing going on, is totally untrue. And it's frustrating for me to have to sit here and listen to this, as though, you guys have had countless meetings, and nobody said that at one point the board gave direction and set aside money to ensure that we funded this? Yes, we did do that. Number, number two, Ms. Christ, uh, Ms. Sabios says, is this a minor amount of money? If you take two hundred thousand dollars and divide it by eight hundred million dollars, it is point zero 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 two five. Now, I don't, I don't expect people who don't deal with money to understand that you could say two hundred thousand dollars is not a lot of money? Because they don't have a concept. But, but from my perspective, I know that at the county treasurer's office, just by us having money sitting in the bank, we're gonna make two hundred thousand dollars. And that money's not factored in anywhere. There's, there's no report where Mr. Sullen shows us how much we make on interest apportionment. Do you ever show us the money we make on interest, Mr. Sullen? No. 'Cause it's that, to them, it's minor. A million dollars is minor. So I, I, so I know I make a mistake when I do it from my perspective, 'cause I, I have a, a, a feel for it. Number two is this. When I have site, I have nonprofit, the ones that we say we're gonna waive the fees for. When they go to your automated site, they say they're gonna have to pay twelve thousand dollars, or they can't use the site. So you're confusing me when you say that the fees are waived for all the fields. So I'm assuming that you're saying that when they wanna use the stadium, there is a cost.
There, in the approved board charge, so in two thousand eight, there is a list of charges.
Ask your question, so there is a cost.
There is a difference between stadium use and field use.
That's my point. And so these people that are being waived, the junior all-American, the people that use Aurora Valley are using the stadium, and we're waiving those fees. We've always have. And let me, and let me say this. For some reason, Mr. Pace didn't wanna say it. But they, they don't find a key. You have, you have athletic directors and coaches that have keys, and they're operating their own business. And they open the doors and let people in that they wanna let in.
Yes, sir.
And the concern I have with that is, it's not fair.
It's not.
And, and, and you have people shut out who don't have influence. And those are usually the poor people.
We, we agree, we agree on that, Mr. Tillman.
But you didn't, but you said there's some people that find keys. It's not. And, and, and the people from certain communities aren't stupid. They know they're getting locked out. They know they don't have no juice. They know the guy driving in from Lake Arrowhead with the keys to open the door for his friends. That's the reality, that's the reality we live in.
It is.
And that's sick to me.
It's sick to us as well, sir. And I can tell you...
That's the reality of it. That's the reality that we live in right now. And I'm saying, for you guys to make this policy and bring this stuff forward to us, without having all that context, doesn't make any sense. Let me finish with this. I've been on the board twenty-seven years, and let me explain this to everybody. The athletic director and the principal do not want people at their sites. And they will do everything to prevent it. The prime example is Dignity Health. Dignity Health has been doing, uh, a midnight hoot forever. They pay for everything, the insurance, the fees, whatever you wanna charge them, they pay for it. And because the, the, the principal and athletic director did not want them at the site, they will ensure that the custodian doesn't open the building. And I have fellow board members who look at me like I'm doing something wrong, because I called Chief Polino and say, these people have everything they're supposed to pay for, and I got a hundred kids sitting out here at seven o'clock at night, trying to get in the building and do something constructive. And I'm supposed to say, oh, because these people are running game on these nonprofits? That I'm not gonna give them access to the building? I'll never do that. And, but, as a board, as a board, we are the district. And if we go along with this, we say that, that we go along with allowing corruption to exist in our district. And if the board says that you have access to our sites, you paid your money, and when you go there and the key doesn't work, and somebody didn't show up to open the door, and I go along with that, I'm part of the bad process. I will never be part of the bad process. And I, and I, and, and I am thankful to Chief Polino and his police officers that have the keys and can open the buildings to go along and comply with the law. Because the civic law says, if we allow them to have access to the building, the building is theirs to do as they please. So tonight, it is very frustrating. 'Cause I hear this discussion as though, oh my God, you're violating the policy, and you're doing things that you're not supposed to do, and you're waiving these fees, and who told you you can do it? Because it's that evil board member Danny Tillman that don't know. This board as a body gave direction to allow those fees to be waived. And Mr. Pace, you were in the meetings, and we had multiple meetings, sir.
We have, and I'm not sure that there was ever an insinuation, sir, that you were the one demanding that people be entering the building.
There was an insinuation that we were violating policy.
No, and we, I was very clear, and what I was trying to explain is that we have a board policy that, on the weekends, it charges. We allow for free use during the week.
So let me, let me, let me suggest this. I suggest that, just to make, make it clear, if you guys wanna do a percentage, let's say fifty percent. Let's do fifty percent weekday, weekend. I, I've never been in favor of allowing outside, um, um, people from, from, from LA to come here and use our facilities and take the place of our students, never. That's, that was never the intent. The intent was only to allow the students from our district and the organization working there to have access to our facilities. That's always been the case, and I think we should move forward with that. And I have no problem saying, anyone who's getting fees waived are not allowed to charge people any fees, whether to get in the gate or to park. I'm all for that. That can come back as the, the reading. But I, but I, and I, if we have consensus, of course. And I do believe, until we do this, we should leave things as is, that direction that past boards have given. 'Cause that's the reality of it. So it wouldn't be a good idea to say, oh, oh, uh, they have some board, some, some organizations that have been having their fees waived, and we're no, no longer gonna waive those fees, because the current policy doesn't allow for it. The board did allow for it, and, and just so everybody's clear. When the board, the, this discussion was, eh, eh, had at the dais, the question was, do we need to change policy? And the answer was no. And that's when the committee got together with Ms. Christakis, Tom Pace, myself, the city superintendent Dale Marsden, and met and said, how do we do this in a way that doesn't hurt sites? And that's how it came about, we were able to waive those fees. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Ms. Rosales-Madina?
Who was next after that? First of all, I do wanna appreciate, um, because we have been working a long time with the subcommittee. Um, it was in this, and just to clarify, it was never the intention, um, to not allow those that are servicing students within our region, within our city, regardless of them attending our schools or not, but that live within our area, to be able to access, um, uh, the, the facilities or even buildings, now that I'm understanding that more as well. Um, fields and facilities. I think, um, the problem is that we have now, and I think we need to update the policy, is because there has been abuses to it. And when I'm referring to abuses, I'm not referring to allowing schools to come in our, our campus, or students to come in our campuses. It's more about those that are charging for fees, uh, entry fees, um, paid, you know, charging, um, for paid tournaments. Um, and, and not giving full access to all of our nonprofits, organizations that are working with our students in the region, or children in the region, or even families. Uh, and I think that's why the policy is so important, because that way we can prevent those abuses from continuing. So I, I'm gonna support and still moving with the process of the, the policy. I know right now it's in draft, um, draft phase. But maybe getting an update, so that we can bring the, the second reading. And we could do multiple readings. It doesn't have to necessarily be the first two, and that's it. I mean, we could do multiple readings. Um, if we do a workshop, I feel like it's gonna take a lo, a lot longer, and this needs to be passed sooner than later. So I, I would suggest that we do multiple readings, if that's the case. Um, but I don't want to just ignore this first reading, 'cause I know we do that sometimes with certain policies. We won't bring it back. So I do suggest that we do bring it back for a second reading with updated language. And the percentages, the weekday, weekend, I'm flexible with that. That was just to try to ensure that we had, um, these organizations that are utilizing our faci, our, our facilities and fields to have, you know, to, to incentivize and in trying to increase the amount of students that there, um, that are within our area. And not abuse it. So, um, I just wanna make sure that we do continue moving forward in, in some of these areas, too.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales-Madina, Dr. Daddy Rogers.
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Just wanna add again, like I said before, um, a while ago, the consistency of this is why we are here. All of this is because it's inconsistent. And even more so to what I even heard more of, of who, who was in the room when that take place. I don't even remember if I was on the board at the time. I do know that we've always said we wanted our students to have access. That's like been a reoccurring thing. But all that I heard tonight, sho, is, is it in the policy? I don't even see what was argued for like fifteen minutes, even in this policy. So that's what's confusing me. If we waive this, if we waive that, if we said this, that, the stadium, where is it in this policy? I don't see it, even in the one that Mrs. Sabios is saying, let us continue to adhere to. It's, it's fragmented even in that. So I've never known a board to talk about something that needs to be in policy and not put it there. That's why we're here. Whatever was said in twenty-five, ten, or whomever was there, it's not even in this policy. So I, again, I feel sorry for the providers, that's why they're getting inconsistency. They call me, they call this person, they call that person, and we all point to something different, and we have nothing that can withstand that all seven of us, whoever is here twenty, thirty years from now, to be consistent and update as we go. But this is really not even an updating of the policy, honestly, because everything I just heard, I do not read it in this policy. So, again, if we're, we're going to adhere to wherever we are, we, I don't know what's being changed or is being changed by the providers that are currently under this policy. Because I heard it, but I don't, I still don't see it. So I'm in an agreement with all of the things that we were saying about adding, even the onset of the stadium. If that's a different fee, and then you go in there and you can't click it off, that's what we have to clean up. Because some of us don't know to say, what's the difference between a site and a stadium? I know I don't. If we say use the school, like, do what you need to do. So we need to clean all of that up, and I think this is good. This is not a bad thing, it's just long overdue and a lot of language. But we cannot never say it and not putting in writing, because we'll be right here again.
And I think we, we shouldn't leave before we talk about the fact that Mr. Tillman is absolutely a hundred percent correct. There is a paragraph in our current policy that talks about free use. And I don't know if you remember, in our four, first board policy subcommittee, we said the dangerous thing about this paragraph is there's a couple words in there that talk about free use, except on weekends and holidays. And this whole discussion revolves around the words that were in that board policy around weekends and holidays. And that was one of our recommendations, that if you truly want free use, strike out those words out of your current board policy. But there is a paragraph where it talks about free use. And that's what was encapsulated, Mr. Tillman, when we sat in those meetings. That's where we tried to get the free use put into this policy. It somehow has weekends and holidays in there. And that is what causes a lot of the tension when it comes to the user groups that are trying to apply for free use within the system.
Alrighty, thank you again, Mr. Pace and, uh, Dr. Daddy Rogers. You know, we have, oh, I'm sorry. We still have lights on here. I, I'm gonna say this. Yeah, sorry about that. If it's a rebuttal to what somebody else has said right now, I don't, I'm, we need to move on. We need to acknowledge what we need to move forward on, on the board policy, on the next reading. And I could keep going on about this, 'cause I think we all can. There's beyond more information than I think any of us, like I said already, even knew about. So this ain't gonna happen tonight, might, probably not, and I happen tonight. So this ain't gonna happen tonight, might, probably not, and I happen the next time. But it needs to keep moving forward. I'm not gonna sit here and say, let's continue with attacks on one another, defend each other on what was said or done, you know, or what was done five or ten or three years ago, it's what we need to do moving forward. Okay, we know that, we know that, and that's why we're sitting here today with this very long discussion, so. Ms. Sabios, if it's something on agreeing on here, let's, on what you recommend, let's move forward. If not, then honestly, I don't want to hear any more comments, folks. Is there a recommendation on what we're doing, moving forward?
So, so yes. Again, I would like for the current policy, that is my recommendation, for the current policy that is in place to stand. Again, the reason for that is because there, if we do business as usual, we have those groups of organizations that are paying, that maybe meet the criteria to not pay, and so it still continues to be, look, this conversation for me is multi-tiered. When I'm speaking about this, I'm not just talking about facilities use. I am talking about cleaning up our practice, right? So for me, it's really important to set good precedent, precedents. And to me, it's not a good precedent to give direction to our staff right now and say, ignore our board policy and do something else.
Right, Ms. Sabios, you've said that already right now, you've said that.
My recommendation is for us to agendize the item for next board meeting, and if we want to suspend it and put something temporary in place, that we do it through the proper means.
Thank you. And I'll say this, we could agendize it, but I'm not gonna promise it's gonna be the next board meeting, because there's a lot of other items that have been asked to be agendized, and they keep building up, so I'm not gonna say it'll be on the next agenda, but is there a consensus on agendizing this?
Is it, are, are you gonna have a, because I heard about a workshop, too, and so is it just gonna keep coming back as a read? Or do we not know?
We, we have the option of doing a read, obviously, that's gonna happen no matter what, right? So I think we're asking if we should agendize it as a discussion item even further than what we've done now, which was supposed to be a read. Alright, yeah. Mr. Irvin, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm just recommending that you and I just, let's just have a conversation offline, outside the meeting. Let's just, because this is gonna be longer, and, and my recommendation is, we just need time to think this through. But I recommend that you and I sit down offline and talk it through the next steps.
I'd have to be with consensus of the board, but.
Well, either way it goes, it's gotta either come back, either way it goes, it's gonna be a second read, it comes back at the next meeting.
Yeah.
For a second read.
Well, I, I prefer.
And Dr. Flores, you were next.
I would prefer that we discuss it, because there's all kinds of things all over the place. We don't know exactly what points and so forth were, yeah, to bring up. And then we do, on the second reading, we approve it or not approve it, so that's.
Again, we could have multiple readings.
I know, yeah, I don't think we can have multiple readings. Oh, we can?
Yeah, you can.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, you can.
Well, I just wanted to clarify, yeah, I just wanted to clarify. David said, yes, we can have multiple readings?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify what Mr. Tillman said is correct. I was on the board. We, as a board, were remiss in changing the policy and enacting what, uh, we, we had board consensus on, Ms. Sabios. So we were remiss. We did not go back and change the board policy to be consistent with what our consensus was and, and, and the policy changed. So I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Thank you, and so, again, board, are we bringing this back for discussion as an agenda item, to agendize it? That's what I'm asking. I, I'm gonna ask for a verbal on this, because I'm seeing nods, but I'll start with Dr. Rogers, thank you, Ms. Medina.
So is this where we're gonna have another workshop, because I think.
No, just.
Just like an agendized, um, separate from the first reading, the second reading.
Correct, separate from the second.
Just have a conversation.
Yes.
So that they can.
So we can do what we did right now without it being a reading, because that's really, should have been just a reading, yeah.
Right, I'm, I'm in agreeance, and the only problem is that I'm have, I mean, the only concern I'm having, or not a concern, I feel like a lot of the, the items that are, are crucial can, can be done throughout the facilities and fields use. So we need to know how to facilitate that one, because otherwise, if we're just gonna be speaking like we did right now, without, what are the concrete areas we want to change? It's gonna be extra talk, and we're not gonna get anything done. So we need to, if we're gonna do it agendized, it has to be where we're getting things done, just like how we're doing a subcommittee. Kind of like pretend we're in a subcommittee meeting, this is what we want, this is what we don't want in the language, and so forth. Not just where we're, what we like, what we don't, I mean, our personal feelings, I, I think this is.
I think that's what Mr. Irvin was kind of referencing to.
Okay.
Is for he and I to work out and try to flush a lot of this out.
Okay.
That was discussed this evening, because there's been a lot that's come up, quite a bit.
I think we just need time offline so I can touch base. But right now, I, I, I just think we need more time. I just need to have a chance to sit down with Dr. Wyatt, uh, with Sam and, and, and David, and, um, and, and so we gotta figure out what the next steps are, um, so.
I, I agree that we should have a, a discussion and agendize it, and I'm hope, I hope, I know, David, you're taking notes, so that we go item by item in terms of our concerns, and so that we, uh, flush that out, just like we did in the subcommittee, yeah.
I just need some time offline.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, Dr. Flores, I would agree, Mr. Vice President Tillman.
In the big scheme of things, Dr. Wyatt, you know what the upcoming items are. You know the importance of them. Uh, as much as we're talking about this, there may be something much more important than this. So, and, and the board is always talking about being concerned about the amount of time we're staying here. The only way you manage that is for you to say, this is gonna come up at a time when it's, uh, the most important item. Only you know that as board president.
That's why I didn't say next meeting.
Other items that have to be agendized in order to take care of business, then those will come before this.
That's what I was trying to say, Mr. Tillman, I agree.
I mean, I, I just agree that we should just talk about it offline, but I don't think.
And then let me go to Ms. Sabios. Ms. Sabios, do you agree on bringing it up as an agenda item?
Uh, yes, but I, I guess I want clarification. Does that mean that we're giving staff direction to keep the current policy until that happens?
I would say we are continuing practice as we've been doing it.
So, so not the policy?
We are gonna continue practice as we've been doing it.
Okay, so you can ignore policy and continue practice, is what I understand.
That is your, that's your understanding in your statement, yes. Alrighty, we have consensus, thank you. We'll move on to the next item. And thank you for a very robust conversation, and staff, for being patient with us, because that was quite a bit. Alright, we're gonna move on to, well, here we go, next BP, and, uh, let's hope this one is not as in-depth. Revision to BP sixty-one seventy-one Title I Programs, and I don't know if anybody's leading on this one. This looks at as a first read as well. There's quite a bit of changes in there, too.
I, I would recommend that we, uh, I don't know how vital it is, um, but I would recommend that, um, we wait for Ms., Ms. Applegate.
Okay.
And so she can, yeah, I mean, we went through it as a subcommittee.
So it was with her.
Uh, and we, uh, agreed collectively, uh, Ms. Sabios and Ms. Abbott, uh, Ms. Rosales. So we agreed with the changes, and there, we have to have, I, I mean, we can pass it on to, uh, the second reading if we want to. Or, or, or you're here, okay, okay, good, okay, you can go ahead, because you were, tell me your name again, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, Kimber Sargent.
Oh, yeah, Kimber, yeah, Kimber, okay, so go ahead and just, okay, let us know. But we were in agreement with all these changes, and it's because of statutes, uh, changes and so forth, yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Flores.
So thank you, President Wyatt, Vice President Tillman, um, Board and Cabinet Superintendent. Um, tonight, you're looking at the first read of the Title I Policy. The Title I Policy changes that you see in red are to bring our policy in alignment with the CASBA model policy. Um, so that's why you do see so much red, because it does change the structure of it to match the new structure. Um, it also incorporates the LCAP Federal Addendum, um, previously that was not in our Title I Policy. Uh, so that has been added in. We also have information added in about our service to private schools under Title I, and added language to the evaluation of the Title I Program. There was one change from the subcommittee, um, based on the language that you see there in red, and that is on the second page, under comparability of services. Dr. Flores wanted to ensure that, um, number one stated that the board shall adopt and implement a district-wide salary schedule.
Sorry, Ms. Sergeant, you said number one on comparability of services?
Correct.
But I, I don't see that highlighted in red.
It originally, the board, those two words were struck out, and in the subcommittee, um, Dr. Flores wanted to make sure that those words were not struck out, that those continued to be shown as part of the policy.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't know that was changed, so I don't know how we can show that, but.
Sorry about that, my apologies.
No, that's okay, I just, I was reading it, and usually when it's in black, that was how it was, so.
Right.
Okay, okay.
It was, it was like that previously, and then the changes would have suggested to take that out, and then during subcommittee, it was put back in.
So that's the original language?
It's the original language, correct.
Very good, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Alrighty, and Mr. Tillman, Vice President Tillman saying he was first, were you ladies' lights on from, right now? Okay, thank, thank you. Mr. Tillman, Vice President Tillman, sorry.
I, I have a real concern with this one that says Title I Funds shall be used, Title I's funds should be used to supplement, not supplant, funds available from the state and local sources for the education of students participating in Title I Programs. That's a big deal. If they double the amount of money that you're talking about from Title I Money, you're saying that, that you wouldn't be able to reduce the encroachment.
So supplement, not supplant is part of the Every Student Succeeds Act. So it's part of the language supplement, not supplant.
It's part of what?
Every, ESSA, Every Student Succeeds Act.
But does that something, does that mean we have to put this language in there?
You have to put this language in there.
That's the law?
Correct, mm-hmm. And it just means that your Title I Program is supplementing your base program. So you'll continue to have state and base dollars funding your program, and Title I will lay on top as a supplement.
I understand that, but I guess my, Mr. Solace is gone, but my question is, right, maybe I'm wrong. We don't use general fund money for Title I Programs?
Title I is federal money?
No, no.
And our general funds are state money?
Let me change it a different. Do we not use general fund money to pay for special ed services?
We do.
And the, the, we always have a concern that, about the encroachment, right?
Correct.
So if we were gonna get double the amount of money from Title I, that would give us the ability to not use as much general fund money, but that would be considered supplanting.
Mr. Tillman, Title I is different than the special ed funds. Those are, those are, they're, they all come from federal, but Title I is specifically for students who are low income. Um, special ed, of course, are the students who get services, so not the same funding source.
So you're saying there's no need to be concerned about not being able to supplant?
No, and, and this, this language has always been the language of Title I.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alrighty, any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Kimber.
Alright, Ms. Sargent, that was.
Thank you, less exciting, I know.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry yours wasn't as dramatic as the last one, but we'll get you next time, how's that?
Thank you.
No, I'm just kidding, hopefully not for all of us. Yes, that was a joke. Let me just clarify it on the record before I get.
We make a motion?
Um, that was a first read, correct? No, we don't vote on that one. So let's go and move on to eleven point O, um, reports and comments, board members, uh, board comments, and we are starting, uh, this week with Ms. Rosales Medina, and then it'll be Dr. Flores after.
Great, thank you. Well, I, I just wanted to, um, uh, I know I mentioned it earlier that I was at the National, National School Boards Association, and so that was my first conference, because typically they'll have it out of state, and this, uh, this time around, they had it here in California. And I, I think one of the, one of the areas that I was really, um, um, looking at how we can bring through, um, to our district, and I know that other states have looked into having financial literacy within the curriculum for our students in high school, as if it was a classroom, but I would like to really, um, find out in our school district, do we have financial literacy as part of the curriculum? And if we do, um, how extensive is it? And if we really don't, what can we do to really implement that? Because it is crucial, especially for our communities here, that do not have, um, the whereabouts necessarily for credit, um, how to manage your money and so forth. So I really, even for purchasing, um, a house in the future, you don't know. I think the financial literacy will be really important, and I think that's one of the messages I definitely got uh, from the conference, um, by those other states that are already implementing it. So I would like to learn more of what we're currently doing, and what can we do, um, if we do not have it, to, um, provide it for our students here in high schools, middle school and high schools, or maybe even elementary, so I don't know. Um, I am really excited to have announced that on May, March twenty-fourth, um, I received an award on Education Impact and Excellence Award, uh, for Women's History Month, and, um, it was at the.
We were gonna say.
Oh, you were.
We were gonna get that for you, but that's alright.
So it was hosted by the, the Arts of Sci, Arts and Sciences Cultural Center, and it literally, I was nominated, and, and, uh, I had made sure that I don't try to, um, make a joke that, because it's, I was gonna say, it felt like I was in the academies, but I, I was like, no, maybe previous years, academy, previous years.
Good for you.
Previous years, only because it's like, you don't know, you're gonna, I didn't even realize that they were gonna announce the winner, and so when they called me, I was like, even emotional going up to the stage, it was really ex, it was, um, it was really exciting. Um, I just wanted to, um, kind of share that little piece, not necessarily in the recognition that I received, but just more of, you know, when you're in these situations, and, and I don't, see, Doctor, Doctor Rogers, Doctor Flores, we have board members that receive recognition. Doctor Hill was one of those that received so many recognitions. I'm not, I don't receive that many, but the ones I do receive, I do get really touched by. So I wanted to say thank you to the, the Arts and Science Cultural Center, and all those that, uh, had sponsored that event, and all the women that did, uh, were, were nominated and also awardees as well, so. Um, that's about it, but yeah, I was really excited.
Well, congratulations, uh, Ms. Rosales Medina, and trust me, we are gonna acknowledge you and still, and even though you didn't, but congratulations to you, and, uh, we're very proud of you, absolutely, and the red carpet treatment's always nice, it's okay, yeah. Dr. Flores.
Well, we have a couple of things to share. Um, I, I'm wearing COBIS T-shirt, uh, Stand Up Get Up for Biliteracy and Multilingual Rights. We just finished our conference. Over three thousand, um, registrants, um, in a virtual conference. We had people from all over United States, and had incredible, incredible keynotes and workshops and, um, you know, featured speakers. It was, we had, you know, spoken word, we had, I had, we had everything, it was just fabulous. And hopefully next year, you all can come in person to Long Beach, that's where it's gonna be, uh, and it'll be, it's just exciting. And then, you know, it's Asian Pacific, it's Asian Pacific Islander Month, and, uh, because it was, uh, Women's History Month last, last month, I started collecting children's books on women, mathematicians, physicists, scientists, and engineers. And I, I have already bought around twenty-five. I mean, I just went bananas, okay? So, uh, and you know me, I'm always learning, and this one is the Queen of Physics, which I did not know. She's a Chinese physicist, uh, that helped unlock the secrets of the atom, and her name was Wu Qian Shiyong. And, uh, she had to come to the United States to succeed, because in her country, women were not allowed or, or honored for their intelligence, but she is very, very famous. She became a, an exceptional physicist, and had other scientists ask her for help, uh, in running experiments. And she's one of the people that helped us crack. for help in running experiments, and she's one of the people that helped us crack knowledge about the atom, and she pushed against, of course, prejudice with dignity and poise, and focused on excelling at what she loved, and so Newsweek declared her the Queen of Physics, Wu Qing Shiyong, so anyway, I wanted to share that, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, yep, and, and I have to thank, we have a few minutes on her comments, so I have to thank Dr. Flores for turning me on to even like a symposium today that I didn't know about at Cal State San Bernardino and the API, and then they have a different acronym over there, but their, their association, which I obviously immediately joined today, and now I'm gonna be going to two of their events coming up in the very near future, so thank you for sharing that with me. Alrighty, our next Board members, Vice President Tillman.
No comment.
No comment, thank you, Ms. Sevaios.
Thank you, President Wyatt, Ms. Medina, congratulations. I just want to go through my usual list, some items that I've mentioned before, I would like to bring back the discussion on having established end times for our board meetings, I know last time that it was broad, the end time was ten o'clock, and I think that that was not a time that the Board was willing to entertain, but I would like to maybe discuss further times, maybe eleven, maybe twelve, but to have an established end time, I think, is important, just for accountability for us. I would also like to call for establishing a policy, if one does not already exist, on special education, to provide them with parameters on timeframes for IEEs, and then also for translating documents. Currently, the law does not provide specific times, or, you know, frame, timeframes, deadlines, anything like that, but I think as a Board, we can definitely provide some guidance there. I would also like to bring back potentially having an attorney sit at our board meetings, I think having one today to ask a question about, you know, what happens if we, as a Board, don't follow our Board policy, would have been really good for me to just hear that clarity from the attorney, so again, just bringing that item back, and I think that's it, thank you.
Alrighty, thank you, Ms. Sevaios, and we're over to Dr. Doughty Rogers.
Thank you for coming back to me, I think, because I wasn't here, I first wanna, wanna say, and I don't know if we did this at our last board meeting, but I do want to send out condolences in reference to Dr. Tom Rivera, I got a chance to attend his virtual service, and, you know, he was a great man, and, and I'm telling you, we're losing so many individuals, but prayers to their family, as well as to Mr. Tillman, condolences as well to you, for your brother, and, and I know my family knew him well, and just, everyone is just experiencing that, that emotional loss, and, and then, before we can get through the week, Joyce Payne, you know, she was also a principal and teacher in our district, and she also passed, so sending condolences to all of those families. Also, I want to ask if we could make a note to reach out to the City of San Bernardino in reference to our Bridge Committee, so that we can, I'm, I'm glad to see that in her capacity, I know she's a constituent, but one of our council members was here to hear all that link learning, because a lot of, a lot of times when we hear the comments, I don't think they even know the things that we're doing, so they witnessed it tonight, and so again, we need to just move forward real quick on that. And then Jefferson Hunt, I want to mention to Facilities, I don't know if you guys seen them, but they've made some of the poles look like pencils, and I thought that was like, great, I saw those, and so shout out to them for doing that work. Also, I'd bring back to the note, student board members, I know this, this year, we had good intentions, Superintendent Irvin, I know you were definitely wanting to get that done, but, you know, the year kind of got past us, but if we definitely could put that on the radar as we begin the next year. I don't see Eric with us tonight, but I don't know, and if, if we are gonna get updates on our after-spring break COVID numbers, so if we can make a note to, so that we can have an idea of what's going on there. And then I also, as I, I shared earlier, we, every time you look in the newspaper, there's something going on about the district recently, we had the spelling bee, and thanks to the county, they, they definitely noted, we had one of our Richardson students, his name is Matthew Leon, he's, he placed in the spelling bee, and then no sooner than that brief came out, there was another big article in reference to History Day, and we had a number of students from Chavez Middle School in various categories, so our, our students are just doing some amazing things, and I did want to just give them a shout out as well, and then I saw another article in EdTech in reference to the work that's being done at San Andreas, and our disability connection to tech, technology, so again, shout out, kudos, they're doing some tremendous work, and we definitely want to acknowledge them, and then I also want to put a note on there, we're still meeting, and I know Dr. Rodriguez is part of this committee as well, still meeting with San Bernardino Valley College in reference to dual enrollment, and so we, we definitely, I, I mentioned Dr. Escavell that perhaps we can also bring you into that conversation, because they're really, really looking forward to being able to work with all of our high school campuses. Tonight, we heard Pacific is doing it in their link learning effort, so definitely, I want to, you know, put that on our radar, that is something that will be huge and big for us to really have dual enrollment across the district in all of our high schools. And I think that is it for me, thank you very much.
President Wyatt, may I respond to the COVID numbers?
Absolutely.
Super, super brief.
I just want to say thank you, Dr. Doughty Rogers and Dr. Rodriguez.
So, just an update on our drive-through prior to coming back from the spring break, we tested about three hundred people through our drive-through event, and we only had one positive, so numbers are getting much better. Thank you very much.
That's inspiring news, thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, and I will try to make my comments very quick as well. And I, I talked a lot about different awarenesses for the month of April, but there was one I wanted to make sure I included, and Dr. Iskevel reminded me when he saw my pendant, and that is, April is also Autism Awareness Month, and for those of you that don't know, that there's different symbols that represent different things, and actually, I wore it today to make sure that I could share the infinity symbol, the rainbow-colored infinity symbol, which is what the Autism Society has selected not too long ago, in regards to representing autism and acknowledging autism, and basically, what the rainbow-colored infinity symbol represents is a neurodiversity movement, and includes a total spectrum of both neurodivergent and neurotypical people, it indicates that neurological differences are a natural occurrence of people, so I just wanted to, to mention that today, I know a lot of us here do a lot of work with students with disabilities, and specifically autism, and, you know, I applaud all of us for doing that, and just to continue to understand that we do have natural differences, and that's what really it is, and that we treat all students the same. All right, second item is, I wanted to acknowledge Dr. Gwen Doughty Rogers, who's going to be acknowledged coming up soon at the Young Visionary Youth Leadership Academy Gala, and that is for the Dr. Margaret Hill Lifetime Achievement Award, which will be on May twentieth, so congratulations to Dr. Rogers. I'm hoping our district can support her and get a table for some of us, that would be nice. Also, thank you, Dr. Rogers, for bringing up the Bridge Committee, I did have a, a really long and, I would say informative conversation with Councilwoman Calvin, I believe it was yesterday, the day before, I can't keep time sometimes, but we, we had a lot to discuss, and, and obviously, about our city, which was a, a good discussion, but the, the main point that came out of that, really, our discussion was working together, and, and working together as a collaborative cohesive unit to help transform our city, because we have to, I think if we don't, obviously, we're not gonna get to where we want to be as a city, and so, we actually talked a couple of, a couple of items that were school-related, and you might remember better than I do, Dr. Rogers and I didn't write it down, because we were just talking, but our, our student, city council reps, I believe it was, at Dr. Hill, had wanted, that was one of her visions and dreams before, and so Councilman Calvin and I talked about that, and making that happen, but absolutely the Bridge Committee as well, and, you know, she did ask me to attend the, the city council meeting, which I, I'll be honest, I don't often do, I think we have plenty of stuff to deal with here, obviously, as we learn most board meetings, but I wanted to go and, at least publicly acknowledge that right now, and, and support her and our city council, and our Board on those efforts of making that happen, and as I've said, I know tomorrow at seven, she let me know, and public comments are right at the beginning, so I was like, okay, so it isn't my calendar, Councilman count, I just gotta make sure I represent appropriately, and then, I know it's been announced, but we, we have, I believe, three administrators who are being acknowledged at AXA, Fracture, or Region Twelve, Region Twelve, and I hadn't seen or heard anything about that, are, are we getting a table for that to, because it's coming up soon, right? So I'm hoping, you know, I know in the past, we've, we've gotten tables, you know, to support our staff at recognitions, and, you know, I really want us to, to do that again, I know it's been hard because it's been COVID, so we haven't been talking about any of that, but we're back now, at least we're getting close to being back, and so I, I would like to encourage, you know, our district to support our staff, that have been recognized for their tremendous work that they're doing, and again, great things that are happening in San Bernardino City Unified School District, and we heard that time and time and time again tonight, and we saw it with the recognition ceremony before the board meeting and during the board meeting, and, and just even what our board members are doing here, being acknowledged and being active in the education committee, not just the education committee, but our communities as well, doing a lot of work other than just being board members, so, you know, I just hope that folks recognize, I think, you know, we, and it's okay, because everybody has their right to their opinion, their beliefs, and sometimes their comments, but we're out there working hard, and, and I know each and every one of us represents our community and supports our kids in our community and our city in so many different ways, so I just, I want to applaud my colleagues as well for the work that you're doing, as well as our district staff and our community and our students, and those are my comments, thank you. All right, we'll move on to eleven point two, Superintendent, Mr. Irvin.
So I wanted to say that, Ms., again, congratulations to Board Member Abigail, you know, Rosales Medina, for being recognized as the recipient of the Education Impact and Excellence Awards at the Women's History Month Award banquet, which was hosted by the Arts and Science Cultural Center.
All right, now you can clap.
So, right, now you can clap, right, because she stole the thunder, she stole my thunder.
Better when it comes to...
And this award is, it, it really honors influential school leaders, and Ms. Rosales Medina was one of three women nominated for, for the award from throughout the entire inland empire, so that was really a great accomplishment.
Congratulations.
And then the last thing is, I just wanted to say on the facility use policy, I just want to make sure it's clear that that wasn't really initiated by the Board, that was, that was, I mean, by the district, that was really a board member's request, so I want to make sure that we bring clarity, that our team reminded me that that, it wasn't the district that initiated it, that was a board member request, we didn't initiate it, we were just going with the flow, so, but I just wanted to get clarity on that one, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Irvin, and absolutely, we agree with you, and I wouldn't say that was a flow, that was more like a flood, so, but we're gonna contain that flood one way or another, sooner or later, right, so thank you to our staff again for that. We'll move on to action items, twelve point one, let me take a look at this, approval personnel report, number seventeen, dated April fifth, twenty twenty-two, which contains actions such as hiring, retirements, resignations, promotions, and terminations.
Present it, move.
It's been moved and properly second, any discussion? All right, let's vote. All right, motion carries, we'll move on to twelve point two, approval memorandum of understanding between the San Bernardino City Unified School District and Provincial Accelerated Learning Academy for District Police Services.
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries, we'll move on to twelve point three, approval to provide full-day preschool and transitional kindergarten facilities and file grant program applications.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and properly second, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Alrighty, motion carries, we're off to twelve point four, appointment to California School Board Association Delegate Assembly, and I'll go ahead and read this real quickly. CSBA Delegate Assembly position held by Scott White expired March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, at the December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, board meeting, Dr. White agreed to continue as Delegate to twenty twenty-four, however, due to a notification error, his appointment was not registered, instead, he was nominated and elected to fill one of six vacancies in the San Diego County Subregion sixteen B, therefore, another board member must be appointed, as CSBA's primary policymaking body, Delegate Assembly, is a key link in the association's governance structure, it is made up of approximately two hundred and eighty local school board members who are elected or appointed in twenty-one geographic regions throughout the state, delegates are required to attend two meetings each year, May and November, I will also say there are many other regional meetings that happen, I think, almost on a monthly basis, and so when it says there's two meetings, I would say there's probably more like twelve meetings, if not more, that we are expected to attend, so is there anyone that is interested in participating on the CSBA Delegate Assembly? All right, don't have to all jump at once, okay, it was really two meetings, I, I take that back. I shouldn't have said that, I was just trying to be honest, okay? Six meetings, I'll try to cut it down.
For monthly.
Dr. Rogers, you're, you're in it, Dr. Rogers, you have a choice, so you're in it, Dr. Flores?
If my colleagues are not interested, I will, I will be the Delegate Assembly, since I've been it before.
Emote.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion, and then second by Ms. Sevaios, any discussion? I, I'll say discussion, Dr. Flores, there's ten to twelve meetings a year, I'll just emphasize that, just kidding. All right, no discussion, other than myself, we'll go ahead and vote for approval of Dr. Flores, oops, sorry.
Excuse me, we got a comment.
We had a comment?
Oh, no, I, I...
Okay, I just, I wasn't sure down there either.
We can go ahead and vote.
Okay. Alrighty, be it resolved that the Board President appoints Dr. Flores for a two-year term effective April first, I know, but I still have to read it, April first, twenty twenty-two, due March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, so congratulations, Dr. Flores. All right, we'll move on to thirteen point oh, and it was approved, thank you, approval of consent items?
Move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, discussion, anything to be pulled? No items to be pulled, all right, any discussion on consent items? Let's go ahead and vote, fantastic, there were, there were a lot of them, thirty-four, so even better. All right, motion carries, we'll move on to fourteen point oh, review of board requests, fourteen point one, staff review items, updates requested by board members, Ms. Antovetos.
Good morning, Board, certainly looking forward to sharing the questions that you asked, so that we can follow up on them for you, so this evening, we started the meeting with the, or your request started to come in around the time we looked at the late start survey and the survey results, there were several requests related to the survey, wanting to make sure that we segmented the results out for you by the participant group, elementary, middle school, high school, also wanting to get the feedback of the bus riders versus the general population. Also wanting to get the feedback of the bus riders versus the general population. So Dr. Flores asked specifically about the bus riders and conducting additional surveys to get more overall responses from everyone. Mr. Tillman won, and Ms. Myra Sevaios and Abigail Rosales Medina all asked for the survey results by group. Dr. Gwen Rogers asked about how we would consider addressing the traffic congestion caused by the close drop-off or pickup times. Myra Sevaios and Abigail Rosales Medina asked if we would consider sharing advantages for choosing homeschool as, during the registration process or trying to market homeschool attendance as a way to alleviate some of the, the need or the impact on the buses. Dr. Barbara Flores asked what programs kids are taking buses to access across the district, so wanted some data about bus ridership and where our students were headed. Dr. Barbara Flores asked that we would consider how the overlapping end times would affect the transportation as well, so not just the traffic congestion, but also the transportation or how the buses were going to, to service them. Mr. Danny Tillman asked that survey questions would be crafted in order to get opinion about different scenarios in terms of the times that we would have for start times. Questions then came, a series of questions came in about the charter school presentations, and the first was from Dr. Scott Wyatt, who asked for information about how special education ser-, students were served through charter schools, also asking how we monitor the special education services for charters who use their own SLPAs. There was some response to that in terms of requesting letters of good standing, and then, but also, how are, how, how do we handle it if they are their own SLPA? So, you know, what, who's overseeing them? And Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina also echoed that request. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina and Ms. Myra Sevaios asked, why do charter schools choose SLPAs from other counties, specifically wanting to know if they were shopping for, for counties that were less strict about how they, about their accountability practices. Ms. Myra Sevaios asked about how many English language learners each charter would have as well. Dr. Gwen Rogers asked what it meant if charter schools didn't have any colors listed in their California Accountability System information. Those were the questions about the charter schools. Then, Miss, we, there was, in the questions about the facility use, Mr. Danny Tillman asked if we would inquire how the organizations use the proceeds of the fees that they might charge when they're using our fields for free, in order to get a better understanding about how they could be supporting programs for our students. Dr. Gwen Rogers asked if the policy that we create or that you create would be available to all the organizations when they request the use of facilities in order to clarify fee schedules and other insurance requirements. Dr. Gwen Rogers also asked if we needed a pool of funding in order to support the use of facilities, so that it didn't impact the specific school sites. There were some other questions that were specifically answered during the meeting. Then Dr. Scott Wyatt asked if we could share a message that the board was considering revisions to the policy so that it would set a standard for everyone, just to let everybody know that this change was coming. Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina asked later then, what type of financial literacy education do we have as a standard part of our curriculum, and what options are available to strengthen it for students if that's necessary? Ms. Myra Sevaios asked that we would bring back the discussion around establishing an end time for meetings. She also asked to establish a policy on special education parameters for the turnaround time of IEPs and for translation of those IEPs, if such a policy didn't already exist. Ms. Myra Sevaios asked that we would, again, reiterated a request to have an attorney present at all board meetings in order to provide legal advice as needed. Oh, now I lost myself, there we are. Ms., Dr. Gwen Rogers asked if we would reach out to the city regarding re-establishing the Bridge Committee, also inquired about being prepared for student board members for next year. Requested then a report on COVID numbers following the spring break, which Dr. Rodriguez did respond to. She also encouraged us to look into expanding dual enrollment access across the district. And then Dr. Scott Wyatt inquired about a table at the AXA Region 12 Awards, where we were, where some of our staff are being honored. There was also, I know, consensus around agendizing the discussion about facility use again, so.
All righty, thank you for that very long list, Ms. Antovetos. And then we will move on to 15.1, and we will be adjourning to closed session. Do we have a motion to, with no report out?
Move.
All right, we have a motion to move, and seconded by Dr. Flores. Thank you, everyone, for hanging in there with us this evening and this morning. That was a robust meeting.